Good evening. Before we call this meeting to order, we will hear instruction on how the public may access Spanish interpretation.
Thank you. The following message will repeat in Spanish. We are offering live interpretation into Spanish via our Zoom platform. To access our Spanish channel, press the interpretation button at the bottom of your screen, where you will see a globe icon, choose Spanish. If you're joining via Zoom smartphone app, select your language by clicking more or the three dots at the bottom of your screen. Select Language Interpretation and choose Spanish. Bienvenidos. Estamos ofreciendo interpretación en español en vivo y en directo durante nuestra sesión en la plataforma Zoom. Para tener acceso a interpretación oprima el icono del globo terráqueo al pie de su pantalla y seleccione Spanish o español según su formato. Si está uniéndose a nosotros vía Zoom en su teléfono inteligente, seleccione los tres puntitos al pie de su pantalla, elija interpretación de idiomas y pulse Spanish o español para activar su canal. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Back to you.
Great. We'll call the meeting to order and start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, excuse me. I am so sorry. I will first start with our land acknowledgement. The city of South Lake Tahoe acknowledges the lands we occupy today are the lands and home of the Washe'ishu, the people from here known today as the Washe'oh tribe of Nevada and California, a sovereign nation. Since the beginning of time and for thousands of years before the arrival of any other people, the Washe'oh lived here and cared for this place with values and intention that we can all learn from. On behalf of the city council, I would like to acknowledge, thank, and honor the indigenous Washe'oh tribal communities that are the past, present, and future stewards of the Lake Tahoe Basin. And with that, we'll call this meeting to order and move into our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance shall apply under the United States Constitution and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. And Ms. Blankenship, can we get a roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Roberts.
Present.
Councilmember Robbins.
Here.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Mayor Bass.
Here.
All present.
Great. And Ms. Stroud, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did not have any items on closed session this evening, but I do have one item to report out from our meeting on August 12th, 2025 regarding a workers' compensation appeals board case regarding former employee Herlinda Beltran. That case was settled by compromise and release for the amount of $80,490.
Great. Thank you. All right. With that, we're going to move on to our proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing November 2025 as Youth Homeless Outreach and Prevention Month, and this will be Ms. Carney Chapman.
Hi. How are you? I'm great. Good to see you. Hi. Good to see you. All right. Whereas approximately 4.2 million young people ages 13 to 25 experience some sort of homelessness in the United States each year, and whereas while living on the streets or in their car, staying in shelters, couch surfing, youth may struggle to afford food, care for their mental or physical health, attend and complete school, and avoid dangerous and violent situations. And whereas the common reasons youth may run away or experience homelessness include family conflicts, being asked to leave home, verbal, emotional, and/or physical abuse, neglect, and financial problems at home. And whereas youth who experience homelessness are more likely to experience homelessness in adulthood, and whereas Tahoe Youth and Family Services works diligently in increasing public awareness, advocating on behalf of and providing hope to vulnerable young individuals within the community through essential support services, housing, and counseling to address the needs of these young people. Now therefore, the city council of the city of South Lake Tahoe does here proclaim November 2025 as Youth Hope Month in South Lake Tahoe and calls upon all citizens to join in preventing and curtailing youth homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Absolutely.
I just want to thank you and thank the city for bringing us proclamation to light. We are the sole provider of runaway and homeless services in South Lake Tahoe. We ensure that any young person who is experiencing homelessness or might become homeless in our community is provided the support they need so they do not become homeless. So thank you very much. [applause]
All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to public communications. This is the public's opportunity to speak on any item that is not listed on this agenda. Comments shall be limited to four minutes. In accordance with the Brown Act, the city council cannot deliberate or vote on any matter raised under public communications, but may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it up. Mr. Perini.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Lou Perini. I've been in, was in business on Highway 50 for over 40 years. I first voted here in 1973, so I won't tell you how long I've been here, but I was a neighbor of Mr. Mayor Bass from when he first opened until I closed up in 2022, and he was the best mayor I ever had. He was the best neighbor I ever had, and I just thought I'd mention that. The reason I came here tonight, the main reason, even though I like saying that about Cody, was if you're going to change lines, we should have a, I don't know if you've ever been to the Calneva on the North Shore when the pool had, you could swim on the Nevada side or the California side, they had a line in the pool inside the casino. Well, we should have that same kind of line here at the airport because some of this building is in the county, I think. We don't know for sure unless we do a survey, and then we draw those lines and we can tell whether in Eldorado County or we're in the city of South Lake Tahoe, and that's never really been determined. And I think that's as important as issue as Mr. Robbins' issue brought up of just changing a line that's somewhat arbitrary. I mean, that's never been really surveyed, I don't think either, but we can survey this and we can find out where the city is and where the county is, and I, I would suggest that you do that, and it would be something to see here. I mean, other than just a building, there's a line that draws the city and county. So with those remarks, I will, you have a long agenda, and I will not take any more of your time, and I appreciate you listening, and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Perini. Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment? Yes, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about trash and bears. Surprise. While STR has made strides to improve our garbage services, there continue to be problems that they don't seem particularly interested in working with the public they serve. STR made a Facebook post recently about the success of the three tote system. I respectfully made a comment that Bear League patrols daily for many hours and come upon many cans that are tipped over by the bears due to non-rinced items being placed in those cans or fully wet garbage placed in them. I suggested for the second time that there needs to be locks on the blue cans. Their response was people need to rinse items properly and call Clean Tahoe. We typically end up cleaning the messes ourselves because it's after Clean Tahoe hours, they close at 2:30 and are closed on weekends. STR also posted that they are not seeing many messes from bears, and I said that there are many. They blocked me and others and scrapped the post of any of our comments. That seems wrong. I posted on my page, which I think I sent to you all, 31 photos of cans tipped over that we've cleaned up. The public should be able to see all sides, not just a sanitized version that STR apparently wants the public to see. I can suggest more funding for Clean Tahoe for extended hours. We continue to advocate for our bears and continue to ask the city and the police department to work with us in our efforts. There are over a dozen bears currently going into houses, and we're running calls day and night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment? Seeing, oh, yes, Jack.
All right. Larry Pettigo, South Lake Tahoe resident. First, I want to shout out to the California voters that passed Proposition 50 with 64.5% in landslide. David Jenkins, if you want to read the enumeration clause in Article 1, Section 1 of the Constitution, I happen to have one in my pocket here if you would like to take a look at that. The districts are supposed to be accountable every 10 years according to the U.S. Constitution, and only four states use the commission to set district maps at this current time. Second, I called Cassandra at the Sugar Pine Village about a one-bedroom unit for $611 per month. This was prior business for the family of three with the baby that was, that was, that was looking for a place to stay, and she had said to me that to qualify, you need to make less than $55,000 per year to qualify. Okay? So continuing on with the history of South Lake Tahoe, the Hole and city manager David Jenkins, part two. Okay, to recap from last meeting, in 2007, the Hole, AKA the Chateau Project, broke ground. In 2008, the project went bankrupt. City manager David Jenkins did not get a surety bond for the project to protect our city, contractors, and workers, and yes, the buck stops with you. Okay? And excuses and finger pointing are kind of lame. The grand jury report investigated Mr. Jenkins, found that he intimidated and witnessed tampered city staff. So in June of 2009, the city council asked Jenkins to resign, but he threatened to file a workers' comp claim, lawyered up to sue the city. Fortunately for the city, Jenkins left office in 2010, and most locals like me thought and hoped they'd never see him again, but here he is again, thanks to almost $18,000 in out-of-town money and payments by agents from Riverside to Israel. Mr. Jenkins paid about $10 per vote in 2024, and it's all in the city campaign filings. Mr. Jenkins' largest donation was from Kevin Meyer for, excuse me, $5,000, a developer licensed in Nevada. Wallace Jenkins, Roberts, and Republican women of South Lake Tahoe, they are in common with each other. David and Keith both got $1,500 each from this group in 2024, while Wallace gave annual speeches to the group. So frankly, I suspect Mr. Jenkins has an axe to grind with the, from his past along with revenge or malice towards our city. I also suspect he has a scheme for Lake Tahoe Part II coming soon that will be worse than Lake Tahoe Part I. The lack of the surety bond for developers costs our city jobs, time, and money. My rough calculation is the interest on the bond cost alone for Lake Hole was about, was in the eight digits. That could have fixed a lot of city potholes and rows. The holder of the bond is New York Mellon Bank. Perhaps you've heard the news about Mellon Bank being sued by Epstein victims for money laundering, but more about that later. So here again, Mr. Jenkins, you're not the, you're the villain of the hole. You're not the hero. Okay? But, but you know what? While you were gone, we survived you and your hole. We have curbs and sidewalks and Olympic statue at Eldorado Beach now. Soccer and ball fields look good on Rufus Allen's. We've got a new rec center coming in too and a lot more. Do we still have problems with it? You bet. But clearly, you are not the answer to our problems with your outside money, your willful ignorance, and your narcissistic attitudes. All right? Keith, you and I are a bit alike. Okay? We came out of LA, you're chef in town, I learned how to cook in town, and I, and we worked together at Camp Richardson and Round Hill Pines. However, like Jenkins, I wonder if you have a deeper conflict of interest with the Chateau Project. Your largest donation was from Trans Sierra Investments, AKA Carrie Castile, for four grand, along with another two grand from State Line Nevada Group called South Tahoe Alliance for Resorts. By the way, according to the city bonds for the downtown project, Trans Sierra has some $37, $6 million in value related down at downtown, and they're, and they're mentioned on the project bond. And you also paid $7 per vote in 2024 to get on this council. I hope you'll remember your roots in the city and be careful with the PACs you're running with now. So Keith, I see you as leaning villain here, but there's a chance you could be a hero for the city and, and, and a voice for real citizens for the city of South Lake Tahoe, not out of town.
Thank you, Mr. Pettigo.
Thanks very much.
And Mr. Jenkins, just make it brief if you could.
Thanks for your thoughtful comments. The, Ellie Ramos has a copy of the grand jury report that was approved by the city council, I believe on July 28th, 2010, which addresses the issues that were raised by the grand jury. So if you'd like to, I also probably have another copy, I'd be happy to provide it to you, and you can read what the city council said in regard to those assertions that were made. And I appreciate that you and I may have a difference opinion on a few things. I've already tried to express with regard to the hole about the bond and the fact that the council at that time did not require a bond. We were told we could not get a bond, but if you want to reinvent history, that's your prerogative to do so.
Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment on anything not listed on today's agenda? Seeing none, we will go, ah, yes, sir. Go ahead and come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Clay Cravens. I've been a resident of Tahoe for about 30 years here, and I've kind of hesitated to bring this up previously. I came to the last meeting and then realizing all the, the large items that are on the agenda, at least, I kind of didn't want to be overshadowed. What I'm bringing up is kind of more of a, an issue that's specific to a certain group of people in town or a certain neighborhood. So I've, I live over here on 1216 Margaret Avenue, adjacent to this industrial area. I've lived there for 13 years. Own the house. I've raised my children there, family. We have a great neighborhood, love our neighbors, love the area, until recently. I'm sure everyone's aware of the asphalt plant in the industrial area. Over the last two years, living specifically where I live and in the neighborhood I live in has become, to be honest, unbearable. We are crafted plans to sell our house and move at this point because, to describe the situation, last summer, it started the noise, and what it, the main concern, not the operation of the plant so much, is the reverse alarms on the trucks and tractors there, the beeping, ringing through our neighborhood. Started last summer, never happened for the 11 years before that. We would get smells occasionally. Last summer, it started, kind of stayed within business hours, drove us out of our minds, and then they only have a permit to operate, you know, May to October. So we kind of forgot about it over the winter. We were like, you know, by the time we were fed up with it. This summer, for almost five consecutive months, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, nonstop, incessant, there's no breaks, not for five minutes, not for two minutes, all day long, ringing through our whole neighborhood. Beep, 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 reverse alarms on trucks and, and tractors. I have multiple, like numerous videos, 1:00 in the morning, sitting in my hot tub, ringing through my neighborhood. I've been woken up on a regular basis at 5:30 in the morning from a dead sleep with doors and windows in my house closed every day. It's, it's really honestly kind of hard to overstate the, the psychological effect and the, that it's had on myself and my family. I work at night, as many people in Tahoe do. I'm home all day long. I go to bed at 2:30 in the morning oftentimes. I've been, I have not been able to sleep past this whole summer long, 5:30, 6:00 in the morning, every single day I'm woken up by that. I've tried to wear earplugs, I can hear it through my earplugs. I can hear it in my house all day long, every day, all day, nonstop. I'm going to need more than four minutes, I'm going to come back and address this again. I've started to create a petition for our neighborhood. I've spoken to my immediate neighbors. They're all experiencing similar agitation and, and again, it's hard to overstate really the effect it's had psychologically and just quality of lifestyle, our, our quality of life has been ruined. We can't live there anymore. We've decided we have to move. And then, you know, on a second level of that, once we made that decision, we started looking into it, talking to our real estate agent. There's the, the, I'm sorry?
Disclosure.
Right. Like our, the property values in our neighborhood are going to be decimated if we try to sell our house and move. I can't imagine if anyone were to come look at our house, there's no way you cannot notice it. It's like impossible. Anyway.
Thank you for your time, and definitely will be in touch. Keep in touch with us.
I filed complaints. I've been stonewalled. I've talked to the city manager. I've talked to the owner. No one's responded to me. No one will tell me the, the restrictions that they're supposed to be operating under.
Sir, just keep, keep in touch with us. That's all I can tell you. First time hearing about it, but please keep in touch.
I have a lot more to say, obviously.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here in the room that would like to give a public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and check Zoom.
You have one hand raised. Let's see. Mr. Asbury.
Hello, city council and staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I was just wondering if it was possible for the city council and the mayor to consider potentially putting the agenda item number 10 ahead of agenda item number eight, since agenda item number eight is going to be, of course, a lengthy session, I imagine. That's it. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Mr. Asbury, did you mean the agenda planning calendar or the city council meeting schedule?
The meeting schedule.
Okay, that's item number nine. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
No additional public comments, Mayor.
Great. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to any of our city commissioners that may be here to give a report. Is there any commissioners not seeing anybody? So we will go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Let's see, I'm actually going to pull item number six. Is there any other council members that would like to pull an item? Okay. So with that, we will go ahead and open this consent agenda item for public comment minus item number six. So if you have a public comment on any items that are on the consent agenda, please come forward. I'm not seeing anybody in the room for any public comment. We'll go ahead and check Zoom.
Yeah. There's one hand raised. Mr. Asbury.
Hello, Eric Asbury here again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I don't know what agenda item it is, but the one related to the, to the city seal.
Mr. Asbury, that item has been pulled, and we'll take that up separately.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
So you'll, yep, just give it a minute, we'll give you a chance.
I apologize. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Do you want a motion?
So yes, we could look for a motion for the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent calendar as presented except for item six.
My second.
All right. We can go ahead and vote.
That motion unanimously carries.
Great. All right. So yeah, I have pulled item six. We'll go for questions first. My question actually for staff is that we've created a new seal that, that is a replica of this but with a correct geographic part. Can we use that in instance, like on a vehicle, but still have our original seal on the things of letterheads and what is, because there are these instances where we've seen it on a vehicle corrected, right? And so in that instance, right, but I'm just wondering, is that something that would be, like, it's kind of almost like a third logo for us in a way, or a second logo, I should say, because that's the seal. We have a logo. Is, would that be something that you guys would see that could work?
I think we've kind of transitioned away from using the city seal on vehicles, and we're now using our city logo.
And to give a little more explanation there, there, there always was the, the two items were, is, is what the city has memorialized, the logo and the seal. Those are actions taken by past councils. We have found awards and some vehicles with emblems on the side that show the, the line in a different configuration. I don't know when that came about. Before I was here, there's an award that I know staff members have that show the line from 15, 10 years ago. So I don't, you know, it's, it's, to answer your question, I think as long as the city has an official seal.
Right.
We're okay.
Okay. And then my only other, well, my only other question would be, this seal was from the founding and incorporation of the city in 1965.
It was shortly, there was an original city seal, and it specified that this was, for the first year, they had incorporated seal that said incorporation, and then it switched to this seal with the formation of the fire department. That was kind of like the one-year anniversary of the city, then they transitioned to using this, and this has been the seal ever since.
Okay, great. Anybody else have questions? Mr. Jenkins.
My, my understanding, even if, that with the adoption, making the correction has shown, that at the time when we, if we change anything with the seal on it, that we'd make that change, we're not going to throw away whatever documents or whatever letterhead or whatever to, to make the change, but we'll do it as, as we, is that, yeah, as, as the new orders are produced. Is that a fair understanding?
That's my understanding, and that's how I would like to see it implemented.
And if, if I would be allowed to make a statement, I was re-elected in 2022 by 4,244 constituents as the city of South Lake Tahoe's city clerk. I represent them. I am passionate about my job and the work that I do. I am the guardian of the records which formed our city, and I am the custodian of the historic city seal. I'm the only employee allowed to use the city seal. This city seal has been used by every city clerk that came before me. I ask you not to move this item forward and to preserve city's history.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Anybody else with questions before we go to public comment? Questions, don't go to discussion, just questions if you have them, because we'll come back for discussion. Okay.
That was a comment, not a question. That was a comment, not a question then.
So we're going to hear from public comment, and we'll come back. She's not on the council, and so I allowed her to make a statement. But regardless, we'll go ahead and open this item for public comment. This is going to be item number six on the consent agenda for the city seal. If there's anybody in the room that would like to give a public comment. Yes, Ms. Soderstone.
Thank you. Just making this up. It's so necessary. I've thought a lot about this the last couple of weeks. It's really unfortunate that we spent money on, you know, designing this new seal. Listening to Ms. Blankenship's heartfelt, you know, speech last week and this time, her presentation really makes it clear, she is the only elected official among our city staff. She's been elected twice. This is her seal. It means a lot to city clerks across the country. It is a very important thing. It has never been changed. If you're not elected into that position and have some valued feeling behind it, you're probably not going to understand how important it can be to them. And I know that some of you have a really big problem with the seal, but it's not something that we see very often. It's here on the wall here. Yeah. And I mean, I've never even noticed it until it was brought up recently. So I do ask you to consider, you know, there are lots of options for using our city seal in other, you know, places, but I really just feel like for continuity and for history's sake that we should leave it the way that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soderstone. Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and call Mr. Asbury.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this matter. I would just like to duplicate the sentiments of Ms. Blankenship, Ms. Soderstone, and the mayor. I could see this is a, there's a reason that historical societies were built, and you know, there's historical districts where you can't even change your window or, or do some certain things without getting approval, and it's to preserve the history. And I was quite moved by Ms. Blankenship's speech on the last city council meeting, as I think a lot of the community was. It was a talking point, and at the very least, I would like to just put out there if we could, you know, if a decision can't happen tonight to just not change the city seal, if maybe there would be some consideration to just give it some more time so that we can get some public feedback, not on redesigning or anything like that, but, you know, kind of almost like an, you know, official vote of should be changed the seal or should be not. So just a little bit more public feedback. I guess that's all I have to say on the subject. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Next up, we have Ms. Allen. Ms. Allen?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little slow to the unmute there. I, I need to, to agree with Ms. Blankenship and with Ms. Soderstrom. I've been in South Lake Tahoe for 35 years. I honestly, especially in today's economic environment, do not understand why the city of South Lake Tahoe would make it an urgent situation to spend the time, effort, and money to change the line on our city seal. Our city seal has been in place for 60 years. It means a lot to many of us that have been around through the many stages of growth in the city of South Lake Tahoe, and I really think whether or not you go out and ask for more opinions, I think that probably the majority of people that have been around South Lake Tahoe for a long time would just like to see the city seal.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little slow to the unmute there. I need to, to agree with Ms. Blankenship and with Ms. Soderstrom. I've been in South Lake Tahoe for 35 years. I honestly, especially in today's economic environment, do not understand why the City of South Lake Tahoe would make it an urgent situation to spend the time, effort, and money to change the line on our city seal. Our city seal has been in place for 60 years. It means a lot to many of us that have been around through the many stages of growth in the City of South Lake Tahoe. And I really think whether or not you go out and ask for more opinions, I think that probably the majority of people that have been around South Lake Tahoe for a long time would just like to see the city seal stay as it is. It's an inch off about the line that goes down the lake, so, big deal. Hasn't bothered anybody for 60 years, and I don't think it should be such an important item to spend time, effort, and money on in today's day when, when kids don't have food, SNAP is not working, et cetera. We have a lot of other problems to resolve. Okay? And I appreciate your listening to me, and thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Blankenship, for continuing to bring that forward on behalf of the constituency that you represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. All right, next up, we have Mr. Erlich.
Hi there, I'm Robert Erlich. I've lived here since 1988. It's not a major issue, but since 1988, I've noticed that sign. The seal has a line that doesn't correspond with our boundary and doesn't actually include some of the beaches that we have also. So I don't think it's a lot of cost, and I, I think the seal will still look very similar to the original seal, so I think it's appropriate to change it. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no additional public comments, Mayor.
Great. All right, so we'll bring it back. So I, yeah, I pulled this item, and I think that actually this is a good lesson of why we do second readings and first readings, because for me, I also was thinking, this isn't really something that is such a big deal, let's correct the logo to make it geographically correct. And we have two weeks in between the votes to actually reconsider and think about something. And it definitely was Ms. Blankenship that made me think about what is the founding of family seals, of city seals. And I don't think you go back to your family seal and start changing things around either. I think there's a reason that there is a founding document to something. And the reason I asked a question of what we have created of a logo that we spent a very nominal, small amount of money for, can we still use that in things like awards that we probably do want to show that correct geographical thing? That doesn't need to be our city seal. And yes, we can. So we didn't just waste the money to be able to use that in, in a way, can still happen. And to me, I, after I have spent two weeks to think about it, don't feel comfortable voting from something, especially when I went and looked at it, it is our 60 years that it's been there. And the 60 years says it right there. So I personally am more on the side with this to leave our seal, but keep, can use what we've created in the proper ways that it can be used. And so that's, that's where I'm at. I don't feel like, you know, that we're at a place in 2025 to go back and change what was created in 1965. I don't, again, I just, that's how I, that's where I'm at with it. I'm only one of the four votes here, so I'll open this up to, to the rest of you guys. And I don't see anybody.
Me, request to speak.
All right. Is it not working again?
Well, it doesn't matter. This wasn't taking time until you chose to make it take time. This was going to be, no, no, it's my turn. All right, it's, it's, it was a consent item, we just had discussion on it yesterday, and it, this isn't something that costs any substantive amount of money. It was, it was a handful of bucks one time to, and the other thing it did is it took the, the seal, which was a bitmap, which was pixelated, and turned it into a scalable vector graphic. So it is actually properly a modern digital document as well. That was the other thing that the old seal as a file didn't have properly, because it was a scan of a, of a, of a hand-drawn item from so long ago. So it was updated so that it could be properly reproduced with modern digital technology. And it was also fixed along the way, because the caller was right, it doesn't show Lakeview Commons as being within the city limits. And I appreciate the historical aspects of it, where it's been like this for a long time, but it's also had the equivalent of a spelling error in it since, since 1966, and it hasn't never been changed. It isn't the original city seal from the city's original incorporation, it's been changed before. And we're not making a substantive change to it. We're not redesigning it, we're not putting in new graphics and changing it in all kinds of ways. We're just correcting one dash out of the line. And the fact that it's taking up this much time and attention is a choice that was made, is being made by the mayor, not actually a choice that we needed to do. We could have been done with this already. And as to the other caller, I agree that there are more important issues like SNAP and, you know, the, the increasing cost of healthcare that's going to come, but just that those aren't city things. I think those are important things, and, you know, when, when that did intersect with city, with, with, for example, Prop 50, that was a priority item. And I was very frustrated at, say, the reporting in SF Gate that said that this was center focus at the last meeting, which was absolute rubbish. This was the last item at the end of a, of an eight-hour, it was a nine-hour meeting, and we spent about 15, it was maybe 10 minutes on the entire issue, when we spent over an hour talking about making auxiliary, the building of ADUs more affordable, when we talked about housing, when we talked about building standards, when we talked about a dozen other things that were more important, that did actually take up most of the time. We're allowed, and it's, there are small things that need to get fixed, and you fix small things that take small amounts of time. And the fact that this has now taken this much time and attention is a choice, and a poor one at that.
Thank you for your opinion. Anybody else that would like to speak? Mr. Jenkins?
I did not have the opportunity, or the pleasure of being for, here for the last segment of this topic. And I guess, so I'm hearing some of this first time. I'm, I'm, I'm hearing the conversation. I wasn't sure originally why we had to change it, but I understand from the point, Mr. Councilmember Robbins, that what is right is right. What we do in city government, we're supposed to do what's right. And if something is not right, then we, we fix it. And if there's something that's historically wrong, then you make it presently right, I guess, might, if, if you have the power to do that. So, you know, I didn't actually, for the 35 years that I served as a city manager in different cities, I never knew that the seal had to be adopted by ordinance or changed by ordinance. I, 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 that was a surprise to me. Yeah, but, so anyway, I'd, I'd be interested in what, what, if any other member of the council has comments, but I think if there are things that are wrong, you fix them. And fixing, it's just like going back and looking at, at history. You say, oh, well, this is, everything was wonderful in our history, and everyone was happy, and really the South wasn't that bad. Well, that's not history, so you need to sometimes correct things if they're wrong. But that's just my thing.
Great. Mr. Roberts, any comments?
I don't have much to add. It just seems, I understand the inaccuracy of it, but the, the seal as a whole is not accurate, and is more symbolic than it is a representation of, of an accurate map or anything. So I, and I didn't really, I underestimated the value of the, you know, the historic value and the attachment that, that especially our city clerk has with it. So, you know, I really am looking at not changing it myself.
Okay, so with that, I guess we've, we're, I'll entertain a motion one way or the other?
I'll approve item six to amend the city seal as indicated.
Okay, is there a second?
For purposes of a vote, I'll second his motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We can vote.
We're going to get this out of the way. What is this thing here? Why is this doing? Oh, thank you. Interesting. No, that's all right, you're better than I am.
Well, you just want to tell how you're voting.
What is your vote?
Yes, I, I'll own the motion.
That motion fails.
So with a failed motion, the item doesn't move forward, or do we need another motion to, how do, how do we move forward?
I don't think we need a motion, it's dead.
Okay. All right, so, Ms. Blankenship, I'm going to need some technical assistance. I think we should somehow close time out, if we could just get a minute here to. All right, moving on to our regular unfinished business, and this will be item number eight, the city council appointment to a limited term. Let's see, so first, how we're going to do this, we'll go ahead and open it up if we have any council member questions, and then from there, we will move into public comment. So are there any questions, not to candidates, just to staff? You'll have the opportunity to ask questions to candidates if you'd like.
Could I just?
Yeah.
And I just want to say how impressed I am, and this is a, I guess I could put a question mark at the end of this. I'm impressed with the number of people in our community who want to serve and who've taken the time to make the application and want to serve their community. And I think that's an incredible statement about the people who live here. And I want to thank all of you for that. That's it.
All right, all right. Unless there's questions for staff, we're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. So the way we will be doing this is we're going to first take public comment from anybody that is not an applicant. So if you're here to speak about one of the applicants, or you want to support an applicant, you're just from the public, go ahead and come forward first. We'll then take the same public comment from Zoom, and then we will go through the list of applicants, where you'll have three minutes to address the council. So with that, I will go ahead and order, excuse me, open public comment for anybody in the room that is not on the applicant list that would like to give public comment on this item. Is there any, yes, Mr. Moser?
Good evening, good Moser, South Lake Tahoe. First point is concerning Mr. Roberts and Mr. Jenkins. You know, Mr. Roberts, you were basically chosen one there. Tammy, Tammy Wallace kind of provided you with the impetus and the votes to get on the planning commission and, and then for the police advisory, advisory commission. And, you know, believe you and Mr. Jenkins were both, won your seats there because of, mostly because of the backlash to measure N at the time. You know, you'd gotten a handful of votes the previous time you ran. Also, Mr. Jenkins, you know, your claim of good government for some years here now, and I followed you from pretty much the beginning when you were city manager here. And, you know, you echoed Dwayne Wallace every time you stood up as a chair, head of Chamber of Commerce in the VHR debate and concerning property rights, that the judge had a rule and tell you that they didn't have property rights, VHR owners. And I said for years that it was, that property rights was dictated by local ordinances, state laws, county laws and ordinances, and zoning, federal laws. So you didn't know really a basic, simple, simple thing of government and, and basic laws there for quite a few years. And, you know, I just feel that the both of you voted for Tammy to make her mayor. And I, you know, you didn't have very good judgment there. And again, for quite a few years, for 20 years, anybody that would listen, I'd tell them that Tammy and Dwayne were two of the biggest charlatans, or probably the two biggest charlatans in this town. So, you know, your judgment, I don't think is that sound. And myself, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give you a vote, but unfortunately, you do have a vote up there, and also for, for a number of other reasons. So my, I actually think that we should let the voters decide in June. You know, keep it as, keep it as it is, you know, there's somewhat of a balance, and, you know, it may prevent some things from getting through that we may not want to get through anyway, or be decided. So rather than sway one way or the other, especially on a couple of critical issues that are going to be facing, facing the council here. So I think let it go to the voters in June and not select anybody tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Is there anybody else in the room? Yes, Mr. Gregrich.
Good evening, David Gregrich, South Lake Tahoe. First, I want to agree with Mr. Jakins. I want to say how proud I am of our community, that 26 of you have submitted applications. Some of you I know, some of you I know of, and some of you I don't. But all the same, I commend you for putting your names forward, and this shows a broad level of commitment within the community. Last time, I spoke in favor of going directly to a June election. I still believe the election should be Plan A. I gave you the paraphrase of the first part of a Monty Python quote, "Political and policy legitimacy derives from a mandate from the masses." The second part is, "Not from some farcical aquatic ceremony." I know, you know, an election is an established method for selecting counsel. I'm not sure what the format is going to be for, for counsel, but I do want to make some comments before you interview and deliberate on the, on the 26 applicants.
Mr. Gregers, that'll be now, because next we'll, we'll interview the applicants. So any comments you want to give on them, go ahead and give them now.
Well, I sensed there may be a sense of urgency in some quarters to have this resolved and an appointment made before December, when you consider council officers and appointments and protocols. I believe this is a false sense of urgency. It should take a fair bit of time and effort to work through thoroughly and respectfully the 26 applicants. So take the time and effort to make a good decision, not a rushed decision. A few additional points, last year, we had an interim appointment of Mr. Middlebrook to fill the last two months of Ms. Krieger's vacancy. He had previously been elected, served creditably a full term, but his platform basically for this two-month appointment was, he'd be there, fill the seat, have some background if needed, kind of ensure a quorum, but he was not going to initiate policy. And as I recall, that's pretty much what he did. He didn't even second items. Another major consideration in that appointment was to not interfere in the ongoing council election of November 2024, which I, I'm sure Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Roberts appreciated at that time. So, okay, ran out of time. Support Plan A, the election.
Mayor, we need to pause the meeting so we can get our live stream back up. So if we could just take a few minutes and we'll come back when the live stream is back up.
Yeah, why don't we take a break until 6:25?
Thank you so much. I'm sorry for making you wait. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for making you wait.
It's not on the applicant list that wants to give public comment on the applicants. So is there anybody else in the room? Yes, Larry.
All right, it's got a red light. Okay, just for my two cents, it seems to me that the logical choice is Amy Estra, right? She got the most votes in 2024, she finished third. So I would say if this council is going to abide by democratic norms, Wallace, you know, she got the boot and rightly so. And I think the next person in line is basically Amy. I mean, that's just my humble opinion on that. There's a lot of things that the council is going to have to deal with. I know that that language with the V H, the VHR was a hot topic. There's roads, there's everything else in town. Regarding the Measure T that floated around when, when that was, that was the hot topic when Wallace resigned, real locals, I should point out that real locals of South Lake Tahoe passed Measure T despite millions of dollars to defeat it, okay? It was a close election, but it passed, okay? We also had a judge, Judge Sullivan upheld T, but then the powers that be that are, you know, the VHR people and everything else, they came along, they lawyered up and they got Judge Slossberg to overturn T, quote unquote, because it's not fair to the out-of-town owners. Well, I'm sorry, with, with respect, Your Honor, when I have guests visit my home, they're thankful. They don't throw trash in my yard, they don't trash my home, they don't get wasted, okay? They don't start to set my place on fire with cigarette butts, okay? And we all saw the debauchery on July 3, 2023, when guests left tons of trash on our beaches and it was a worldwide mess from these people. And that was after we had volunteer scuba divers pull 12 and a half tons of garbage out of the lake, okay? Volunteer people that went out and scuba dived and pulled trash out of the lake. So why did the people vote for T? That's the real question. Because over the decades of out-of-town millionaires, they just went too far with taking over our neighborhoods with their guests, okay? We saw our schools shut down on Nevada and California side and we panicked in 2004, okay? It's like, where was the town leading us? Or where were the people in charge supposedly leading us? I, for one, never fell for the snake oil of all that stuff. I felt like when the schools started to close and everything else, I felt like our town was not being run by locals anymore, okay? And I feel sorry, and those, that family of three that had that baby at that meeting, okay, they are the people that we need to be nurturing, not the VHR community. Because again, the only reason that VHRs exist is because a tax dodge that was created literally at the Augusta Golf Tournament in Georgia in 1970s, okay? They call it the Augusta Rule in the tax code so that they can get 14 days tax-exempt rent, okay? So I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just not going to feel sorry for these people that are coming into our town registering to vote and then dumping $175 a vote against Measure N. $175 a vote!
Mr. Pedego. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment? Yes, please come forward.
Hi. I guess my concern would be bias when it comes to being voted on by the four people here and whether or not that would reflect what the South Lake Tahoe community would want, as well as a strategic advantage for the person who does get voted in when it comes to the next election. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment on this item? Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name doesn't matter, but I'm going to tell you anyway. My name's Tim Powell, I've been a citizen of Lake Tahoe since 1980. And I read the article that was published in the Tribune, comments about needing the breath of fresh air, someone new, someone unbiased, the no hidden agendas. I think that's a good idea. I think bring someone in that doesn't have something up their sleeve just wanting to get on the council just so they can get their own agendas passed and someone with common sense and good morals. That's about all I got to say about that.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else here in the room? Yes, Mr. Poet.
Thank you, I'm Bob Poet. Hello, everyone. It's probably going to be a long night. So I imagine that many of us here will come home, get into our bedclothes, brush our teeth, go to bed. So it won't be hard for you to imagine that tonight. So I have a vision of going home and getting ready for bed that way and then going to brush your teeth and you suddenly realize you're out of toothpaste. I'm one of those guys that I got to have toothpaste. I can't use salt water, I can't just, you know, and I need to get to sleep. Maybe you're like that too. You got to go to sleep and you got to brush your teeth. And now you've got this tube of toothpaste that's not going to deliver. So what do you do? You squeeze it, right? You squeeze it, you try to roll it up, doesn't work. You try to squeeze it, go into the top. Now you've got a little nurdle, all you need is a little nurdle, right? You're trying to get that and then you grab this toothbrush when you see the nurdle come up and it goes back down, right? You've seen that happen, haven't you? Okay, so you get, you get your toothbrush with these fingers, you get the thumb and the, and then you go for it again and a nurdle comes up, you put it on the toothbrush, you got it and you did it, right? And now you brush your teeth and now you can go to bed. Okay. Bringing that into focus with this decision we all have to make, you have to make, there is a third way. There was an election, it was just over a year ago. And it was a big election, it was a national election, right? Biggest, what, that's 2024, Scott, the national election. And in that election, there were seven people running for city council. One of them quit, but was still on the ballot, she got votes anyway. And then though that election yielded a winner, Mr. Jenkins and also Mr. Roberts. So instead of waiting until June to have another election, a special election, a smaller election, for someone who will only serve for maybe three months because it'll be done in June and then you probably won't seat him until August and that seat will be up again in the next November. So there's a month of, just a few months here. Why not squeeze that election? Squeeze that election hard for just one more winner? And that could be your answer. And then that person can have the seat immediately. Thank you for listening.
I just want to ask him the date.
Sure, after the city manager, go ahead.
Mr. City Manager, I too was of the opinion that a special election would have to be in June. Am I incorrect in that one could be, there is a special election in April? Is that correct? I don't know.
No, I've coordinated with the city clerk's office and we have verification that the earliest an election can take place is June 2.
Oh, okay, well, thank you, thank you for the correction. Thank you.
All right, any other members of the public that would like to give public comment on this item? In the room, we're seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom.
Yeah, we have three, three hands raised right now. First up, we have Mr. Asbury.
Hello, thank you for your time and listening to me again. I was just going to go ahead and just state the obvious that I think a special election would be the most fair and balanced way forward. But I understand that maybe you guys decide that there's more of an urgent matter to fill the vacant seat. If that was the case, I would like to endorse Doug Williams. He's a well-known individual, fixture of the community, a productive member of the community that gives back through Christmas cheer all year and other organizations. He has a very good knowledge base of how the workings go in city government and is a local business owner. But yeah, I guess you guys have a big decision to make tonight. I wish you the best, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Okay, next up, we have Ms. Allen.
Thank you for allowing me to make a comment. I prefer that the council try to make an appointment from these 26 applicants. I'm really impressed that we have 26 applicants. But I think that it's too long to wait five and a half months or so in order to have a special election to fill the seat. I concur with the previous speaker who mentioned that it would be great to be able I concur with the previous speaker who mentioned that it would be great to be able to pick somebody that doesn't have a personal agenda and that could be really neutral and vote on behalf of the community. I, I think that, I tried to read all these applications and I think we have some very qualified people. I don't have anybody to personally support, but I think that you probably have a better idea. I would also recommend that since tonight is probably going to go late, that the council perhaps have a special meeting scheduled soon in order to be able to deliberate the, what their thoughts are about the interviews of these applicants and to come together and make a decision that will be the, in the best, the best for the community of South Lake Tahoe and going forward. I think that our council can do this. I have faith and I, I hope that you kind of, when you're looking at these applications and looking at and listening to these interviews, that you will kind of also put aside your own personal agendas and try and select somebody to fill this five and a half months that will be able to kind of help bring the council together and to do what's best going forward for the city of South Lake Tahoe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Okay, next up, we have Ms. Steele.
Thank you. Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I'm Karen Steele. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I'd just like to express my endorsement for Amy. She is one of the first people I ever met when I moved to Tahoe over seven years ago. And I've just seen the work that she's done tirelessly in the community, supporting so many different groups of people and especially the work with the Boys and Girls Club, which is so essential to the community, our youth, and really being an advocate for children. And I guess the main reason I'd like to express my endorsement is because she's a really good friend and listener and I think she's open to all views and she's approachable. And to me in a town like Lake Tahoe, I think having someone that you feel comfortable with and you can reach out to and just connect with and have someone to listen to you is really important. And I know she would work tirelessly for the city and I know she did do very well in the last city council, so I hope that would be a consideration of how hard she worked. And I'd just like to say she's a great person. She's ethical, honest, she's caring and she would be an excellent addition to the city council. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have caller with the last four digits of your telephone number are 5460.
Oh, I think that's my phone. Sorry, I think it's my.
No. Caller with the, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi. Hi, everybody. Hi, Council, it's Robin Johnson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Oh, good. I just wanted to echo everything that Ms. Judy Allen just said in her call. And I think that we have a lot of applicants and everybody deserves the time and attention to review their qualifications. Some of them are new and we don't know who they are. So I think a special meeting to further the discussion would be prudent and would allow the public to have more opportunity to review and weigh in on their commentary. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Ms. Ballard.
Hi, everyone. Stacy Ballard. I believe this should be left up to the voters. I hate to burst everyone's bubble, but we are not going to find a shiny golden person that doesn't have skeletons in their closet and doesn't have an agenda. We all have agendas and we all have skeletons in our closet, whether we're in there playing with them or not, you know, no one knows. But I just, you know, I want to know that this person is LGBTQ plus friendly. I just don't think we know enough about some of these people. So that's my, my opinion and I think we should have a special election. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. And we have no additional public comments, Mayor. I, oh, I'm sorry. I should note for the record that we did receive written comments from Kemper, Bryson, Thomaselli and Landy with support for their candidates. And then we also received public comments from Manfredi and Johnson. And then we did receive application withdrawals from Peverini, Rea Junior, Richardson and Baloa.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. All right. So with that, we're going to go ahead and open this up. I will also say this is really great to see this level of participation from our citizens. This is what, you know, local government and the public process and public business is all about. And, you know, when I joined here seven years ago, I can say there was not anywhere close to this level of public participation. So I think it's a great thing for our community, for the future of our community. And yeah, with that, I've got a list here that I can go ahead and just call everybody up from. It's basically drawn from the order of when folks turned in their applications. So I think that's a good way to go ahead and just bring everybody up to the podium to give three minutes of your time with council. So with that, the first name on that list is Dinah Bowen. Excuse me if I don't correct your last name right, but if you don't mind, correct me if you would, for everybody.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Dinah Bowen. So it's like dynamite. It's spelled the same way. Child of the seventies, so having me was not just because I know a lot of you don't know me. Dynamite, dynamite.
I'm sorry, you cannot speak until you're in front of the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll repeat myself. I don't have enough. Your, your three minutes is running.
Okay. Great. So, hi, I'm Dinah Bowen and again, it's pronounced Dinah like dynamite. And actually, I just want to start with the timing. I am not in a rush to be on city council. What I'm most interested in is that we pick the right person to be on city council for our town and for the people of our town. And that's the most important thing, whether it's now or in June. To give you a little bit of sense of who I am, I'll start with what I do when I'm not working. I like to mountain bike in South Lake Tahoe. I love this area for that. I like to ski and I practice yoga regularly at Omni Studio over by Safeway. As a South Lake Tahoe resident, I'm passionate about preserving our natural beauty, supporting local businesses and fostering a vibrant community that we all want to live in. I'm currently completing my executive MBA at Stanford Graduate School of Business. I'm 53 years old and I'm still working on improving myself and upping my education and I hope to use that to contribute to our community. After co-founding two startups and experiencing an IPO, which was a lot of fun and also a lot of luck and a lot of work, and going through some mergers and acquisitions and turnarounds, I now lead a major business practice for a market research company, which means I'm a data-driven leader. So I make decisions based on facts, I make decisions on data and I make decisions on what I think are the best for my constituents. I don't have an agenda for South Lake Tahoe other than to support a thriving community. I currently also serve on a national board called the Insights Association and I will be the incoming treasurer of that board. So I deal with a lot of spreadsheets and numbers and I manage a P and L right now. My business does market research for some of the biggest brands in the world, companies like Starbucks and T-Mobile and McDonald's and New Balance and companies that we all know and love. I'm a proven leader and I have a track record for driving growth and that's what I'd like to see in terms of business growth for our town so that our community can prosper. I also have a reputation for building strong teams. I'm all about collaboration and if I were to be on council, I will collaborate with all of you, even if we don't share the same views. Also, I just want you to know that I'm extremely transparent and I love creating opportunities for all. And I look for that with my clients, I look for that with my team and I look for that with my coworkers. I also want to say that if you really want to get to know me better, the best way is to talk to me.
Great. Thank you, Dinah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Andrew Contreras.
Are we going to do questions?
So yes, if we would like to open the questions, we could do that.
I'd like to have.
That's fine. If you'd like, just leave, if you could use the request to speak for, so I know if, if you'd like to have a question, but yes, go ahead, Mr. Robin.
What is your position on the V H R 150 foot buffer rule?
If you can come to the microphone, please, yes. All right. So I need to learn more about it. I don't have a strong position right now and I'd like to understand the facts so that I can make an informed decision on that one. But I'm happy to answer other questions.
Great. Any other questions? No? Yes.
What do you see as the, the largest challenge with our city right now and what do you see are some of the obstacles that are preventing us from being successful at solving it?
Well, I think that there's big things and small things. So, you know, sometimes it's just the visual nature of our city. We live in a tourist community and our families and residents here depend on that income. And I think it's about finding a balance with that. I think about things like being able to be a hospitable town, but also asking our guests to be respectful of the people that live here and of our environment and of our wildlife. And so I think that there's an opportunity to have respectful guests in our town. I also just think that, I don't know about you guys, but when you drive from Nevada into South Lake Tahoe, the roads, you notice the roads. You drive into Nevada, the roads are fantastic. You drive into South Lake Tahoe and you're worried about having to put new tires on your car. So I think that that is something that just, it represents how you feel when you drive into our town and having respect for our town and the environment that we live in.
Any other questions?
Yeah, okay.
All right. I guess I would have one question. Are you aware of who maintains Highway 15?
I am not aware of that, but I would imagine that it's taxpayer dollars that go to that and we all pay a lot of taxes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Contreras.
My name is Andrew Contreras. I was a born and raised local here from '86. I graduated here in 2004. I went off and joined the Navy, served our country honorably during that time. I was a distinguished graduate from Basic Engineering Common Core. I had earned a specific title as a Damage Control Training Team Member onboard the USS Abraham Lincoln. After that time, I had gone and furthered my education through Bryant University, got my applied, or my bachelor in applied fitness and exercise. After not really wanting to go that way with my life, I did go back towards engineering. I did, I also, back in 2013, I was a big part of why Big Five came here to South Lake Tahoe and I was one of the founding managers there until about 2015. I went, had a, furthered my career with Vale and I took over a couple of stores there for a number of years before I went back to engineering. Currently, I am a plumber at Lake Tahoe Plumbing and Heating, so I do live in the, in the life of ensuring our watershed, public, our public water safety. I am a backflow tester. I report with stupid. I also, I also deal constantly with the city and TRPA with permitting and whatnot for my business or part of the business I help with. I know, I realize I don't have a lot of council experience or anything like that. I have helped out in the community since I've lived here and really I'm coming to you guys as a fresh mind. I know, no agendas, which seems to be a big deal on everyone's plate here. I do have experience with leadership with multiple brand businesses that have gone very, been very successful here in town, including Lake Tahoe Plumbing and Heating. And again, I, I work every day with our watershed. I have myself discovered a couple of different problems with the lake in this last year, including the Tahoe Keys Pool, which was discovered to be polluting the lake. That was my job that I'd found that on. And I strive to do the right thing for Tahoe. My main goals are to protect the lake itself. There's a lot of things tied together with the vacation home rentals and sediment stream. So I do concede the rest of my time. Thank you.
Contreras, let me see, we may have some questions. Is it not working? So I'll just go around the horn since.
I'm not working.
I'm not working.
My request to speak isn't working.
Okay, so let's go this way this time. We'll start with Mr. Roberts, next time I'll go the other way. Mr. Roberts.
The same question. What do you, what do you see as the biggest challenge in our city right now and what do you see are the obstacles standing in the way?
I see is balancing our tourism with lake, lake health. That is a big deal right now. I've seen, I've been gone about 10 years and the quality of our lake and our beaches have diminished greatly in that time. So I think that needs to be our utmost important thing. We really look at is the quality of our natural habitat around ourselves that we're kind of derelict to take care of here.
Thank you.
First, I just want to say that we, we're happy to have good plumbers in town. We need those. And I want to congratulate you on your Lake Tahoe cleanup and your being a special Olympics coach. That's a, I just want to say that's a, a good thing that you're involved in in your community.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Roberts.
What's your position on the V H R 150 foot buffer rule?
I work pretty closely with a lot of V H Rs, being the plumber. And I also see it from a local standpoint and as, and as also a person that wants to buy a home here in the valley that also doesn't want to pay as much as some of them are going for now. I, I'll give my straight answer. I don't like the rule. I think it needs to be reformatted completely and we'll have to find a good middle basis for this to happen.
Reformatted into what?
Say again?
Reformatted into what?
Oh, we need to come up with it. I don't have any specific ideas for you. The 150 foot rule, it, it seems not significant enough in some neighborhoods. There's a lot of complaints with noise complaints. I heard the bearer testament, which I saw today at a vacation home doing such things. There's always been a fine balance in the city between tourism and local residents and I think that needs to be refound up here.
What legislative actions would you take to address the housing crisis in South Lake Tahoe?
I'd need, I'd need a lot more information before I can give you an informed statement on that one. That's a pretty deep conversation to have. Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Contreras. Thank you for your service and thank you for being willing to serve your community. All right, next, we are going to go to Mr. Robert Gonzalez.
I should say it's Bobby. I would like to thank everyone here for giving us all the opportunity, this very unique opportunity. I will also have to address some misrepresentations and omissions by the Tahoe Tribune, including that my double major at LTCC would have been a triple major if they had a physical sciences degree. They don't. Also, I did earn a full ride scholarship at UCI. More to talk about. I was born and raised here. I will start by mentioning that we all know in the back of our minds that there's an unfortunate controlling significance to public speaking skills in electoral politics and a society's focus on appealing narratives as opposed to complex facts and material has hurt us, hurt society at large in the past and it will keep hurting us. As stated in my application, I submitted my application for the purpose of bringing forward many pages and gigabytes of revenue generating and housing plans for the city. I listed in it in order to effectively obtain the city's strategic priority number one, ability for everyone who works here to live here. That happens to be very, very, very important right now. I can't emphasize enough, neither can any of the rest of us. Basically, the Tribune only really said, oh, I like housing issues, that's nice, but their narrative totally overshadows, that is my major priority. And their narrative also overshadows the many other community action and business projects that I've been working on for many years now myself. The Tribune really should have mentioned something about my long list of short and long-term revenue generating plans for the city with the goal of cutting as many taxes as possible one day in the future when it's feasible. They could have also mentioned I raise the significance of this interesting vacancy process in our small town compared to a large town regarding the open seat, whether certain aspects of reconstructing the city code would instead maybe be better put forward to voters by the ballot initiative. I must also represent how the Tribune misrepresented disorderly conduct. So when I did not hear back from the city by email at first initially, I sent an additional application file briefly describing the sequence of events at the university in my high-impact litigation that I mentioned in my, in my application. Following a discovery of a photo of my former heaven- Following a discovery of a photo of my former heavenly warehouse boss at my SoCal University Law School career webpage? Hmm, there's a coincidental explanation for that, that I, and this is also something I can authenticate for everybody as well. Let's just think, so-called disorderly conduct, unofficial expulsion, sorry, by ignorance and lawbreaking, is any of this correctional proportionality, is any of it legal? I earned a full ride scholarship in a very polarized environment. Uh, I would have rather had my investigation of local planning documents related to strategic priority number one mentioned in the Tribune as opposed to, uh, the holistic...
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Questions? Well, hold on, we may have some questions. Mr. Robbins, do you have any questions? No. Uh, Mr. Roberts?
I, I would just like to hear the same question. I understand priority number one for you is our priority number one. I would want, what are the obstacles that you see that are preventing us from getting there?
Uh, so one of the obstacles, I mean, we could talk about a variety of obstacles. One of them happened to come up in this meeting. It's not gonna sound related at first, but it totally is. So, Tahoe asphalt. Why have things increased there? Why has business increased there? We need more industry here. This is not a simple situation, but part of the housing issue is creating more, very carefully, creating more industry here. And I didn't get to talk about any of my plans and, you know, thoroughly reading, investigating, collaborating over the city business 'cause of the time that I will have that all these other busy people may not have. That is really, I really need to say that. We have some pretty busy people in the mix, and I had, just have so much available time and a quite specific set of skills to help thoroughly read, investigate, and collaborate over specially, uh, industry, local housing, and even how Tahoe asphalt, uh, in, in mixes into all of it. But I did not go around grabbing, uh, community endorsements, uh, from anyone else. It sounds like I should have, but I would, real quick, if, uh, if it's not me, I would totally endorse others, but specifically, anyone who is not a tech bro of any kind. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, any questions? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez.
All right, no more questions? All right, thank you.
Yes. All right, uh, we're gonna go on to Albert, excuse me, Alberto Fernando Manfredi. I believe I got that right. All right, Manfredi, I got, almost got it right. Excuse me, sir.
First of all, I wanna thank you, Mayor Bass, council members, giving this opportunity to speak. We know each other, I know you guys, so... Okay. I'm gonna start off first with the recent article that came out, uh, too, about an indictment on me on two thousand and six. The article's fine. Problem is, it didn't fully explicit everything that happened, which was the most important. The government itself fully dismissed the charges based on evidence that it found, and the truth came out. And after that is what matters. Soon after, I was brought out of retirement from the military, commissioned in the Army as an intelligence officer, recruited by the DIA, and then asked to serve NATO as their advisors, and also teach at the NATO School of Intelligence. These positions require high-level, top-secret clearances, which have multiple level. If there's any doubt in anybody's background, you're not gonna get these clearances, much less represent the United States. With that being said, I also speak Spanish and do a lot with the community here in the Hispanic community. I'm fluent, that is my first language. I was an interpreter for the military, the DIA, and no matter what happens, I'm here to help within the community for Spanish speaking. One of the things that matters to me is this city and its people. And what's important here is an opportunity to join all of you here in South Lake Tahoe, to be able to come up with a very non-biased forum where we could come to terms in what's best for the residents here. And that is probably the most important part. I've learned through my career that teamwork, diplomacy is very important, and being able to work across borders. When I was at NATO, we had to deal with a lot of nations, and there's a lot of hostility, but we're able to come in, write doctrine and policy. Doesn't matter how high the level is. Everybody needs to respect everybody, but it's a team, and I believe in teamwork. It's not one person, two, or, you know, few others. It is all of us working together. What can we do as a team for the residents of this city and the city itself? Okay. On, on that note, one thing that is important to me, living here, and my wife and I love Lake Tahoe. I already serve on four commissions for South Lake Tahoe. You've read my reports, I've already written them. Being retired, I have the time to contribute.
Great, thank you, Mr. Manfredi. We may have some questions. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, the, the same question. What, what do you see as the biggest challenges for our city? And what do you see are obstacles standing in, in the way?
Our biggest challenge, I'd say, housing is probably the biggest issue with the workers that we have here. And I also gave you a little snippet about HOAs. Our biggest obstacle is trying to get funding and trying to come up with a way to where average people here can be able to afford to live here and work here, instead of just being a rental town or wealthy. So, and I think together, we'll be able to do that. I gave you a snippet about legislation that I wrote for the state. I would approach it in the same way. As a team, we all approach it. Not one person. I don't have no agenda. My goal is to work here as a team.
Yes, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
First, Mr. Manfredi, uh, thank you for your distinguished service to our country, and maybe, you're sure they're not gonna call you back to NATO because they probably need some help right now in, in some issues?
They already called me once. I don't think they're gonna do it again.
You don't wanna go. You, I think your resume said that you had, you operate a company. Do you see any conflict in what your company is in relationship, conflict of interest? Is there any, is there any concern about that?
No, I don't see no concern, because what, what happened is you also see, I'm finishing up that PhD, so I'm in the dissertation stage. So more time's being dedicated to that, so I've, the company, I'm closing it down, putting more focus on minimizing suicide rate, um, suicides of PTSD and veterans and first responders, so that's gonna take that time to that.
Great, uh, Mr. Robbins?
What's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule?
I think that is something, as a team, we should collaborate and see what is best for the residents and the city. I don't think it's a position on, my position could be different than yours. What's important is, can we work together, come to resolution, to keep the city intact, the residents intact?
What, you mentioned housing. What legislative actions would you prioritize, uh, in your term to address the housing crisis? Specific legislative actions?
Well, you know, one of the things is, like I said, I wrote legislation already that's gonna go to the State Assembly. Uh, working together as a team, we could all come in and do the same thing to try to work with our state legislation, our county, and also within the city to help with housing and work with the city manager at the same time. It's not a simple process, but together it can be done.
Great, uh, thank you, Mr. Manfredi. Thank you for your service and for being willing to serve our community.
Thank you.
All right, uh, this is gonna be Mr. Garrett Moses. And if I said that wrong, I don't... Is he maybe outside? I'll give him a minute or two more, or no, is there anybody online that's blinking? Nobody online? All right, Jared Moses, if he is here, we can come back to him at the end. I'm gonna go ahead and move on. This will be Ms. Nerissa Marin. An apologies if I'm not saying your name correct again, just correct me if I am wrong.
Good evening, everyone. I thank you for this opportunity. My name is Nerissa Marin. I've submitted an application for this position because I love this town. I believe this is the most direct way that I can have a positive impact and be a voice for the people as well as the ecosystem. I've lived in South Lake Tahoe for over thirty-one years. During this time, I have gained valuable experience, skills, and practical knowledge while sharing similar situations with many of our residents. I have been a minimum wage employee with multiple roommates. I've worked in the service industry and retail. I was in management for a corporation and have been employed by small businesses. I have been a student and a teacher. I earned an A-A degree in Spanish and early childhood education with LTCC. I went on to teach Spanish to first through fifth graders and help facilitate preschool and kindergarten. My husband and I opened our own business, Lake Monster Tattoo and Body Piercing, in two thousand and one. We are still in business twenty-four years later and are now homeowners. Through our business, I get the unique opportunity to converse with locals and tourists alike on a daily basis. I am not surrounded by people in just one or two demographics that share the same beliefs and goals. Our clientele is extremely diverse and come from all walks of life. They are varied in age, race, profession, and political leaning. Some live at home, some are renters, some are homeowners, and others are landlords. Because of the intimate nature of what we do and the trust we build, people readily open up. We engage in candid conversations about a variety of topics. I hear their concerns, frustrations, hopes, and things that bring them joy. I believe this unique insight directly relates to and would be a benefit, uh, a position on city council. Although my husband and I have supported just about every organization and many fundraisers and events, I am not directly involved with any. This ensures I will not favor any particular entity over another. I am not seeking to put another feather in my cap or addition to my resume. I do not hold multiple positions, and my job doesn't extend beyond business hours. I can dedicate the necessary time to thoroughly research the topics we are tasked with voting on. I am driven, hardworking, and honest. I am inquisitive and a seeker of truth. I am stoic by nature and will not make uninformed or emotional decisions. I care deeply for our community and the ecosystem, preservation of our beautiful, pristine lake. The ecosystem within and around it are everything. Without that, we have nothing. All of our livelihoods are dependent upon maintaining this unique gem. It has existed for millions of years, and we are now the current stewards and must ensure not only its survival, but prevent any further decline. What we do now will be a factor in the outcome. If appointed, I promise to represent with integrity. I will be fully available, responsive, and accountable to residents. I will support progress that fits our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, questions? We'll start this time with Mr. Robbins.
Question, what is your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer?
I would have to have more information to know exactly the specifics. I do believe there should be a cap of some sort. I don't know that that's necessarily the answer. Again, I would just have to have more information to be absolutely sure.
And what specific legislative or policy actions would you advocate for to address the housing crisis? And please be specific in your answer.
I honestly don't. I would have to see, you know, what options are, are out there and, and talk to people about that. I don't have any in mind in terms of legislation that I, you know, that would be a definitive, um, response to that. I don't know.
Thank you.
It's obviously an issue, though.
Uh, well, let's keep going around the horn.
No, no, it's fine.
Okay, well, Mr. Roberts, any questions?
Yeah, the same question. Um, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the city? And what do you see are obstacles in, in front of that?
I would say balancing the preservation of the lake and the surrounding ecosystem while having progress but not caving to outside influence or entities.
Thank you.
¿Puedes hablar español?
I'm sorry?
¿Puedes hablar español? You speak Spanish?
Yes.
Yeah. You, you, you had said that you speak Spanish, so I just wanted to...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, that's okay, something, yeah. My wife never says that. Thank you.
Um, let's see, I guess my only question for you maybe is just, do you understand the role of city council? Also does include multiple other roles on different commissions throughout the city that you'd possibly be appointed to, so, uh, just understood, just...
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
I'm just not spread so thin that I can't take more on. I'm actually at a time in my life now where I could dedicate the time and energy that's required.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, let's see, we are gonna move on. Our next is gonna be Mr. Christopher Neal.
Mr. Mayor, council, council members, great to meet you. Good evening. My name's Chris Neal, South Lake Tahoe, Tahoe Sierra resident. Uh, and while I've been coming here off and on for about twenty years to visit my mom, really, it's been the last two months that I've been able to call this a full-time resident. So I'm probably one of your newest folks around here. I originally wanted to apply for this role for three reasons. First of all, like anyone else, you read the headlines, and the circumstances for the vacancy are obviously not optimal, and that needs to be fixed, right? And if we don't do an election, we gotta have people that are, that are coming here to do it. Second thing is, I like to, you know, be involved. So like, where I came from before, every time I've moved somewhere, to get to know, better know a community, is to be involved, and to build the community, you need to be active. And that's what kinda brought me here. And especially like, just following the council recently, I've learned so much about the community, and then even tonight has been massively educational. And the third one's kind of expanded a little bit. It was, hey, you know, come here, meet everybody, you know, see you all face-to-face instead of being on the Zoom, Zoom camera, so you can recognize my face. And then it's sort of, you know, when they published that there's gonna be like twenty-five other folks, I was like, that's pretty cool. Like you all say that, hey, it's, there's an opportunity that everyone wants to kinda participate and meet everyone else. So I thought it was pretty cool to, to come down here. But if I'm, if you all select me for the council member role, the question is like, what can I offer? Right, what can I do for you? And hopefully, first of all, be like competence. I'm a retired Marine, I retired at twenty-two, got out, but for the last three years, I'm working as a software engineer, although I would not consider myself a tech bro. But, uh, I found myself in a variety of situations, and I, I, I figure I can handle for the most, and, but the best part is I've been able to learn from all those experiences. I kinda bring that to the table. I do like to bring some enthusiasm, and I wanted to reinforce that by like watching your, all your, uh, all your presentations and going through it. And again, it's been pretty cool learning about ADUs and cannabis taxes and, and everything else we've got going on in the community. And the third thing is really, and it sounds unfortunately important, but I really don't have any conflicts. I have ties in the community for my mom's friends, but they're mostly anecdotal, and they don't know I'm here today. I don't have any ties for the most part in terms of any businesses, and all I wanna do is see the best for the community. And to kinda anticipate your question, you know, in terms of like challenges for the community, you know, what I tend to see is, there's universal challenges, you know, affordability, right? Finding jobs, but they always have that special like South Lake Tahoe spin to them here, right? You have businesses, or as you say, you have residents versus non-residents, people that own properties, rental properties, humans versus bears, you know, anxiety versus, um, you know, basically nature, right? So there's different spins. And what challenges our community is like little microcosms of that, right? So everyone I meet is just doing what they can to survive, to find small jobs so they can pay. Where they wanna live, they're looking for any housing. And I know you're gonna ask me questions about that.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. So we will go, Mr. Roberts, did, any other?
It's good, you got me.
Nice, uh, Mr. Jenkins. No questions, all right, Mr. Robbins?
I cheated. What's your position on the hundred-and-fifty-foot VHR buffer rule?
So again, like everyone else, I deserve a little bit more education than that, but I did have a little bit of time being like number five. So I'm like Googling, you know, like, all right, what's that rule? And it looks like ostensibly to minimize clustering for, uh, VHRs. But I'll be honest, I'm not a huge VHR fan in general, right? I, I, I'm here for the community, and I think one of the challenges we have with VHRs is they tend to divide communities, especially when you have a lot of people that are VHRs surrounding residents. I know that could be very, very problematic for the people that live here. So if that is to minimize clustering, I'm absolutely for it, and maybe the buffer needs to be greater. But again, I need to educate myself.
What specific legislative or policy actions would you advocate for to address the housing crisis?
So, there's a couple things here that are anecdotal. A, I did like the ADU thing. I think that's a great one. You have prefabricated ADUs that are coming in, because I think people need to be, build things quickly. Because a common complaint I've had, again, from conversations with my mom's friends or whatever, one of the challenges here is mitigating, working with, say, like the TRPA. I mean, how many people have you met that are like, I can't build something because it's getting planned, sent back and modified, whether that's a business or a home, where you just wanna build a shed to cover your car? And I know there's parcels here that also don't allow houses or any properties, and so you're like, I have a huge area that I just can't put a home or anything on there. And I, and I wonder if that's gonna be a challenge as we bring in, say, prefabricated ADUs.
Sure, Mr. Jenkins.
I just wanna congratulate you for your service to our country, and the Marines, Semper Fi.
Great, uh, Mr. Neal, I guess my question would be, just 'cause you're, you know, you've been here for two months, will you run, um, if we move to a special election in June? Would you plan to run a campaign to be elected in June? Or in the case that we appoint somebody, the three seats that will become available in November, would you plan to run a campaign in those elections?
I haven't planned it. I didn't even consider it till this came up.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service and being willing to serve our community. All right, uh, with... With that, we are going to go to Mr. Joe Ensoave.
I'm Joe Ensoave. That's a tough one. Yeah, thank you. I'm Joe Ensoave. I'm a CPA here in South Lake. I began my career as an auditor, mostly for nonprofits, including government audits. And then I moved away from external audits and became more of a consultant, again, mostly for nonprofits, doing a lot of things like helping them get ready for their external audits, as well as special projects like writing policies and procedures manuals and grants analysis projects, things like that. For the past 10 years, I've devoted about 90% of my time to SingleTrack Accounting. That's an accounting firm, and we work for over 100 small businesses. I'm the accounting manager. We do bookkeeping, payroll, and tax services for them. I've been in Tahoe since 2006. My wife and I also owned the Keys Cafe in its heyday from 2008 to 2014. We sold the cafe in 2014. We hit the road, traveled the country in our RV for almost four years, and we were visiting a lot of towns, also camp hosting as volunteer hosts at a lot of public parks. We, I bring that up because we learned a lot during that time about a lot of towns around the country that face the same issues that we do. Growth concerns, tourism, affordability, towns like Steamboat Springs, Colorado, Telluride, Duluth, Minnesota. But anyway, we ended up back here in 2018, this time for good, because we cannot find anywhere else in the country that we would rather live. I'm here tonight because of that, because I love Tahoe. I'm optimistic and excited about where the town is at today, a lot of the new building and businesses going in. I think we have lots of potential. There's a lot of great new energy, young energy now, and I want to be a part of it going forward, and I think I have something to offer. I'm a policy nerd. I have a curiosity for how things work and how they can be improved and solved. I'm interested in fiscal stewardship and accountability, affordability, and an economy that works for all, and environmental stewardship. I do focus on solutions. I live in the solutions, not on things we can't control or things in the past that we can't change. I come to you with humility and an open mind, free of any political ambition, ulterior motives, drama, or conflicts of interest. I care only about working together for the greater good of my hometown by listening and being of service in any way I can. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Joe. Let's start with Mr. Roberts this time, or did I do that? Yeah. Losing track of which is.
Yeah. What do you see are the biggest challenges for the city, and what kind of obstacles are you seeing in the place, in the front of that?
Yeah, I think the biggest immediate one is affordability. I think the obstacle is lack of inventory, and I think there's things that can be done. Many of them need to be in conjunction with, like the state, for example, Sugar Pine, but I think there are specific things that we can do here in the city to encourage more inventory of affordable housing.
Well, thank you for your application. I would gather from what you do that you understand fiscal integrity, financial constraints, and you have an insight on good budget practices. Is that a fair assumption that I make?
Yes. I'm an expert in analyzing financial statements and reports and forensic accounting. I did a lot of that. So, yeah, definitely my skill set is on the fiscal side.
Great. Mr. Robbins?
I'll ask my questions in the reverse order since you talked about, you said there are a number of things you think we can do. What things would those be?
Yeah, for example, there's a lot of things that can be done through tax policy. We've seen some successful things in other towns, for example, tax incentives to encourage renting long-term versus short-term, or building, you know, like Steamboat Springs did some things where deed restrictions on new developments to make sure that those went into the inventory of more affordable housing rather than just investment houses and short-term rentals.
Or any others that you had in mind? I just want to give you the opportunity to elaborate on some of those specific things you mentioned, too. So if you had any others, I want to make sure you get a chance.
Yeah, so I would definitely, like someone else said, I'd like to learn more about what exactly the city can do on its own. I think a lot of the things need to be done in conjunction with the county or the state, like Sugar Pine. I think I would do everything I could to be researching all of that and open to any opportunity like Sugar Pine that came along, you know, that we could take advantage of if we think it's the right way to go.
And what's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule?
So I'm in support of restrictions on VHRs. I, along with the majority of the city, voted for Measure T, not because I thought it was the greatest written measure ever, but at the time, it was the best solution on the table. The offer was the best option that we had. So if the 150, if it's 150 rule versus nothing, I would support it. If it's 150 versus an overall cap, I'm open to that discussion. I'd like to learn more about the advantages of, you know, other alternatives, but I'm definitely in support of anything that would get us back to the situation that allowed Measure T to arise and pass, which was out-of-control VHRs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have one question. With your financial background, what do you see, where do you see our financial position right now as a city? And what do you feel in the history of our financial department and where we exist and kind of our credibility in the financial world, from what you know?
Yeah, sorry, I missed the last part. There's a couple.
Yeah, like, just knowing your expertise in the financial world, have you reviewed kind of our financial stance and the credibility of our city and where kind of our financial position is right now? What's your opinion?
Yeah, I haven't, I've only done it at a high level, you know, just in preparation for this, which came about pretty quickly. So, you know, I'm not going to give a detailed analysis, but I would say my initial impression was that there's plenty of money. It's a matter of priorities. So in other words, you know, I don't think there's, the city's like broke, or, you know, I think it's a matter of what are our priorities and where's the money going to?
Great. And a follow-up to that, what would it be priority-wise that you see that needs to change?
Yeah, again, I haven't dove into the actual budget deep enough to say specifically what I would change, but, you know, that's definitely something I would look forward to, is diving into those and saying, what do we have the power to change and when can we change it? You know, I'm just not versed well enough to know exactly what's within the city's power.
Understood.
As opposed to like, you know, putting it to a vote or...
Right. Totally understandable. Thank you so much, Mr. Ensoave. Thank you for being willing to serve our community. Next, we're going to go to Ms. Samantha Turley. Samantha Turley, I believe I'm saying that right. And no Samantha. Okay, we'll go ahead and move that to the bottom of the list and check at the end, and we will move to Ms. Melissa Soderstone.
All right. Good evening, City Council, staff, and community. Most of you know here, as I'm here every other week. It is inspiring to see so many step up for our city, and I am proud to be a part of this group before you today. I hope that regardless of the outcome, everyone will continue to show up and speak out because this is the level of engagement that we have always needed. I would like to begin by addressing my endorsement by the CalExit movement, as there were some questions from the community on this point. First, I am not affiliated with CalExit. I am, however, very familiar with their political director, J.J. Ames Jr. I am incredibly humbled to have received the support of one whose qualifications include work on three presidential campaigns, attorney at the Department of Justice, professor of political science at the University of Oklahoma, and head speechwriter at FEMA. I'm happy to answer any further questions on this item. I have lived in this community for 24 years. Former Mayor Hal Cole was actually my very first landlord. For more than half of this time, I have been an active participant not only at city council meetings, but at TRPA, CTC, TTD, county meetings in El Dorado, Placer, and Douglas, as well as CalFire, and both the California and Nevada state legislatures. As a former employee of Head Start and teaching autistic children, which focused on in-home tutoring for primarily non-verbal youth, and as a mother with children at Tahoe Valley Elementary, South Tahoe Middle School, and South Tahoe High School, I have a unique perspective on the needs of our youth and school district. Currently, I am the Director of Congress of Climate and Social Justice, as well as Tahoe Forests Matter. I am also a board member at LEAB, which focuses on issues faced by our most vulnerable unhoused and marginalized community members. I am also on the Steering Committee for the Eco Integrity Alliance, a national grassroots nonprofit dedicated to preserving our natural environment. We have several pieces of bipartisan legislation moving through congressional committees, which would provide much-needed resources for home hardening and wildfire infrastructure upgrades. I am notably one of the only candidates who is highly attentive to environmental issues, a vital component of nearly every discussion here. I also have few engagements, which would be any conflicts of interest, probably none, a major issue for some members in the past, and probably a few that have applied this time. I love this community, and I am fortunate to have the privilege to dedicate 100% of my time to making South Lake Tahoe a better place for everyone who enjoys our beautiful home. I have stood before you many times to support our city, consistently calling out problems, a certain former mayor's lack of integrity, and holding officials accountable while fighting for a stronger Tahoe. I believe this is what sets me apart, not only my prior knowledge of agenda items, but that I can dedicate as much time as necessary to learning procedures as well as making progress during this limited-term appointment. Thank you for your time and consideration today, and thank you very much to everyone in our community who showed up to show their commitment. This is what makes South Lake Tahoe a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Soderstone. Don't go too far, because we probably have some questions. This time, we'll start with Mr. Robbins.
Not used to being asked.
Yeah, usually goes the other way. What is your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule?
So I am in support of a buffer. I think that we may need to rethink the size of the buffer, as it seemed to have been affecting a certain portion, but I think we really need to take a look at our cap and what the cap on VHRs is going to be. I think we have a serious concern that occupancy is not going to meet expectations as occupancy is down across the country, and that is something that we need to take into consideration. People are spending a lot of money on these permitting processes. We still have an appeal that's out there. We do not want our community to spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to permit homes when they are not going to be occupied at a rate that is going to be acceptable for making any kind of money.
And what's, what specific legislative or regulatory actions do you think the city should take to address the housing crisis?
Again, this is a very national issue that every community is facing. We do have some unique needs here. I really think what we need to do is make it easier for people to live here. We've talked before about infrastructure needs, like childcare as infrastructure. The city itself has contributed directly to the loss of what were some of our best low-income housing opportunities. I know that we have this perspective that people need a certain standard of housing, but we literally kicked hundreds of people out onto the street condemning their apartment buildings, and I really think that we are responsible for mitigating some of the harm that was done to our community, especially low-income and marginalized Hispanic community members. So we need to allow people to, you know, we have these ADUs, but there's a lot of regulations and restrictions. People should be allowed to park RVs on their family members' properties and live there as an option. They should not need sewer hookups to do that because there are, you know, services that can take care of that for them. There are a lot of things that we need to do to take care of housing, and I think we all know that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, just the same question. What do you see are the biggest challenges in the city, and what are the obstacles?
Housing clearly. We've talked about that a lot. I think that our roads and our environmental concerns are a really big issue, and I think the main problem that we've seen in recent years is that a lot of funding has been given to outside state-level agencies, such as CTC, the Forest Service, and none of that has contributed directly to our community needs here. So I think keeping some of that money in-house would have been a good idea.
Great. Mr. Jenkins? Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Roberts, you were done, right? Okay, great. Thank you.
First, I want to get to my notes. I didn't want my glasses on, but you're someone who I've only recently are familiar with, but you have a great community engagement. I know you're active, and I see you riding around with the Bear League, and I congratulate you on your care and concern for humane interfacing with humans and bears. And I also appreciate the fact that you're a strong advocate for preserving our environment in all of its aspects, so I...
I, well, I guess one of my questions for you, just because it came up with kind of the RV situation, which, by the way, I agree, but we have what's called the TRPA here, right? Land use. And how do you see, how do we work on policies like that to where we need the approval of TRPA, and that's such a larger body? And what would be your angle at approaching those type of agencies to get these type of policies so that we can adopt them here at City Council?
Well, I've been very involved with TRPA meetings as well. I tried to make every single one of those, and there are a lot of meetings with TRPA, and they are long. A lot of it's going to the state level, which is why I've worked with both the California and Nevada Legislature, trying to engage with people there so that we can get them. I found that having this appointment from the California state level has really made a difference. She seems really engaged and committed to changing some of the policies. Really, we need a lot more community engagement, and I think that they need a new executive director. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Soderstone. Great. All right. Next, we are moving on to Françoise Inchaux. And, yeah, you know the drill. Please correct me.
No worries. It's Françoise Inchaux. Greetings. Throughout my years of living in Tahoe, I have worked many jobs in several industries, from working three jobs at once to being a salaried employee. I've worked in the ski industry, hospitality, tourism, and maintenance. I've been guest-facing in back of the house. I'm your average working-class resident. I got an education in engineering at UC Davis, thanks to the community of this town, and now own my own business that provides a working-class income thanks to actions of the city council. In the past, I would not have been able to take on a role with the city council due to job requirements. I feel I have a unique voice based on education and experience to bring to the city council. I would like the opportunity to serve on the city council so that I can give back to our community. In my opinion, the city should be developing local businesses to provide the city with the things it needs to purchase and the services it will need to utilize the repairs and upkeep. As an example, the agenda item for the purchase of items for the Aquatic Center, $85,000 of city money being sent to a company in Florida. My hope, there is some sort of legislation requirement that justifies these prices that I'm unaware of. From my viewpoint as an engineer, I do not see anything that justifies these prices. Regardless, it would seem to me, given the prices being paid, that a local business or group of businesses could have achieved the same result, keeping the $85,000 largely in Tahoe, especially if the city had proactively provided support to develop the business to be compliant with any legislative requirements. The other agenda item in my question is the Chevy 2500. I'm sure that the real, the need is real, however, the question, spending $65,000 on a new gas truck due to the cost of ownership of a gas vehicle over its lifecycle. Chevy is releasing a hybrid 2500 in 2026. Since cost of ownership of hybrid is lower than a gas vehicle, wouldn't it make sense to wait for the new model to do out in a couple of months? Or buy used? I don't know if there's some reason why that can't be happening. Also, as another idea from a quick Google search, partnerships do not seem to be illegal for South Lake Tahoe to pursue. Is there a reason that there's not a partnership to produce automotive commercials in exchange for vehicles with a company such as Chevy? Some of the forward thinking that the city should be focused on is developing sustainable businesses within the Tahoe community, businesses that can provide solutions to such problems as energy storage so that the city could mitigate wintertime power shortages, local food production, development of community gardens, aquatic center furniture production, and development of sustainable recreation within the Tahoe Basin. We are blessed with the privilege of living in the Tahoe Basin. I'm tired of seeing negative reports about the city of South Lake Tahoe, and I'd like to help move the city towards a future with more positive stories about our community.
Thank you so much. Mr. Roberts, questions?
Just the same one. What do you see the biggest challenge? And what do you feel is the biggest challenge, and what do you feel are the obstacles?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge that our city's facing is sustainable business. There's all kinds of shuttered businesses around... There's all kinds of shuttered businesses around town. You know, the recent voting on the weed tax, I think that kind of demonstrates that overall problem. I know that their money was decreased. I was here when they originally spoke, and then whenever multiple businesses that compete against each other can come forward with a uniform voice, I think that there's some truth there. And I really think that having a mechanism within the city to help develop locals, to develop businesses that represent our community, I think that would really be beneficial.
Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
My only comment is I congratulate you on your focus on growing businesses, to grow the local economy, to hire jobs. I think that's an important perspective that I know we're trying to address as a City Council.
Thank you.
Mr. Robbins.
What's your, same question.
Yeah, of course.
Shouldn't be a surprise by now. I should have a button. What's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer?
So, the 150-foot rule, I think, is kind of arbitrary. I worry that it is derogatory to lower-income communities, like areas that have a lower property value versus areas that have a higher property value. I was here prior to Measure T, if that's right. I don't think that our original ruling was like so far out of range that we couldn't use that and take some of the ideas that Measure T encompassed and put something together that makes a lot of sense for everybody, that allows the protections that we need, so that we can have community and not have VHRs at 2:00 in the morning next door, keeping us up when we have to go to work. But at the same time, many locals rely on that income, and we can't just, because A, got in before B, you know, I don't think it's fair that B is getting eliminated. And there has to be, like, a good way to do this with some intelligence and with all the voices being heard.
And second question, what specific legislative or regulatory policy actions would you propose for this city? That's municipal legislative or policy actions, would you propose for the city to address the housing crisis?
So, I think that we should push business to help us come up with this idea. There's businesses that are for sale currently in town that are begging to be redeveloped. And if those businesses were redeveloped and included a residential footprint in it, it could be multiple levels. It could have the people that are working in the businesses downstairs, living upstairs, and it could also have higher-value rental properties that would work in VHR situations. And it just works into developing a better economy and a better infrastructure for Tahoe.
I guess you've said a lot of good things there. What would be your number-one priority, if you were to be appointed, that you would go to change or try to affect right out the gate, if we were to appoint you?
Well, I would like to bring community back together. I think that we have a lot of polarizing, and the biggest thing I'd like to do is try to get rid of the polarizing and start bringing commonality back together, so that we can move together and let everybody's voice be heard, because I think everybody's voice is very important.
Great, thank you so much for applying and being willing to serve your community. I'm going to put this back to our council. So, we've gone through 11, we have 11 more that we're going to be hearing from. Would you guys like a small break? And then, we have about 45 more minutes of public comment, then we'll come back for deliberation. So, let's do, it's, we'll come back at 8:00. Thank you.
All right, it's eight o'clock and we will go ahead and call this meeting back to order. All right, it's eight o'clock and we will go ahead and call this meeting back to order. All right, it's eight o'clock and we will go ahead and call this meeting back to order. And we are going to go ahead and move on. This is going to be Mr. Dustin Kishnik. And we are going to go ahead and move on. This is going to be Mr. Dustin Kishnik. And we are going to go ahead and move on. This is going to be Mr. Dustin Kishnik.
So I'm honored and thankful to be considered here with so many other outstanding, dedicated, So I'm honored and thankful to be considered here with so many other outstanding, dedicated, So I'm honored and thankful to be considered here with so many other outstanding, dedicated, and qualified citizens. Since I've arrived here, I've been embraced by this community and qualified citizens. Since I've arrived here, I've been embraced by this community and qualified citizens. Since I've arrived here, I've been embraced by this community and it's driven me to give back in a way that I feel my skills are well-suited. A considerable and it's driven me to give back in a way that I feel my skills are well-suited. A considerable and it's driven me to give back in a way that I feel my skills are well-suited. A considerable portion of my life has been about service forged in the near decade I spent in the portion of my life has been about service forged in the near decade I spent in the portion of my life has been about service forged in the near decade I spent in the Marines. Marines. Understanding the needs of others, overcoming difficulties and navigating conflict, Marines. Understanding the needs of others, overcoming difficulties and navigating conflict, Understanding the needs of others, overcoming difficulties and navigating conflict, it's it's what I do as a psychologist. Understanding the challenges and benefits of business, large it's what I do as a psychologist. Understanding the challenges and benefits of business, large what I do as a psychologist. Understanding the challenges and benefits of business, large and small, it's what I did for years as a business analyst and now as a small business and small, it's what I did for years as a business analyst and now as a small business and small, it's what I did for years as a business analyst and now as a small business owner. At Lake Tahoe Community College as an adjunct professor and statistician, I teach owner. At Lake Tahoe Community College as an adjunct professor and statistician, I teach owner. At Lake Tahoe Community College as an adjunct professor and statistician, I teach research, research design and methods. It's aligned with my philosophy of driving policy research, research design and methods. It's aligned with my philosophy of driving policy research, research design and methods. It's aligned with my philosophy of driving policy through empirical data. I also sit as a member of the Board of Directors for a national nonprofit through empirical data. I also sit as a member of the Board of Directors for a national nonprofit through empirical data. I also sit as a member of the Board of Directors for a national nonprofit organization that's geared towards helping kids that have terminal, terminal, terminal organization that's geared towards helping kids that have terminal, terminal illness. organization that's geared towards helping kids that have terminal, terminal illness. illness. It's called Tiny Superheroes. I believe the diversity of my experience is It's called Tiny Superheroes. I believe the diversity of my experience is my strength. It's called Tiny Superheroes. I believe the diversity of my experience is my strength. my strength. It has exposed me to the perspectives and needs of many different people and organizations. It has exposed me to the perspectives and needs of many different people and organizations. It has exposed me to the perspectives and needs of many different people and organizations. It's provided me with knowledge across several fields. Perhaps most importantly, it allows It's provided me with knowledge across several fields. Perhaps most importantly, it allows It's provided me with knowledge across several fields. Perhaps most importantly, it allows me to see things holistically and from various vantage points. The city council serves as me to see things holistically and from various vantage points. The city council serves as me to see things holistically and from various vantage points. The city council serves as a bridge between citizens and their government, and I believe it can be very effective as a bridge between citizens and their government, and I believe it can be very effective as a bridge between citizens and their government, and I believe it can be very effective as part of that bridge. Helping prioritize ordinances that keep our community safe and healthy, part of that bridge. Helping prioritize ordinances that keep our community safe and healthy, part of that bridge. Helping prioritize ordinances that keep our community safe and healthy, both physically and mentally, stewarding our environment, guiding responsible and sustainable both physically and mentally, stewarding our environment, guiding responsible and sustainable both physically and mentally, stewarding our environment, guiding responsible and sustainable development, and helping to ensure public funds are used to help this community and development, and helping to ensure public funds are used to help this community and development, and helping to ensure public funds are used to help this community and allow its members, its pets, its wildlife to thrive. My time in the Marines has taught allow its members, its pets, its wildlife to thrive. My time in the Marines has taught allow its members, its pets, its wildlife to thrive. My time in the Marines has taught me to be a good leader with a strong moral compass. My training as a psychologist has me to be a good leader with a strong moral compass. My training as a psychologist has me to be a good leader with a strong moral compass. My training as a psychologist has taught me to recognize and appreciate that sometimes people are the loudest when they taught me to recognize and appreciate that sometimes people are the loudest when they taught me to recognize and appreciate that sometimes people are the loudest when they don't feel heard. And my time as a member of the community has taught me the people don't feel heard. And my time as a member of the community has taught me the people don't feel heard. And my time as a member of the community has taught me the people of South Lake Tahoe do indeed deserve the best. Thank you for this opportunity. of South Lake Tahoe do indeed deserve the best. Thank you for this opportunity. of South Lake Tahoe do indeed deserve the best. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Kishnik. I will start with Mr. Robbins. Great. Thank you, Mr. Kishnik. I will start with Mr. Robbins. Great. Thank you, Mr. Kishnik. I will start with Mr. Robbins.
Going around- Going around-
Same question?
Same question? Same question?
Same set of questions. First question, what's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer Same set of questions. First question, what's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer Same set of questions. First question, what's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule? rule? rule?
So I think that there needs to be some restriction around the VHR. My position isn't, So I think that there needs to be some restriction around the VHR. My position isn't, So I think that there needs to be some restriction around the VHR. My position isn't, isn't firmly, firmly entrenched yet, but I think that part of, part of having the restriction isn't firmly, firmly entrenched yet, but I think that part of, part of having the restriction isn't firmly, firmly entrenched yet, but I think that part of, part of having the restriction is making sure that there is occupancy, especially when we have a housing crisis and, you know, is making sure that there is occupancy, especially when we have a housing crisis. And, you know, is making sure that there is occupancy, especially when we have a housing crisis. And, you know, to have, to have, to have rentals that are for some, for some period of time unoccupied to have, to have, to have rentals that are for some, for some period of time unoccupied to have, to have, to have rentals that are for some, for some period of time unoccupied is, is, it doesn't, it doesn't help the community. I think that part of, part of having a VHR is, is, it doesn't, it doesn't help the community. I think that part of, part of having a VHR is, is, it doesn't, it doesn't help the community. I think that part of, part of having a VHR program is also the responsibility for the wildlife-human conflict that, that we, that program is also the responsibility for the wildlife-human conflict that, that we, that program is also the responsibility for the wildlife-human conflict that, that we, that we have in this community too. That having, having policies and having measures in place we have in this community too. That having, having policies and having measures in place we have in this community too. That having, having policies and having measures in place that reduce that, that from happening, causing destruction, causing the unnecessary death that reduce that, that from happening, causing destruction, causing the unnecessary death that reduce that, that from happening, causing destruction, causing the unnecessary death of, of wildlife. So that's, I think, in all, my position around VHR is doing what's best, of, of wildlife. So that's, I think, in all, my position around VHR is doing what's best, of, of wildlife. So that's, I think, in all, my position around VHR is doing what's best, what benefits the full-time citizens, the full-time members of this community the most. what benefits the full-time citizens, the full-time members of this community the most. what benefits the full-time citizens, the full-time members of this community the most.
And what specific municipal regulatory or legislative actions do you propose for, And what specific municipal regulatory or legislative actions do you propose for, And what specific municipal regulatory or legislative actions do you propose for, to take to address the housing crisis? to take to address the housing crisis? to take to address the housing crisis?
It's a complicated issue. And right offhand, I don't have, I don't have anything that It's a complicated issue. And right offhand, I don't have, I don't have anything that It's a complicated issue. And right offhand, I don't have, I don't have anything that I put forward legislatively because it's a huge problem. And I think that there, there's I put forward legislatively because it's a huge problem. And I think that there, there's I put forward legislatively because it's a huge problem. And I think that there, there's patchwork solutions that can be put into place, but I think that we really need a comprehensive patchwork solutions that can be put into place, but I think that we really need a comprehensive patchwork solutions that can be put into place, but I think that we really need a comprehensive solution that maybe involves, that maybe involves having some sustainable business solution that maybe involves, that maybe involves having some sustainable business solution that maybe involves, that maybe involves having some sustainable business development that makes the, makes housing more affordable. Maybe that's low-cost housing development that makes the, makes housing more affordable. Maybe that's low-cost housing development that makes the, makes housing more affordable. Maybe that's low-cost housing measures, but I think that something that, that we can approach in a comprehensive way, measures, but I think that something that, that we can approach in a comprehensive way, measures, but I think that something that, that we can approach in a comprehensive way, I think is, is the best, is the best way forward rather than, rather than patchwork I think is, is the best, is the best way forward rather than, rather than patchwork I think is, is the best, is the best way forward rather than, rather than patchwork solutions. solutions. solutions.
Great, Mr. Roberts. Great. Mr. Roberts? Great. Mr. Roberts?
Same question. What, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the city and what Same question. What, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the city and what Same question. What, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the city and what do you see are the obstacles? do you see are the obstacles? do you see are the obstacles?
I think the, one of the biggest challenges is really affordability. And I think that I think the, one of the biggest challenges is really affordability. And I think that I think the, one of the biggest challenges is really affordability. And I think that, that includes housing. We have, we have a city that has a lot of, that is driven by that includes housing. We have, we have a city that has a lot of, that is driven by that includes housing. We have, we have a city that has a lot of, that is driven by a lot of tourism. It's also driven by folks that, that are here full-time and folks that, a lot of tourism. It's also driven by folks that, that are here full-time and folks that, a lot of tourism. It's also driven by folks that, that are here full-time and folks that, that have places here that are not here full-time. And I think that really it takes, sorry, I that have places here that are not here full-time. And I think that really it takes, sorry, I that have places here that are not here full-time. And I think that really it takes, sorry, I lost my train of thought there. I think the obstacle really to, to, to having something lost my train of thought there. I think the obstacle really to, to, to having something lost my train of thought there. I think the obstacle really to, to, to having something comprehensive there is finding the solution that really benefits, benefits the, the full-time comprehensive there is finding the solution that really benefits, benefits the, the full-time comprehensive there is finding the solution that really benefits, benefits the, the full-time citizens here. citizens here. citizens here.
Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Jenkins?
It appears this evening that the Marines have landed in, in South Lake Tahoe, which, It appears this evening that the Marines have landed in, in South Lake Tahoe, which, It appears this evening that the Marines have landed in, in South Lake Tahoe, which, which is a good, a good thing. I have three basic questions. One, you're a, you're a busy which is a good, a good thing. I have three basic questions. One, you're a, you're a busy which is a good, a good thing. I have three basic questions. One, you're a, you're a busy individual. Obviously, doctor, you're, you're, you're smart. Do you have the time is one? individual. Obviously, doctor, you're, you're, you're smart. Do you have the time is one? individual. Obviously, doctor, you're, you're, you're smart. Do you have the time is one? What is your stance on property rights? And do you think that, that's a second. The third What is your stance on property rights? And do you think that, that's a second. The third What is your stance on property rights? And do you think that, that's a second. The third is, just to get them all out, is do you think that South Lake Tahoe should be responsible is, just to get them all out, is do you think that South Lake Tahoe should be responsible is, just to get them all out, is do you think that South Lake Tahoe should be responsible for all of affordable housing within the region, or should the region also play a for all of affordable housing within the region, or should the region also play a for all of affordable housing within the region, or should the region also play a role role that they to date have not played? role that they to date have not played? that they to date have not played?
Good questions. So your first question was? Good questions. So your first question was? Good questions. So your first question was?
Do you have the time? Do you have the time? Do you have the time?
Do I have the time? I do. I, I have actually a pretty flexible schedule. Being, being Do I have the time? I do. I, I have actually a pretty flexible schedule. Being, being Do I have the time? I do. I, I have actually a pretty flexible schedule. Being, being a psychologist, I can set my own schedule. And so the reason I, I wanted to come forward a psychologist, I can set my own schedule. And so the reason I, I wanted to come forward a psychologist, I can set my own schedule. And so the reason I, I wanted to come forward and put in my application is that I do want to serve this community. And I know that serving and put in my application is that I do want to serve this community. And I know that serving and put in my application is that I do want to serve this community. And I know that serving this community requires making the time to serve it and not doing it in a, in a half-hearted this community requires making the time to serve it and not doing it in a, in a half-hearted this community requires making the time to serve it and not doing it in a, in a half-hearted manner, not being too busy to do it. And so, yes, the, the, the short answer to your manner, not being too busy to do it. And so, yes, the, the, the short answer to your manner, not being too busy to do it. And so, yes, the, the, the short answer to your question is yes, I, I do have the time to be able to do this. question is yes, I, I do have the time to be able to do this. question is yes, I, I do have the time to be able to do this.
The second question was on property rights. We all have rights, but what, what are your The second question was on property rights. We all have rights, but what, what are your The second question was on property rights. We all have rights, but what, what are your thoughts on people who own property having rights with other people? thoughts on people who own property having rights with other people? thoughts on people who own property having rights with other people?
I'm in support of property rights. I think it's the foundation of our, it's the foundation I'm in support of property rights. I think it's the foundation of our, it's the foundation I'm in support of property rights. I think it's the foundation of our, it's the foundation of our country. And I think that, I hope that, I hope that none of my answers sort of our country. And I think that, I hope that, I hope that none of my answers sort of our country. And I think that, I hope that, I hope that none of my answers sort of, you know, went in, went in opposition to that because I think a part of, part of of, you know, went in, went in opposition to that because I think a part of, part of of, you know, went in, went in opposition to that because I think a part of, part of what makes this, part of what makes this community, part of what makes this city strong what makes this, part of what makes this community, part of what makes this city strong what makes this, part of what makes this community, part of what makes this city strong is our property rights and honoring property rights. And I think that there's a lot of is our property rights and honoring property rights. And I think that there's a lot of is our property rights and honoring property rights. And I think that there's a lot of creative solutions that can, that can really, that I think we can really, we can really creative solutions that can, that can really, that I think we can really, we can really creative solutions that can, that can really, that I think we can really, we can really bring forward to be able to solve whatever, you know, whatever, sorry, I'm thinking of bring forward to be able to solve whatever, you know, whatever, sorry, I'm thinking of bring forward to be able to solve whatever, you know, whatever, sorry, I'm thinking of my word here. Solve whatever sort of conflicts with property rights. my word here. Solve whatever sort of conflicts with property rights. my word here. Solve whatever sort of conflicts with property rights.
And just the third question, should South Lake Tahoe be the city that provides all the And just the third question, should South Lake Tahoe be the city that provides all the And just the third question, should South Lake Tahoe be the city that provides all the affordable housing for the Tahoe region, or do you think that the region should do affordable housing for the Tahoe region, or do you think that the region should do affordable housing for the Tahoe region, or do you think that the region should do its share that they, in my opinion, are not doing it this time? its share that they, in my opinion, are not doing it this time? its share that they, in my opinion, are not doing it this time?
My, my answer right off the bat is yes. It should be a partnership. My, my answer right off the bat is yes. It should be a partnership. My, my answer right off the bat is yes. It should be a partnership.
Great. So I, my question for you would be, you talked about an ordinance that could Great. So I, my question for you would be, you talked about an ordinance that could Great. So I, my question for you would be, you talked about an ordinance that could help the, the health and safety of our citizens and visitors and pets. What would be that help the, the health and safety of our citizens and visitors and pets. What would be that help the, the health and safety of our citizens and visitors and pets. What would be that ordinance that you would propose coming out of the gate if we appointed you that would ordinance that you would propose coming out of the gate if we appointed you that would ordinance that you would propose coming out of the gate if we appointed you that would help that? help that? help that?
I think the low-hanging fruit is really common sense measures geared towards preventing I think the low-hanging fruit is really common sense measures geared towards preventing I think the low-hanging fruit is really common sense measures geared towards preventing wildlife break-ins. I think it's a, is it the most important measure in, in the city? wildlife break-ins. I think it's a, is it the most important measure in, in the city? wildlife break-ins. I think it's a, is it the most important measure in, in the city? I don't know. Maybe not. But I think it's something that is relatively simple, something I don't know. Maybe not. But I think it's something that is relatively simple, something I don't know. Maybe not. But I think it's something that is relatively simple, something that's relatively common sense that, that I can, I think can go forward. And I know that's relatively common sense that, that I can, I think can go forward. And I know that's relatively common sense that, that I can, I think can go forward. And I know that the Bear League's done a lot of really, really great work and proposed a lot of really that the Bear League's done a lot of really, really great work and proposed a lot of really that the Bear League's done a lot of really, really great work and proposed a lot of really great ideas for being able to make that happen. great ideas for being able to make that happen. great ideas for being able to make that happen.
Great. And then my other question is, if we didn't appoint you today, would you plan Great. And then my other question is, if we didn't appoint you today, would you plan Great. And then my other question is, if we didn't appoint you today, would you plan on either running in the special election or the election in November that has three on either running in the special election or the election in November that has three on either running in the special election or the election in November that has three seats that would be, be coming up? seats that would be, be coming up? seats that would be, be coming up?
Before applying, I hadn't thought about it. But I think that I'm really driven to, Before applying, I hadn't thought about it. But I think that I'm really driven to, Before applying, I hadn't thought about it. But I think that I'm really driven to, to serve this community and I think that I would, it'd be something I would pursue. to serve this community and I think that I would, it'd be something I would pursue. to serve this community and I think that I would, it'd be something I would pursue. I think that whatever the, the city council members and you, Mr. Mayor, decide in terms I think that whatever the, the city council members and you, Mr. Mayor, decide in terms I think that whatever the, the city council members and you, Mr. Mayor, decide in terms of whether this should be filled immediately or whether it goes to election, I think is of whether this should be filled immediately or whether it goes to election, I think is of whether this should be filled immediately or whether it goes to election, I think is a, you know, I've, I've heard, I've heard good, I've heard good opinions on both sides. a, you know, I've, I've heard, I've heard good, I've heard good opinions on both sides. a, you know, I've, I've heard, I've heard good, I've heard good opinions on both sides. And so I think that I would, yes, be willing to throw my, throw my name into the ring. And so I think that I would, yes, be willing to throw my, throw my name into the ring. And so I think that I would, yes, be willing to throw my, throw my name into the ring.
Great. Well, thank you so much. And thank you for your incredible service to this country Great. Well, thank you so much. And thank you for your incredible service to this country Great. Well, thank you so much. And thank you for your incredible service to this country and your willingness to, to serve our community. Next, we're going to go ahead and move on. and your willingness to, to serve our community. Next, we're going to go ahead and move on. and your willingness to, to serve our community. Next, we're going to go ahead and move on. This is going to be Ms. Heather Horgan. This is going to be Ms. Heather Horgan. This is going to be Ms. Heather Horgan.
Sorry, Mayor. And I'm sorry to you to interrupt. Our live stream went down again. Sorry, Mayor. And I'm sorry to you to interrupt. Our live stream went down again. Sorry, Mayor. And I'm sorry to you to interrupt. Our live stream went down again. So I'm sorry to have to pause the meeting, but we really do need to have our live stream So I'm sorry to have to pause the meeting, but we really do need to have our live stream So I'm sorry to have to pause the meeting, but we really do need to have our live stream up. up. up.
Since we just took a break, I think we're just going to all- Since we just took a break, I think we're just going to all- Since we just took a break, I think we're just going to all-
Hopefully it'll just be five minutes. Hopefully it'll just be five minutes. Hopefully it'll just be five minutes.
Yeah, we're going to be five minutes. So, yes. Yeah, we're going to be five minutes. So, yes. Yeah, we're going to be five minutes. So, yes.
Thank you so much. I'm so sorry. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry.
All right, we are going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Oh, where's my little mallet? All right, this is going to be Ms. Heather Horgan. Thank you for your patience and sorry about the technical difficulties.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bass and esteemed members of the city council. Thank you for taking time to hear our statements and consider the best candidate for this appointment. My name is Heather Horgan, and I'm a registered nurse raising a family in this city. I've always been committed to community service, from administering flu shots at the senior center to the El Dorado County search and rescue and the Tahoe Cert teams. Since moving here in 2018, I've been looking for additional ways to support my neighbors and contribute to this community. Last year, my oldest son took a government course at LTCC that required him to attend, attend a local political event. At just 18, he attended his first city council meeting. That experience sparked his interest in political science and introduced me to the city's YouTube channel. Since then, I've followed meetings regularly and felt motivated to step forward when this vacancy arose. About me, my first degree is in environmental science, and most of my work and experience is from my second degree in nursing administration and disaster preparedness. As a nurse, I have been on the front lines taking care of my community for over 25 years. The last 10 years, I have worked as a nursing supervisor. In this role, I manage hospital operations, coordinate emergency response, and ensure safe patient care. During my shift, I lead with safety, prioritize collaboration, solve problems quickly, and make balanced, policy-based decisions. In my career, I've learned the importance of bringing all stakeholders to the table. As a city council should genuinely reflect every sector of its community, and I believe I offer a relevant perspective that is not currently represented. My children attend LTCC, my older children, and work locally at the ski resorts, relying almost entirely on public transportation. I've hiked every trail, I've shopped every grocery store, and do my best to support our local economy, something that's essential for both residents and visitors if we want to keep jobs and resources in our city. I believe we can strike a balance that supports a vibrant mountain economy while protecting the place we call home. I also feel strongly about retaining our workforce. When I was a supervisor at Barton, it was common to lose highly qualified healthcare workers. Even my own niece, who moved here after graduating from UC Davis, left recently after trying for nearly two years to make this her home. I don't claim to have the answers, but I know we have tremendous potential to make our community safer, more vibrant, and more sustainable for everyone who visits or calls it home. I hope I have shown that my perspective and experience translates effective, to effective, community-focused leadership, and that you'll seriously consider my application. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Horgan. Mr. Roberts?
What do you see are the biggest obstacles and, or the biggest concerns for the city? And what are those obstacles in front of them?
Well, I think I mentioned retaining our workforce. It's, it's not just housing. My experiences with our shoulder season, when we have our spring and summer seasons and we lose a lot of our visitors, we lose a lot of our jobs. People lose hours, they, even nurses, if you don't, if you're not aware, nurses won't have work during the fall when the census is low. And my niece, who recently left similarly, she was at Crazy Good Bakery, and they reduce her hours in October. So it's, it's challenging, it's challenging to retain workforce, not just from a housing perspective, but also we need some more vibrancy in the economy so that we have more jobs and more, I think more visitors, honestly, year round.
Mr. Jenkins, or Mr. Roberts, yeah, Mr. Jenkins, excuse me.
First of all, you have an impressive background, and you obviously were engaged in the community, and I thank you for that. You worked at Barton Hospital?
I resigned my job at Barton last December.
Okay, well, then that would-
I had two jobs for a long time, and I had to cut my night shift. I was night shift at Barton.
Oh, then I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robbins?
The buffer. So I've been following the planning commission. And so first, I want to say, I actually, I agree with the, the tenants behind non clustering and 150-foot buffer. I don't know that the 150-foot buffer is, is the answer, but I agree with it, like, fundamentally. What I've noticed in the planning commission is that it's been really difficult to, to handle the issues that have come up with who has applied, when they've applied, who, you know, if there were errors on their application, somebody sneaks in behind them and gets, gets buffered out. I think that's challenging. The other thing that I've started to notice in those discussions is that there could be legal challenges to this buffer zone, which, as we move forward as a community, we have to think about what, what would, what would it look like if we did something differently? I'm not saying that the buffer zone is not an answer, but there are possibly other answers, and they should be considered because it's, it is definitely posing challenges for people. I'm also worried that we keep track of people who have been buffered out and make sure that they, you know, have a seat at the table when discussions occur or in order to see that their option is returned to them, like that they know if that option gets returned.
And what specific legislative or regulatory policy changes would you, would you advocate for to address the housing crisis, specifically municipal regulatory policy and-
So I've thought a lot about this.
-legislative changes?
When, when I was in graduate school, I worked in the city of Santa Barbara, working with them on their workforce, forced housing initiatives, and doing the community benefits plan for the statewide office, OSHPOD, health planning, and looking at what do healthcare workers need? You've brought this up several times, Councilwoman Jenkins. What, what do healthcare workers, teachers, police officers, other service employees need to stay in the city? Like, what kind of housing do they need? And that was one thing that Santa Barbara was challenged to look at. And I've looked at their website and some of the things they've done. I think my answer to you is that I'd like to do research on other communities and what they've done in order to maintain their workforce, specifically in the service industry, like, public service industry.
Great. My question for you, with your extensive background in the wellness and health and wellness industry, what do you see as the biggest threat to South Lake Tahoe? And what do you see that the city council could do to help affect that threat? Well, I'm saying threat, like, what, what is the biggest problem facing us as a city within the health and wellness industry and, and kind of society? And what can we as a council do as a policy to affect that?
Personally, I always, I'm always trying to get people out to be active, go to gyms. I didn't have a great experience with gyms in this city, to be honest. There's not a lot of great options. Not saying that that's a city council issue, but I think in health and wellness, I think the, the senior center, I'd be more interested to hear what some of the things that are going on at the senior center. We have the rec center coming up, and I'm hoping that that's going to be affordable. To be honest, I don't know if it's going to be affordable for my family. I've, I've looked at that, and that does give me concern. I rent. I don't own a home, you know. Our, our income is limited by the fact that there are five of us because we have three teenagers. So I, I think, I mean, this isn't really a city council problem, except for that we have all these resources. I'd like to, to look at our community benefits. What do we have in the wellness space? And I'd like to make sure that those are getting utilized and that we are taking advantage of them.
Great. And then my other question is same I've asked, if we weren't to appoint you tonight, would you run in the special election or in the November election?
Originally, I think I said no. Like, when my family asked, you know, if you don't get the appointment, are you going to run? And I think my answer is never say never. I've been really inspired tonight. It really is impressive to see how many people came out, how many people care. I've been really, it's been pleasing as someone's on the YouTube platform to meet some of the people who I now hear their voices all the time when I'm watching YouTube. And I'd like to, I'd like, I'd like to know more about the community, and I think this is a good venue for that.
Great. Thank you so much. Oh, yes, Mr. Roberts.
Excuse me if I'm wrong, but the Tribune said that you're with Sutter Health in the Bay Area. Are you working remotely, or?
I work, I'm, I'm one of the luckiest persons alive in terms of my work schedule. I work four shifts in a row, and then I'm off for 10 shifts to meet my 14-day pay period. So I drive down to the Bay Area, I work four shifts, and I come back. And then I'm free the 10 other days, yeah.
Great. Thank you so much. And thank you for being willing to serve our community. And next, we will move to Ms. Erica Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Erica Gonzalez, and I'm asking for your appointment to the vacant city council seat. I believe our community needs someone right now who is granted here, understands the challenges we face, and is ready to provide steady, focused leadership through this transition. I was born and raised in South Lake Tahoe, and I returned in 2020 after studying at UC Berkeley and McGeorge School of Law. I've experienced both the pride of growing up in one of the most beautiful places in the world, and the challenge of building a stable life in a tourist-driven economy. My family, including my grandparents, didn't come here for the recreation that draws visitors. They came here to work. That's true for so many people who keep this community running. That constant balance between our local workforce and the economy we rely on shaped how I grew up and continues to shape how I approach local policy. I serve on the Police Advisory Commission and have chaired it for two years. That work has deepened my understanding of how the city operates and how transparency builds public trust. I also serve on the advanced board and participate in the TRPA Living Working Group, which has given me direct experience between the tension, between housing needs and environmental protections. What matters most across these roles is showing up consistently and working with people who bring very different perspectives. Professionally, I serve as a national subject matter expert in the anti-trafficking human, anti-human trafficking law. I train attorneys and service providers across the country on working effectively with survivors. This means I'm constantly learning new areas of practice quickly and translating complex concepts into practical guidance. I coordinate across law enforcement, federal and state agencies, and nonprofits, and manage federal grants. This work has taught me how to navigate competing priorities and keep work moving forward. Exactly what's needed in an interim role that requires getting up to speed quickly and contributing from day one. Looking ahead, my focus with the city, my focus aligns with the city strategic plan priorities. Ensuring that everyone who works here can afford to live here deeply resonates with me both personally and as a matter of longtime community stability. I also see an important role in advancing efficient government, making processes clear, reducing barriers, and supporting staff in delivering results. My approach is straightforward. A one-year appointment to serve residents, not advancing a political agenda. City council is nonpartisan, and that's how I'll approach it, focused on practical solutions and working across different perspectives. I don't shy away from difficult conversations, and I believe in diverse viewpoints, even when we disagree, and I believe that helps strengthen our decisions. I'm ready to contribute immediately, and it would be an honor to serve our community in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Robbins?
No one can fault me for inconsistency. What is your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule?
This is such an interesting question because I've been watching the hours-
By this point, it has to have gotten boring.
No, I, I mean, just-
Come on.
The question from its root is interesting because I think there's a lot of good intention behind its applicability. But as we've been seeing in the meetings, there's a lot of unintended consequences that I think that we weren't able to anticipate. And I think that happened with Measure T, too. So I've been trying to review all of the unintended consequences. I don't quite have a stance because I also come from a neighborhood where I grew up and had, walked home from the middle school with other kids, and I don't see that happening in my neighborhood. So I see, like, the neighborhoods as a kid that I grew up in, no longer there. So the VHR issue is an important issue to me, but the unintended consequences and the people who are working in this economy, it's a tourist-driven economy. I think we have to balance both of them. I don't quite have a stance yet. I'm still balancing those consequences for myself. But I do find it, this is actually one of the most interesting questions, I think, with Tahoe's economy, South Lake Tahoe's, and any tourist economy, is this balance.
And what specific municipal legislative or regulatory actions would you like to see to address the housing crisis here?
I think the state of California actually has a lot of really accessible housing options for affordability and accessibility. We are in a unique position, as is the entire basin, of having TRPA overseeing some of our stuff. And I don't think that we've actually been able to navigate some of those issues with the restrictions that TRPA has. And that's part of the work that I've been doing on the Living Working Group, is understanding how can they adapt their code so we can actually apply some of our California, the California state policies that are for affordable housing. I've had opportunity to work with housing staff here, and they've talked about, you know, we are able to do, and they have done a lot, but some of the TRPA restrictions also inhibit us from doing maybe as much as we want to meet the demand for housing that we have.
I'll actually do a follow-up on that, then. Which, what TRPA restriction would you, would you point to as an example of that?
Oh, I think any of the residential units are super confusing. I think they're super confusing, costly, and really inaccessible to access.
Great. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I mean, what do you see as the greatest challenge? What do you see as the greatest challenge to the city? And what are the obstacles?
I definitely, definitely, as everyone has said, housing is one of our biggest long-term challenges. I do think that we also have to work on our efficiency as a local, local government, so to speak. But I, you know, there, there's levels of challenges. The biggest one, I think, is housing. But on a more administrative level, government efficiency would be the other one.
Great. Mr. Jenkins?
I, I have to compliment you on your undergraduate school.
Thank you. Go Bears!
Being a bear. But go, go Bears in more ways than one. And I also want to commend you on your advocacy for those people who don't have advocates for protection and so on. You're, you have, and for your service on the police commission and your service to your community. You've, you've certainly been, been an advocate. You talk about your, your dealings with the state. Do you have, you're pretty familiar with the state legislature and its committees, and could, would that be of value, do you think? Could you use those skills to help us when we decide that there is a local issue that the state should maybe do something about to help us? Is that something that you could help us with?
I mean, I'm very familiar with the supremacy clause, so navigating some of the supremacy clause issues, and when state laws trump, but local laws, or when they work in conjunction, I think that's very helpful. But I would also be overst, like, I don't want to overstate it because I know the role of the city attorney is also to do that. So in a balance of, yes, I have the background and legal knowledge to do that, but also I understand the role of the city attorney.
Sometimes, as you say incorrectly, that the law is what it is, but advocacy can always change the law through, through, through sound and proper advocacy. So that's, I, I just appreciate that skill that I believe you have.
Thank you. I would say that I also want to be cognizant of the fact that this is a one-year interim role. So I think the priority for me would be the, the rest of the agenda for this year.
Great. I would ask, so with the, your experience on the Tahoe Living Working Group, and seeing that, as you've said, the TRPA is kind of one of the biggest obstacles for us to kind of adopt some of these California policies, where do you see that issue being resolved at TRPA? And what, where can we meet those challenges from our position on TRPA?
Yeah, I, I, one of the interesting things is I came onto TRPA Living Working Group as a community member. I don't have a strong background in housing law. And I also think the codes around TRPA are very unique to the country, right? And so there's a huge learning scale that happens in trying to understand how TRPA implements their code and how we're impacted by that. So one of the things I, I would say that the council's role is to encourage people to keep attending those city meetings, although I've had conversations with TRPA that those aren't always the most understandable meetings as well. So that's, that's a difficult balance to, to make. But I do think our continued participation as a city in those meetings to showcase not only what we've already done as, as a city, some of the things that I've learned through the Living Working Group is that our staff has already actually implemented a lot, and the rest of the basin is looking to implement what our city has done. So I, I think it's the continued participation right now to get them to look at some of the overly restrictive codes that we have.
Great. And then my only, oh, yeah, let me ask, and I'll move back to you. No worries. The, the only other question is, I've asked a few other people, if for whatever reason we don't appoint you, would you run in the special election in June or in the November election?
Yeah, I definitely thought about this. I think the June one is, is harder because it costs money to run an election, right? And the, the lead up to run an election so soon seems financially not the easiest. However, I think a November one is definitely potentially in the cards for my-
Great. Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
I just want to be clear that I think the TRPA is the best management we've had in 20, 23 years or four years that I've been here. And I'm glad you're on the, the working group, because I think there is leadership here that wants to make change and is working with us. And there are probably, there are just some more things that I think we'd like to see them do. So I, I wanted to thank you and not disparage our, our good friends at TRPA.
So credit to the, the efforts that they're making to make this accessible.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. And thank you for your service to the city and willingness to serve. All right, next, we're going to move to Ms. Amy Zystra.
Don't be shy, Amy.
How's it going, everybody? Mayor Bass and city council members, thank you for the, taking the time this evening, sorry, to hear my presentation for the vacant city council seat. My name is Amy Zystra, and I'm a longtime South Lake Tahoe resident. I've been here 28 years now. I am dedicated to our city, our community, and our local youth. My husband and I chose to raise our children here because we think the beauty is unmatched and the people are amazing. Currently, I'm the Director of Development at the Boys and Girls Club of Lake Tahoe, and I've held this position for three and a half years. I oversee fundraising, including donors, grants, relations, communications, and marketing and events. Last year, we did a couple of huge campaigns, the Let the Kids Play Community Playground Campaign, which raised over $500,000 to support a playground for all of the kids in our community. Phase One opened this August. And most recently, we did a campaign and raised $60,000 for a back-to-school snack match, which is enabling healthy, delicious, and filling snacks to more than 800 club kids. I've proved in my work how important I believe our commitment to youth and families within our community is. South Lake Tahoe is a community to live, work, and play, as well as raise a family. I work collaboratively with many Tahoe entities, nonprofits, and businesses on a daily basis to expand opportunities for Tahoe youth. People stay where there are opportunities, and the more we create for kids and families and people, the more we will see our community grow. I know this has been a focus and a big topic conversation for us. This year, I'm the Chair of the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission. I've served on this commission for three years. I've served on Embarc's Advisory Council for the past two years, allocating funds to local nonprofits, distributing over $50,000. And I'm also a judge for senior projects at South Tahoe High School. I've went through two cycles, and I'm committed to two more. I was a city council candidate in the 2024 city council election. I dedicated my time, my energy, my passion to my community, attending multiple candidate forums and showing up for our city. In this election, there were two open city council seats, and unfortunately, I placed third. It's always been my intention to stay within our political agendas and to go for one of the three open seats in 2026. If appointed at this time, my focus will continue to be on maintaining and expanding our core infrastructure, improving our roads, and our dedication to the 2025 to 2030 strategic plan. I'm very familiar with what we've been working on in our city. The community voted just a year ago, and I'm really hoping that you guys will consider me for this seat right now on the city council.
Thank you so much, Ms. Zystra. Thank you so much, Ms. Zystro.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Roberts.
Just the same question. Um, what's, what do you see as our biggest challenge in the city and what do you see the obstacles are?
Well, right now, our biggest challenge on, in the city is that we have a city council that only has four city council members, um, and we need another city council member. So I think that right now that that's the biggest challenge that we're facing. Um, I know that the discussions have went long and there hasn't been a lot of movement forward with anything right now because, um, we just need to start, we need to get another person in and we need to start collaborating and moving forward to make some decisions that are gonna benefit and move our city forward. We kind of seem like we're at a stalemate right now. Um, I mean, I can go down a list of other things that I think that, you know, we can focus on. It starts with housing, you know? It starts with care for kids. Um, where are we going with ADA units, um, or ADU units, sorry? Um, I've been, you know, attending meetings with Truckee. They're really on the forefront of that. And I think that our city is a, a little bit behind in, in those when we're talking about dealing with, um, housing issues. Um, but I'm not saying that what we haven't done over the past few years with the Sugar Pine, um, project, the collaboration that we've seen amongst our city council workers has been amazing and I'm very supportive of the progress that we've made and I'm excited to see where we're gonna go from here.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yeah, just, uh, first I want to thank you for your service on the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, you, I, I have been tour, I've had a tour. Uh, I'm proud of the work that you're, that's being done there and all of the people who contribute to that. Um, it's good for our community and, uh, that's clear by what, what you're doing to help our young people. Um, just to comment, the ADU, uh, the ADUs, Truckee is not in the basin, so, so it doesn't face the, the, let's, let's be kind, I can hear someone talking to me. Uh, it doesn't face the same restrictions as we do here, but I know we're working to overcome those and I, there seems to be some receptiveness by TRPA to, uh, let us, uh, move closer to what state law in California tells us as a California city that we're supposed to do. So, uh, so, um, but, uh, but I, and I thank you for your enthusiasm as well.
Mr. Robbins.
Um, I, I do want to pick up before I ask my two questions, which I'm sure you've seen coming from a dozen miles away.
I've been just totally not.
Unless you've, unless you've been zoned out. I do, before I do that, I do want to respond to a couple of comments you made about, I just want to, because I think it's of public interest, I do want to disagree with the point that we've been ineffectual or, you know, that we've, that we've been stuck on a lot of things since we've been down a member. I, I think there, there is a real public perception of that. Um, and there have been a couple of, of issues. The V H R, uh, buffer rule, which is the thing I've been asking about probably is the most visible, but in, in the last few, in the last month since we've been down a member, we've, uh, passed an entire, uh, new system of pre-approved ADU plans and pre-approved ADU products that, uh, do not, that, that people can build that do not require, uh, building, inspect, uh, building review and approval. That was an entire new way of adding housing that didn't exist before. We've funded, uh, equipment purchases for the recreation center and reduced rates for the rec center for locals. I wanted them reduced even more, but we did reduce the rates for locals. Um, and we funded the purchase of a number of public safety vehicles. And that's all, those are, those are all things that we've done, um, just in the time, only in the time that we've been down a member. But the thing is, there's often a very wide gap between those things that get public and press attention and the things that are actually genuinely very important, right? Particularly because a lot of the really important stuff doesn't come with controversy, right? The controversial stuff gets attention, uh, but the uncontroversial and very important things often don't and they just move through. So we've, we've done a lot. Uh, it's just, it, it just, you know, and I, I'm concerned about pushing forward this, this, uh, I'm concerned about the narrative that we are in a, in an impasse, uh, on many important things about that gaining traction because it's, it's not reflected by, uh, I think it's not reflected by evidence. So with that, um, I will ask my two questions finally. Uh, what is your position on the 150-foot ADU buffer?
Oh.
Sorry. God, geez. God, yeah.
Well, now you've got, sorry.
Now I've got, you can be, sorry, with the 150-foot V H, it's the alphabet soup of government, I swear to God. That should be the test. It should be, it should be acronym matching. What does this stand for? Sorry, the 150-foot, uh, uh, V H R buffer.
Um, so I've looked into the V H R because obviously it's been a hot topic.
Yeah.
Um, I know that you guys did a lot of work and I apologize if you may have taken the way that I said that the wrong way. I'm not thinking that you guys just have been sitting up here doing nothing, you know? Um, I feel like in relation to the V H R, it has, you know, Measure T got voted on. Now you guys have done an amazing job of, you know, thinking about what happened and, and writing the path of that by overturning Measure T. Um, I think that with the buffer specifically, I don't have enough information for me to make a decision because a lot of the way that I work and make decisions is by looking at what has happened in the past and then taking that data and then applying it to what decisions I'm gonna make in the future. And right now with Measure T being overturned so recently and the 150-foot buffer coming into play, I haven't seen enough of what that buffer is doing to make a decision of whether I think we need more buffer or less buffer or a buffer at all at this point. So, um, I think that it's something that I would feel comfortable right now tabling and looking back again in six months to see if at that time I could make a better educated decision about what I think about that buffer.
Okay. And the second question, uh, what specific municipal legislative or policy actions would you advocate for, uh, in order to address the housing crisis?
Um, so as you know, I was a, I was, um, a no on Measure N. Um, and I continue to stand with my decision, um, of being in that position at that time. Um, I do want to look more into like I had discussed, you know, with Mr. Roberts, um, is about the opportunities of ADU, uh, multifamily dwellings, um, how we can work, you know, closer and better with our building, um, with our building department of, of getting some maybe more items like those approved. Um, also, I think that the Sugar Pine, that, that building, those structures, that is one of the answers. Um, we've got property available and we need to move forward on more projects like that or, that are collaborative and supported with other entities besides just our funding and our government, you know, our city money. Um, that project, uh, on its own couldn't have been done without the collaboration that we had with the property that it sits on and, and the, um, I think that that, we need to look at more, more projects like that.
You mentioned, uh, you mentioned ADUs and multifamilies. You, you mentioned them, but it, from a standpoint of municipal legislative or policy actions, what would you support, what, what things would you support to make more of them? Like, or do you have specific things that you think the city should be doing to, to, to assist those, create those? Uh, those, those are examples of things that can exist, but I'm curious, try to get a sense of what it is you think we should do to make those exist.
I know that the city has in place right now where there is, you know, um, an incentive if you rent.
Mm-hmm.
You can do it in a whole family unit or you can do it to an individual person who's renting a room in your home. So those are incentives that have been taken that I'm not sure if they're working or not. I haven't seen the information to know if they are. Are those things that we'd like to grow and make that more the direction that we're, we're, the path that we want to take because that is working in our community and we think that if we provide more of an incentive, if we give more, then people are gonna open up their homes more to other people living in them. But I don't know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, my question for you would be, you just recently ran a campaign. How many months before the election did you run that campaign for? Uh, meaning when did you file and how many months did you campaign before November of last year?
Um, so I filed, so I'll be open and honest. Um, I spoke with Chrissy, Chrissy Kriegen and John Friedrich at the time because those were the seats that were gonna be open. And I had let them know that I wanted to run, but that I was supportive of both of their positions on the city council and I didn't want to run against them if they chose to run again. So therefore, when Chrissy had said she was leaving, one seat was open and then I talked with John and he was, he also wasn't returning. And then I filed the day that, um, they could make that decision lastly. And then I ran the, I ran my campaign until the day of the election.
Right.
By myself and it was awesome.
All right.
It's, it takes a lot of work.
Yeah, so I would say six months, eight months, probably June to November or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Zystro, for your service to our community and, and willingness to serve.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Yes. Uh, now we'll move to Ms. Heather Cade Bauer.
Good evening, Mayor Bass and council members. My name is Heather Cade Bauer. My family and I reside in the all Tahoe neighborhood of South Lake Tahoe. I'm honored to be considered for the vacant council position. My husband Nick and I moved to Tahoe in 2000, working in various industries while raising our family. With my application, I share my professional and volunteer experience, so I will focus my time tonight on the city's strategic plan. The strategic plan effectively and thoughtfully addresses key priorities to serve our community. I, I want to thank each of you as well as city staff for the time and effort put into creating the current plan. The number one priority in the strategic plan, ability for everyone who lives here, who works here to live here is perfect. Through the years, I have held several positions working with renters. Being a long-term renter myself, I've witnessed firsthand what substantial rent increases have done to drive people out of Tahoe. Last year, our 21-year-old daughter, Mackenzie, moved back home after her landlord decided to remodel and charge a higher rent. She still has been unable to find an affordable option. Honestly, if our landlord of 24-plus years decided to sell our home or put it up as a short-term rental, our family would not be able to stay in Tahoe. Keeping my family and other families in Tahoe is very important to me, so I would highly, I would be highly motivated to meet this priority as a council member. The core values also speak to me personally. The acronym achieves bridges the values and priorities. Accountability, communications, honesty are the top three I want to highlight. I hold myself to high standards of accountability in my personal and professional life. I am known as someone who follows through on my commitments. Communication and transparency are essential when serving the public. While at Lake Tahoe Community College, I attended board meetings on behalf of the classified employees and, uh, after regularly hearing people on campus tell employees, you can find that in Board Docs, I realized how cumbersome it was to find the information they needed. I created easily-to-read bolded notes on topics to discuss during board meetings that I would then share out with the campus community. Taking this on, I believe highlights my commitment to communication and transparency. In our current climate, honesty will be essential in rebuilding the trust in our community and I hold myself to higher, high ethical standards. In conclusion, I truly appreciate being considered to serve the cities, citizens of South Lake Tahoe. I have no special interests beyond serving and speaking for the citizens of South Lake Tahoe. I feel my experiences as a long-time, time local have given me valuable insight into issues our citizens face and make me an ideal city council member. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much. Please, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, if you could not clap because we don't want to give, uh, any indication from the public, we try to keep this as an open and equal. Um, yeah. So with that, excuse me, I will move to Mr. Robbins.
Roberts or Robbins?
Robbins.
Oh, I thought you said Roberts. I was waiting. I was wondering why Keith hadn't started talking. We look so alike, it's the thing.
Yeah, you look alike.
Um, sorry then, uh, this is gonna come as a complete shock, these two questions.
Yeah, buffers.
What is your position on the V H R 150-foot buffer rule?
So I've worked in the vacation rental industry. I've cleaned houses. I, I have experience with vacation rentals. I've also witnessed them taking over our, our neighborhoods and I think that buffers, I think, I agree with Amy on the, there needs to be more data. Like, I saw the last few city council meetings when it was trying to get pushed out and get rid of the buffers without any data behind it. I don't agree with that. I think you need to let it ride how it is, look at the data and then make a determination.
Okay. And what specific municipal legislative or policy changes would you see for addressing the city's housing crisis?
I think we need to have more multi-use property locations, like work with TRPA on allowing like multi-use, high-density developments.
Okay. Mr. Roberts.
I think I know your answer to my question, but, uh, if you could expound on it a little bit more and, and, and what are some of the obstacles that you see in front of the housing?
I think I'm in a thirty-first loop on that one because housing is big, but I also think that the gap in pay and the ability for citizens to survive and pay the rent here is a huge challenge.
Very good. Thank you.
I don't recall and I don't have it in my notes. You, you work where?
I work for the Foundation for California Community Colleges, which is a nonprofit out of Sacramento that serves all California community colleges. And specifically, I develop system-wide contracts and run RFPs for the community colleges districts to utilize.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Um, great. And my question is, will you either run in the June election or the November election?
I already have planned on running in the November one and I definitely would run in the June.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Bauer.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to Manuel Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, council members, staff. My name is Manuel Jimenez Jr. I moved, uh, to South Lake Tahoe in 2016 after selling my document shredding company based out of San Diego, which served clients across California from the Mexican border to Redding. Uh, we also service the Phoenix, Arizona region. Uh, since then, I've, uh, built South Lake Tahoe Towing, Lake Tahoe Tire Company and Lake Tahoe Equipment Rental. And I've invested myself fully in this community. During the Keldor Fire, when our region was under extreme pressure, I personally went into Christmas Valley to tow broken, uh, to tow, uh, broken down fire trucks for, uh, the first responders, uh, so they could stay and fight the fires. I don't just run business here. I step in when the community needs help. Before coming here, I spent decades in, uh, building business from the ground up, from trucking, construction, infrastructure, auto repair, diesel repair and document shredding. I've worked major highway projects including I-5, I-15 from San Diego, Riverside and Orange County and, uh, his, the historic, uh, El Camino Real. I've helped break ground on, uh, new hospitals, Escondido, um, and, uh, areas like, uh, San Marcos where we have, uh, San Alijo Hills and Cal State San Marcos. So, um, also in my document shredding, uh, career, I used to service about 150 to UPS and Post Atlantic stores. Uh, that was pretty intense. Uh, these experiences taught me how to manage budgets, oversee contractors, see deadlines, uh, deliver results, uh, the same skills that the cities rely on. I also want to acknowledge one, uh, something important. Our community has recently faced a difficult moment regarding financial integrity in our local government. I'm not here to revisit that, but I, uh, do understand how serious this is. I had over $81,000 of my own money and my wife's money, uh, taken from us, from a diesel repair company in Garnaville, Nevada within the past year or so. Uh, I was able to recoup, uh, all that money, uh, but it took long. It took him six months to seal it and it took me about eight, nine months to get it back. Um, if appointed, uh, my priorities are simple, uh, strength in local business, uh, strengthening local business, the backbone of our community, uh, and improving transparency and communication to, uh, so residents always understand the why. Uh, so you know what? I'll cut it at that and let the questions go.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. We'll start with, uh, Mr. Roberts. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, what do you see are the?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
I'm sorry. What do you see as the biggest challenges for the community right now?
Uh, business. Um, you know, without business, hoping and wishing for properties here is hopeless. You know, we must make this place a business-friendly, uh, location.
You know, we must make this place a business-friendly, uh, location. Uh, I had a friend that walked in yesterday to the city hall, or here to the business, actually, and to the other location to look into a business, and zoning is killing us. Uh, you know, we can't do anything on Highway 50. That's, that's, the business, I don't want to give away what he was doing because that's his own personal, but, you know, for the business that he was looking for, it was a normal, standard business that is needed in this town that there's not very many of, and he was told, he was told zoning, that, uh, he wouldn't be able to, uh, do that. So zoning is huge, you know, it's, it's, it's killing our ability to bring in business.
Thank you.
First of all, Mr. Jimenez, thank you for applying. Uh, you're a, you're a businessman, you've been here a long time. I want to also thank you for your service and the, and the, and your affiliation with the Knights of Columbus. And es verdad también que habla español, sí?
No.
Es importante aquí. Yes, and it's, and what I said was, and it's true that you speak Spanish, and it's important here. Um, how, how easy is it, you've alluded to this, how easy is it here to operate a business? How, and, and you opened a business here, I saw if you, I, I, are, are there things that, that we can help or we should be helping to do to make it easier for businesses to open and to operate?
You know, it's funny, I came here in 2016, and I opened up South Lake Tahoe Towing, but at the same time, I was opening up another business, working with, it was called PEMF, Pulse Electromagnetic Field Therapy. Um, and because I had the name of the term massage in it, and, and believe me, I understand the restrictions on massage issues, but they immediately denied me at the counter without even, you know, uh, yeah. I, I, I said, well, what do you mean? We, we don't, we don't even, we're not physical, we don't touch anybody. It's basically a machine that helps provide an electromagnetic pulse through your body. It helps you heal your body faster, and, uh, I was told, oh, no, it's got the word massage in it. So we, you know, they turned, they wouldn't even accept the application here. So, you know, that was pretty disheartening after selling a multimillion-dollar company to come into a town thinking, oh, you know, they're gonna, you know, enjoy having me. And no, you know, it was, it, it's, uh, it, you could see that there's an issue with business here in this town, you know? So, um, I think we need to be a little more welcoming to business, uh, people and, and, you know, I think zoning is going to be a big key in that also.
In fairness, just so, I, I don't want to mischaracterize, I think our staff, our city manager and our planning people, they understand that there are challenges, and I'm proud of the efforts that they are making to try to turn, to, to, to reevaluate the processes so that we have a more business-friendly process. And, and if it takes advocacy elsewhere, uh, to, to get businesses, as with TRPA, that is a local issue. And, um, you, you, one of you are going to ask me why I keep saying that, but it is a local issue that, that we need to be advocates for our business community, and I think that's, that's what we're trying to do now with the New Economic Development Plan and, and business outreach and business retention. So your points are well-taken, though, and you bring good insight.
No, you know, I, I understand she was doing what, you know, she was, uh, told to do, you know? So, I mean, she, she did really well at that point. But, yeah, I was also able to point out videos and everything else, saying, hey, you know, this is not a hands-on thing. It just has PEMF massages, what the idea behind it is, so.
Great, Mr. Robbins.
Same two questions. Um, what's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule?
Uh, I'm opposed to it. Uh, I think we live in the United States of America. I think it's unconstitutional to tell people what they can do with their properties. Um, I really believe that when you buy your property, you should be able to, for the most part, do whatever you would like to do with it. Um, I think, uh, you know, making laws on, especially property, that's really tough. You know, I, I, I don't think, uh, we should have the right to dictate to people in this country what they can do and can't do with their money.
And what specific legis, municipal legislative or regulatory actions would you, uh, would you advocate for to address the city's affordable housing crisis?
You know, I moved here and I was going to be working on building homes out of seat containers. Uh, and, uh, I think it would, it would really work well. I, I own every piece of equipment needed to do that. Uh, but then I started South Lake Tahoe Towing, and, uh, I haven't been able to really move forward on to that business. But, um, you know, I think setting a so, uh, setting aside zones, um, you know, for workforce housing, I think that's our biggest thing here is, is we, we can't get employees here. Uh, we need to be able to have certain areas that, you know, we can build out and, uh, have enough homes for, you know, for them to come in and work, especially even like the J-1s, you know, those guys, poor guys struggle. They're coming from another country to a place they don't know of, and, you know, they can't find anything to, to, to stay in. They're, you know, they're a big supplier of services here in, you know, during, uh, their stay here.
I'm sorry, so you mentioned, uh, you know, uh, wanting more workforce housing, but you're talking about doing zoning, saying that in certain area zones, you would have a workforce housing zoned region, or is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, I, I think they could be utilized also within certain areas that, uh, um, you know, are closer to, uh, uh, you know, where they're really needed.
How would you square that with your earlier position that, you know, property rights are functionally sacrosanct?
Well, that's up to you to offer to somebody like, uh, say me. If I'm wanting to in, invest my money in that, that's, you know, I, if I'm willing to invest my money in it, then you say, state certain rules. They do that in Sacramento, they have the ADUs down there, you know, just certain areas. I'm, I'm for being able to give, uh, you know, that, that type of purchase to somebody so that they can, you know, create that market for it. Somebody's going to create the market.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, my question, same that I've asked a few people, if we weren't to not appoint you tonight, would you plan on running in the June election, that's a special election, or the November election, which is the, the normal general election with three seats open?
Um, I, I really couldn't give you an answer tonight. I, I, uh, I'm, I'm not 100% sure on that.
All right, well, thank you so much for applying and all that you do for our community. Uh, Mr. Douglas Williams.
Well, good afternoon, or evening, Council, it's getting kind of late here. Um, I'm Douglas Williams, I'm a resident city of South Lake Tahoe. I want to thank you for, Council, for considering my, uh, application for the open, uh, seat. Um, I'm, since I've been, I've been here since 2015, I've owned a, a commercial property since 2003. Uh, it's, I own a, an RV park where we rent out RVs to, uh, to, to tourists. Um, I, I've gotten myself pretty well immersed in the community. I do a lot of things, uh, to, uh, to help out the community. I am currently on a number of boards. Uh, I'm, uh, on the Christmas Chair Board, I'm the Treasurer. I was, uh, it was pushed upon me, uh, almost two years ago, uh, we, we had some issues that I had to take care of. We're doing a lot better. I want to thank the City Council for, for the support they've given for, uh, for Christmas cheer for the last two years, uh, through, through the cannabis grants. It's, it's really helped us out and, uh, helped us feed our community, uh, as well as giving, giving out clothing. Um, I was on the LTC Hospitality Committee when they were forming the Hospitality Group. Uh, I was given input on that. Uh, I'm also on the, represent the Fifth Supervisory District for the County Fair, uh, a board, and I'm currently on the Tourism Improvement District Board. Uh, I was also on the campaign, uh, the, uh, Campaign Committee for Measure P, which is the, um, the one that got us our new Rec Center, Multi-Purpose Event Center. Um, uh, I was on the Tahoe Home Connection, uh, I was involved in the Tahoe Home Connection, where we were trying to figure out ways to, um, help with our, our short, housing shortage. Um, so I'm pretty well-involved, I know a lot of the different things. I'm on the Planning Commission right now, I've, I've been, uh, on and off for about almost four years now. Uh, that's very interesting, and we've, right now, we've got an open seat coming, uh, coming up, so that, uh, that's something if anybody who is interested, that, that applied for this, uh, position is not getting, I would recommend people get that. Uh, some of the things that, you know, I think that, uh, I understand the way our budgeting works and how our city works, I think I could hit the ground, uh, running. Um, uh, one of the things that I would love to see us do is a Fire Safety Council. Um, we had it years ago, it went under because of, uh, some issues with, uh, with, um, some of the grants that were given out, and they, and it went under. Uh, it's a way for us to get some grants to, uh, to help with our fire, uh, issues because we do still have a fire issue, Keldor is not, not going to go away, and we're going to have, have a, another one maybe that we need to work on. I think that's pretty much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Williams. Uh, this is going to Mr. Robbins first this time.
Two questions. What's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule?
I'm kind of following, uh, Mayor Bass's position right now. We have a little over 400 permits, uh, issued in, in the town. Uh, we have another 400 that are still waiting, uh, to be issued. And I think what we do is we, we get to go through that, and it's going to take us probably five or six more months before we, we'll finish those out. Uh, and then, six months or seven months or eight months, we, 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 we look at the position and see what kind of data we have on, on, uh, on complaints, you know? Uh, a lot of the complaints for noise issues, and we, uh, and, um, and parking issues with, with the things you guys have implemented. We've got the, uh, you know, the noise aware out there, that's going to probably help out with a lot of the, uh, issues. And, and we also have the, uh, um, the camera system that we did not have before.
And what specific municipal legislative or policy changes would you advocate for to address the city's affordable housing crisis?
There's a number of different things that we can do. Uh, we can partner up with, with some of the, uh, businesses that have empty land. Barton has a whole bunch of, uh, of, of acreage right around the, the, the hospital area. I would, what I would love to see us do is see if we can make that into a condoized, manufactured, or modular, uh, housing, uh, area where the, the people don't just rent out the land like, like, like they do at, at our other mobile home parks, they own a part of the land that they can get an FHA loan on, that, uh, with, with modular, uh, or manufactured property. So we can, we, then that way, and it won't be that much, it'd be a lot cheaper than any stick-built one. You know, you can, you can get a two- or three-bedroom house for, uh, uh, ma, ma, manufactured home for $150,000. Now, we'd have to make sure that they have, that they meet the snow loads and things like that. But that, I'd like to see people get in housing that they own instead of rent, you know? Uh, we, we've done, the city has done a lot in the last few years. We, you know, we've got the Sugar Pine Village that's coming, and that's 265, 68 units, I think. Then we have, then we have another one that just came before, uh, earlier this year, uh, for the Planning Commission, uh, where it's another 70 units right down there by Pioneer and 50, uh, by the 7-Eleven, uh, on, on city, city lands. That's, that's going to be a huge. We get those, those 338 units, uh, online, that'll help out a lot on it. Rental prices are coming down, uh, recently, thank God, you know? Knock on wood that they continue to, uh, stay, stay down. We also could do something that, the county has, uh, some, some second trustees, silent second trustees, uh, that they give for, uh, people to fix up housing, that they're getting, it's from home funding, uh, that they can fix housing or, uh, either private, primary residence or investment properties. We can do something like that.
Great, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the community, and what are the obstacles?
Oh, we got a lot of problems, you know? Uh, I mentioned one of, one, so, uh, uh, fire safety is, is one of my big issues. You know, we've been doing a great job, uh, on, uh, rebuilding our roads, which, thank God, that's been, that's been, it was, for decades, it was ignored. But fire safety and then doing something about our slow periods, where, where our employees and our citizens are, hours are being cut. Um, I would like to see us, we got the, the Rec Center coming into town. Uh, I, I would like to see us, um, do a concentrated effort of marketing for youth sports. And they can be held, you know, October and, and, and in April and, and March and May and beginning of June. Uh, they won't bring a lot of tourists into town, so we don't have to cut our hours at our restaurants and, and our hotels. You know, people who can, who really, uh, need those hours.
Great, Mr. Jenkins.
First of all, um, Mr. Williams, thank you for your service to our community. I know you've been active, as you've mentioned modestly here. Did you not run for the City Council?
It was 2000, boy, that was a difficult, uh, time to run because, you know, we were all in lockdown, we could be, not meet with people. I, I think both Keith and Scott were running at the same time. Uh, and, uh, none of the three of us made it, unfortunately. It was Christie and John who, I think, uh, who won those seats.
I only, I only say that you have been through that process, and, uh, um, you've been on the Planning Commission off, off and on for how many years?
For almost four years.
Almost four years. Um, are there things that you would like to see? Uh, I, I have a special place in my heart for the Planning Commission, uh, that under state law, California law is the only commission that the state requires you, you either have an appointed commission, or you be the commission, the council be the, is the commission itself, which I do not recommend. Um, but, uh, is, are there things that you would like to see a planning, the Planning Commission do that it's not doing?
I would like to see the Planning Commission kind of work on some other things, uh, to bring to the, the council because not only do they approve things, uh, you know, it can be brought back up to you, appealed up to you guys, but a lot of planning commissions, they also go out and make recommendations to, to the city for policy recommendations. I'd like to see us do a little bit more of that. We, we did something, uh, just recently, and I'd like to see us get more involved in, in, you know, coming up with ideas that we can present to, uh, to the City Council. Um, right now, we're getting, we're getting a lot of VHR appeals. Uh, most of them we're denying, there's, there's been two that we did, we did approve, uh, for good reasons. Uh, one of them, uh, just last Thursday, it was a, uh, something where somebody, uh, two people right next to each other, uh, applied for a VHR permit. Uh, one of the people that did receive the permit, um, didn't own the property at the time of, of application, uh, and they, they got the permit, even though they didn't, they, they pretty much tested that they were, uh, uh, representing the owner or were the owner. So, uh, we thought that that was unfair that they were not the owner at the time, they were in escrow. Uh, and they didn't close until probably a couple of weeks after they applied. So that, that's something the city will have to look at on, on that, but we, we approved the, uh, the appeal on that end.
Yeah, I just think it's really important that the Planning Commission, we, that we hear what you think about matters. I think it's very important to vet early, as many cities do in California. Uh, and, uh, so I appreciate, again, your service, but also the ability to, to tell us what you think and, uh, as, and, uh, so I, I thank you for being here, thank you.
Uh, great, yeah, as well, I thank you for being here. I'm curious, why, so you ran in 2020, why did you not run in 2022 or 2024?
I mean, I could answer it. I'm just kidding, sorry. Well, I, I got kind of, um, I, I was not even sure I'd, I'd go back on the Planning Commission because when I was on the Planning Commission for the first time, uh, people get brutal. Get brutal. Okay. Uh, there was some comments made, uh, uh, public comments made about myself and, uh, my brother that were pretty sick, and then I had to work through those. And I, I think I've got a thick enough skin that I can, I can handle that stuff now.
Great, and then my follow-up to that would be, um, the same that I've asked everybody else. If we didn't appoint you, would you plan to run in June for the special election or November for the general?
Probably wouldn't run in the June election because, because you have to raise a lot of money in order to win, something that you're essentially going to, the first time you, you, you get seated would be in August, and then you'd probably be maybe seven, eight meetings tops, then you'd have to, and during that same time, you're going to run again. Uh, and you're, you're going to have to raise, you know, between $5,000 and $10,000. In each one of these elections, you have to raise $20,000 or even more. Uh, and then you're, you're essentially going to be campaigning for 10, 12 months. And then you're, you're essentially going to be campaigning for 10, 12 months. So probably not the June one, and I don't know about the November one either.
And I'll just say for the record, you also don't have to raise a penny because I did that and got reelected, so. Anyways, thank you for your time here and all your service to our community and your willingness to serve. I didn't take a penny. Let's see, next will be Mr. Peter Fink.
Good evening, Mayor Bass and City Council. Briefly, want to correct a few mistakes in the Tribune's article. I am still the Chair of the BAC, I'm still in the Parks and Rec Commission, I am no longer on the Board of Tamba, I'm still involved with Tamba as a volunteer, but I'm not on the Board. Just want to clear there on that. Okay, moving forward. I stand before you as a new citizen of South Lake Tahoe. Our house was annexed into the city last March, the easiest move of my life. Today, excuse me, so Tahoe is where I met and fell in love with my life, my wife, and we chose to raise our child here. I have a deep love for South Lake Tahoe and the Sierras. I show my love and appreciation by giving back. While I'm a new resident of the city, I have a long history of giving back to this community. I, I should mention at this point that some of these dates might not be completely accurate. My email only goes back to 2014 and a lot of my volunteerism started before that. So I'm kind of ballparking some of these things. As a rough guideline, I've been on the Parks and Rec Commission since about 2013, which I chaired for two years and under that, when I was chair is when we created the South Lake Tahoe Master Plan, which we are still using today. We did the groundwork for building the Bijou Bike Park that is still in heavy use today. And which the Bijou Bike Park was an excellent example of public-private cooperation and collaboration. That's one of my strengths, I believe. I am currently still on the commission and so, of course, as we all know, we're building a new rec center, which I'm very excited about, as we all are, I think. I've served on the BAC, which is the Bicycle Advisory Committee. We oversee the, the funding for bike trail maintenance, which is funded through Measure R, Measure S, the $18 parcel tax. I've been on, I've been on that since its inception, about 2012. I've been the Chair for about the last four years. We've done a number of projects to improve our bicycle infrastructure between repaving and, and, and building the greenway. I've also served on the city's Economic Advisory Board. And one of the things that I feel like I can bring to the commission, to the city council is that I have a strong communication and consensus building skills and I also bring the knowledge of, as Scott had mentioned earlier, like who, who does the, I know the difference between city, county, TTD, TRPA, CTC, LTCC, Caltrans.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. We'll ask you some questions, Mr. Roberts.
What do you see as our largest challenge in the city?
Well, housing obviously is one of the largest challenges, but it's, it's not so simple as just housing. We've been talking a lot about affordable housing, but we also need achievable housing. To live in, like the Sugar Pound, Sugar Pine development is awesome, but that's low income housing. We also have a need for people that have good jobs, like we, like for some of our businesses and Barton and such, where people have good income, but they still cannot find housing. And I think that that is one of the, the larger challenges we face. Does that answer your question or do you have more?
Great, Mr. Jenkins.
First of all, thank you for your, all of your time and your service and your efforts and congratulations for that easy process of annexation into the city. Let me, I, I have to ask this question. Karen is your wife?
That is correct.
And she works for TRPA?
That is correct.
If an issue came before the city council that, that disagreed or where there was controversy regarding a policy, I doubt we would ever have any of those, but that, are you comfortable that, that you might be asked to make a decision that would be contrary to what the interests of TRP or the position of TRPA management is?
Yes, well, first of all, my wife and I are not the same people. We are our own unique individuals, we make our own decisions in our lives, we have our own processes for getting to our, to how we make our decisions. And if I were to be appointed to the city council, I effectively am working for the city. I'm not working for the TRPA, I'm working for the city and the citizens of South Lake Tahoe. That's the highest priority, not what the TRPA wants.
Good answer, thank you.
Great, Mr. Robbins.
Same two questions. What's your position on?
No, I was just.
What's your position on the V H R 150 foot buffer rule?
I am okay with it as it sits right now, but I think we've, we need to implement and, and then take in some data, go back and reevaluate. I think that's how a lot of these policies need to be done. We live in a changing landscape and we can't just make a policy and expect it to stick and work for everything. We need to be flexible, we need to be willing to come back and make changes. If there's sections of neighborhoods where there's more availability for, and for vacation rentals, then maybe it's okay to have less buffer. But if there's a neighborhood that has a lot more families and stuff that we want to support in our community, then maybe they have less. We need to evaluate, I don't think of a blanket policy for the whole city is the best way. I think it's a way to start, then take in the data and evaluate and make changes accordingly. And then as your second question, one of the things that I think is a policy that we can work on for helping with housing, because again, I think the city is doing a great job on affordable housing for low income, but there's that threshold, you have to not make too much. I think one, one idea is that we have these V H R applications, people, some people are being denied. I think we should approach those property owners and say, look, it looks like you want to rent out your property, how about we, maybe we have an incentive with some tax breaks to make those properties available for long-term rentals. So the people that own those properties can still get some income, yet we can start filling in for some of the people that have, that are, don't meet the, the income threshold for Sugar Pine and other low income housing.
Great. My question is somewhat similar, but actually last time we had an election, you probably weren't a city resident, so you couldn't have run. So now that you are, will you run in either June or November?
It would be hard to see myself doing June, just like we, others have said, that turnaround time is so quick. I, I'm unaffiliated with anyone with deep pockets. I, I will be the person knocking on doors and going around to, to run in a campaign. I, I think it would be really hard to do that in June and then a couple of months later, jump right back into that again. November, yeah, I'm giving it some serious thought.
Right on. Thank you so much, Mr. Fink. Thank you for all your service to our community and your willingness.
And I remember your comment from the annexation when you mentioned your bags were packed as you were getting ready to be moved into the city. So I hope you've unpacked since then.
I have, I have. It was really just my toothbrush I packed, it was very simple. Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we'll go to Mr. Grant McCracken.
Members of the city council, my name is Grant McCracken. Today, we've heard and will hear from other candidates, the various visions they have for this seat, what they hope to accomplish and the agendas they hope to bring forward. As with some of the public comment and other candidates here as well, I'd like to take a different view, right, that this temporary seat is not entitled to an agenda. Instead, this seat during its 11-month term is one that calls for a balanced, sensible and steady hand that operates in a supporting role to provide continuity and deliver the best possible outcomes for the residents of our city. This is not a seat to advance an individual's personal platform or wish list, not because a council member shouldn't have issues they care about, but because this council member has not been elected by the people and therefore does not have a mandate from the people. And without that mandate, the responsibility of this seat is not to direct the will of the people, but to listen to it, a steward who helps carry on the work until voters make their voices heard next November. If selected, my commitment is straightforward. I'll be out in the community, knocking on doors at least 100 a month, talking to neighbors and hearing directly from the people whose voices this seat represents. For the next 11 months, my singular goal will be to understand and advocate for the people of the city and earn their trust as a representative of their interests. I'm not here to come in and push changes that no one asked for. I'm here to provide a stable, reliable present until voters choose the path ahead. So who am I to serve in that way? Well, I'm a local resident and homeowner with a baby on the way. I've also been known to play music around town at the farmer's market and other local businesses. My wife and I are deeply invested in what this community becomes. This is where our growing family will build a life, where our kids will grow up and go to school, and I want to be part of helping this city stay strong for everyone who calls it home. Professionally, I'm the founder of a cybersecurity business. And before that, I was an executive that led a global team of more than 100 people across a variety of disciplines. I oversaw the teams responsible for support, customer success, services, community, a whole lot more. Of course, while managing an eight-figure budget while doing that and constantly working across departments throughout the organization to get work done. I've led teams of all sizes and natures for over a decade and have made a successful career of being the guy who can bridge perspective and bring people and teams together to find creative solutions to complex problems. With a track record of pragmatic leadership, uncompromising execution, and doing what I say I'm going to do, I feel that in this time of uncertainty, I can be the steady, reasoned hand to hold the wheel and operate in a supporting role until the people are able to make their voices heard next November. It would be my honor to represent the people of this beautiful city for the next 11 months.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCracken. This time it'll be Mr. Roberts first.
Yes, Mr. McCracken, what, what do you think is the biggest challenge for our city right now?
I think we've heard it from everybody today, right? It's affordability, right? And the, the number one thing driving affordability is obviously the cost of housing, right? So that's a big thing, but affordability isn't just limited to housing, right? I mean, we see affordability being a, a problem throughout, you know, our city as well as our nation and a number of other areas as well, so. But absolutely, it's, it's that, that affordability driven by, at this point, availability.
Just a, just a comment I thought you made, that was a very good presentation. I understand your, your, how you posture, how you see yourself in this interim period. I thank you for that.
Mr. Robbins.
Same two questions. What's your position on the V H R 150 foot buffer rule?
I think it's well intentioned, right? And I think right now, my perspective is that I think a hard cap is, is the, the best way forward, at least right now. Now, my, my personal fear, and this may or may not be well-founded, is that if you look at what 150 feet is, right, that's effectively, you know, most lots, many lots are like 50 feet in the front, 100 feet in the back, or something to that effect, right? So if you think about it, you're effectively making it so that every fourth lot, right, or something to that effect, can effectively become a V H R. Now, obviously, there may or may not be a cap in conjunction with that, but to me, that potentially has more damage to a neighborhood, right? Every fourth house being a V H R is potentially more damaging than if there's concentrated areas of V H Rs. Now, I'm not necessarily advocating that we have, or, or, you know, specific touristy areas or something to that effect, but that's my initial thought and kind of the, the thought process behind it. So a hard cap, first and foremost, and then again, a data-driven approach to look at how things progress over time.
Okay. And second question, what specific municipal legislative or policy actions would you advocate for to address the city's affordable housing crisis?
Sure. So first and foremost, right, I want to hold true to what I just said, right? It's not my position to advance legislation, right? So, so I, 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 well, sorry. In, in not being an elected official, right, or elected by the people, right, I don't feel that I would necessarily have a mandate to go out and say, I'm going to advance this legislation. Now, if in canvassing neighborhoods and speaking to individuals, it turns out that that is what the people want and what I need to advocate on behalf of, then obviously that is something that I would pursue. Now, as far as just hypotheticals, right, I think we have to have some sort of market intervention, right, in terms of, you know, incentivizing people to lease to locals, right? Again, this, this isn't necessarily going to auto-correct itself, right? There has to be some kind of intervention and that can be potentially subsidized through V H R taxes, right? There's, there's a certain, at a certain threshold, right? If you tax V H Rs too much, nobody's going to do a V H R. If you don't tax them at all, everybody's going to do them, right? And so finding that balance between, you know, incentivizing people to, to lease to locals, but also creating a place where people can create V H Rs and, and bring in tourism money to our economy, which is another, you know, thing that's facing our, our city, right, is creating a more robust and resilient economy, right? I'm not saying that we necessarily have to get out of tourism, right? That's not going to be possible, we're always going to have a tourism base, but building on top of that to, to bring in other industries, to create tax revenue and jobs and opportunities for people throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So my question, you've got a great experience within the private sector. I'm curious, have you, I know you haven't been elected, but have you ever been appointed or worked in the public sector or volunteered on commissions throughout your experience in the, in the private sector?
No, sir.
Okay. No worries, just curious. The other question I would have is, will you plan to run either in June or November and run a campaign to get elected?
Yeah, absolutely, yes to both, right? So, you know, the same, same approach, right? Just start knocking on doors, right? So if this goes to a June election, just going to start knocking on doors, I don't know, not tomorrow, but soon, right?
Hey, you could start tomorrow.
And once you build that goodwill, I think that goodwill from June, right, carries over, you know, it's not like you didn't knock on every single door leading up to June. So I, I don't see it as like a, it's like a two different games, it's part of one continuous game.
Great. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve our community, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Veronica Morales.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Veronica Morales, I'm 37 years old. I was born and raised here, I'm bilingual. My children were born and raised here, my grandchildren are born and currently being raised here. I'm a local business owner, I own Tahoe Family Roofing. I love my city, I love my community, I'm a volunteer with the Tahoe Youth, I mean, the Encompass Youth, serve alongside with them on the SAR Board. We offer families help with getting their kids to school every day. We also work alongside with the schools in helping troubled youth. Currently work with the kids in the juvenile detention center, we mentor them in the, you know, from drug and gang prevention. We teach them about God and finding their purpose in life and pursuing, pursuing a better life than being in juvenile. We, I also pastor a small church with my husband in this, in our community. Currently working with some immigrant families, finding homes and jobs. And it would be an honor to serve alongside of you all and serving our community.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Morales. Mr. Robbins.
Same two questions. What's your position on the V H R 150 foot buffer rule?
Not too informed about that, but I totally agree on regulations with the V H R.
Okay. And what specific municipal legislative or policy changes would you advocate for to address the city's housing crisis?
Definitely rent control. I would say if rent control was regulated better, the housing wouldn't be so terrible.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Mr. Roberts.
Yes, what do you see as the largest challenge to our community?
Definitely housing for sure is big, but also with working with the youth, there's a big problem with middle school, high school age kids and that's becoming a big problem as well in our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins. Well, I think you've, you've touched on it with Mr. Roberts' question, I was going to ask, you know, what you see
I was going to ask, you know, what you see, working with the youth, kind of what our city could really try to address to help our youth issues, and I think you somewhat answered that, so kind of re-asking. But yeah, are there things that you see we could do as a city council to help the youth and, you know, the teenage issues?
Growing up here and going through the school here as well, I felt like, and I see this still, the kids here can't afford to do a lot of the stuff that is provided in our community, and we have to always reach out to get funding for the gym or for ice skating, or it's really expensive to have them involved in that. Or jiu-jitsu is like really, so if we could find a way to make that more available for the youth.
Great.
An outlet, yeah.
Yeah. I'll finish up my second, then Mr. Jenkins has one more. It's the same question I've asked everybody. If we don't appoint you, will you run in June or November?
Definitely November.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
You mentioned your work with youth, and I congratulate you. And I'm going to ask you, también habla español?
Yes.
Sí, es importante. Okay, gracias. Thank you. You speak Spanish. Because I think there's a whole community here of people who really want to be involved and, oh, I was going to almost revert or go to, but are not sure of the process to go through, so we need people who are leaders, who understand, who can help in that regard. You mentioned rent control, though, rather controversial topic nationally. Do you see, do you, as a business owner, do you see a need to create more economic opportunity, to grow businesses, to be more business-friendly, to, a need for us to, not that we're not trying to do that, but do you see more need to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, being able to afford to even pay rent and live here, yeah, it's a big problem, big deal too, yes.
Gracias, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Morales, and your willingness to serve our community. The next up will be Mr. Jonathan Springer.
That's the last one, right?
No, because we've got to go back to the two.
Who do you think is? Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. In the next couple of minutes, I'll be telling you a little bit about my background and how I believe that suits me to be a partner with vision, the ability to listen and to be accountable to constituents, to fully digest the issues, and with the ability to dream and be pragmatic at the same time. I became a candidate because my whole career has been understanding new issues daily, generating consensus, implementing a final product with technical and operational expertise, and providing results. My name's Jonathan Springer. I'm 43. I've lived in South Lake Tahoe for 12 years, was able to purchase my home in 2016. My wife and I have a four-year-old little girl. For my profession, I'm the senior engineer at the Starbucks Roasting Plant down in Mindon, so I work off the hill. I've been there for 13 years, and was previously the maintenance manager there for three years, and ran a team of around 33 mechanics and staff. As a senior engineer, I have to develop the expertise for each project I do so that I can see the 30,000-foot view and guide the project through a holistic strategy, as well as being in the weeds so that I'm the expert and the troubleshooter. Now to the things I find myself focusing on regarding South Lake are making sure we maintain services and enhance them where possible, encourage more pedestrian and bike-friendly planning, balance tourism and resident needs, and improve housing affordability. So to conclude, I'd like to believe I have the skills to understand the issues affecting South Lake, the ability to listen and digest what our constituents have to say, and the temperament to make a decision and stick to it. Thank you for your consideration.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Springer. This is going to Mr. Roberts first.
What do you see as the largest challenge in our city right now?
I'd actually say land. At some point, we're going to, we're landlocked, we don't have a ton of room that we can't actually expand, we're stuck between a mountain and a lake, and I don't know the statistics specifically for South Lake, but tax revenue from a single-family home typically doesn't hardly pay for the road in front of that home. And so, there's going to be, need to be conversations around mixed-use zoning to include things like light commercial and light to medium residential multifamily homes, things like that, because at the end of the day, those types of infrastructure are a higher amount of tax dollar per square foot than something like a Walmart. One big business with one entity may bring in a whole lot of tax revenue, but it's also got a giant parking lot that doesn't bring in any revenue.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins.
Actually, I thought your comment about mixed use was very insightful. In fact, if I recall correctly, that that concept was once discussed but not approved back about 12 or maybe it's been 15 years ago, particularly at the Y. And so, I like the fact that you recognize the value of that, of that mixed-use type of development.
Thank you. Great. Mr. Robbins.
Same two questions. What's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule?
I'm in favor of the concept. I don't have a fully fleshed-out position regarding the data of what's happening. I'd like to see more heat mapping and financial analysis. It's kind of that sort of thing is what I do for a job, and I haven't either researched it enough or had a, or seen it in the news.
Okay. And what specific municipal legislative or policy changes would you advocate for to address the city's affordable housing crisis?
Like I mentioned a few minutes ago, the mixed-use zoning with light commercial and residential, kind of, my thought process is inviting spaces where there can be like daytime businesses with residential above them or indoor some sort of little, like kind of like pre-planned or pre, I don't know, prescribed park or community space associated with it, so it's a community thing and not just, not just a business.
Okay, thank you.
Great. My questions will be the same as I've asked tonight. Will you decide to run a campaign if you were not to be appointed in June or November?
I'm considering it. I've been wanting to get involved and run for something for quite some time, just jumped on this opportunity because it was really quick.
Great.
So, yes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Springer. Thank you for your willingness.
Thank you.
Great. So, that is at the end of our list, but we are going to go back to the two that may have been outside or weren't here. So, Mr. Gerard Moses, I believe I'm saying that, right?
Mr. Moses did email me.
Okay.
And said that he had to leave.
Okay.
He was not able to come back or join via Zoom.
Okay.
He still would like to be considered, but could not participate.
Great. And then we will check to see if Ms. Samantha Turley is here. Yes, hi Samantha, please come forward.
And it's Terrell.
All right, great. Last one of the night, get it up.
Woo, we made it. All right. So my name is Samantha Turley, and I'm here because I believe our community deserves leadership that listens, responds, and takes actions. I've seen firsthand the challenges facing the people who live and work here, from affordable housing to transportation issues, to supporting small businesses and protecting unique character of our town. I currently am the general manager of a couple small businesses, restaurants here in town, and so I've seen firsthand for my employees and myself on how this has all affected us. I've committed to practical solutions, transparent decisions, and a council that works for everyone, not just a few. I want to make it easier for families to thrive, for businesses to grow, and for workers to feel supported. I want our city to be a place where residents feel heard and where smart planning guides our future. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. Let's see, this starts with Mr. Robbins, or was it, yeah, it was Robbins.
I lost track.
So it's getting late.
What's your position on the VHR 150-foot buffer rule?
I think we should get rid of it.
Okay.
I don't think that it's necessarily a, I'm not saying that we should just have open, free-for-all VHRs, but I also think that, you know, enforcement and, you know, taking away people's permits if they keep violating it and stuff. I feel like if somebody wants to rent out their, like, from someone that works at a small business that was affected by Measure T dramatically on this end of town, I'm for VHRs, but I definitely think there needs to be more enforcement.
Related question, what specific policy or legislative actions at the municipal level would you advocate for to address the city's affordable housing crisis?
Specifically here in South Lake Tahoe, we have a rule where you can't build up, and I think that, you know, building up and giving us more space, because, you know, we are going to run out of space in Lake Tahoe, but I think if we could build up more than a couple stories would be beneficial.
Are you familiar with where current height limits are, come from?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, what do you see as the biggest challenge in front of the city?
Affordable housing and the transportation for our employees that are here actually working.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins.
If you, as a member of the council, saw that there was a policy either at the regional level or at the state level that impacted our ability, your ability, to do what people in this community wanted to do, would you favor action by the city council, thus being a local issue? Action by the city council to try to remedy that by advocacy at the state or regional level?
I feel like as a city council member, you're representing the town, and I think, feel like you need to be the voice for what the people want. So if the people don't want that, I can't personally say, "Oh, well, that's something I'm very strongly about," because it's not about just me, it's about us as a whole.
My questions are the same. If you weren't to be appointed, will you run in June or November?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you for being here, and your willingness to serve. All right. So, before we move into deliberation, we have a couple things to handle. It's 9:51, so I would need a motion for us to continue after 10 o'clock from the council, which if somebody could...
Move to, I think we have to have that as a formal vote as well, so I move...
Just make the motion.
I move to continue the meeting past 10 p.m.
Great. We have a motion in a second, and we can vote on that, and we have to take a roll-call vote, I believe, still?
Or we did, but I don't know if it got fixed.
For right now, yes, because I need to fix it. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Go past 10.
All right. So we will go past 10 o'clock. I'm going to ask my fellow council members, would you guys like a small break now, or would you guys like to just finish this? We have two more items. We have this item and another item. I'd say this will be our very last break, and we could take a small one, or we could just continue on, and I'll put that up to you guys.
I would suggest, I'm okay with either, but I would, my suggestion would be that we power through this and then take a break after we're done with this item.
Youngsters.
Yeah, recognizing that, so.
Los viejos aquí, you know?
It's just...
I don't know, I'm actually pretty old.
Yeah, exactly. I think this next, my only, I kind of agree with you, but also this next deliberation could take a really long time. The calendar, it shouldn't take too much time. I could use like a seven-minute, so that I, and then we just finish after that, if that's okay with you guys.
I'd agree with seven and a half.
Is that all right? Okay.
Seven-minute, 30-second break?
Sure. So it's 9:53, we'll be back to finish this at 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Eric.
I think that's an excellent thing. I think that's fantastic for new people to be engaged. But there, you know, even even between the point where we had a call for for applications and now, that's not much time to become acquainted with the multitude of complex issues that are facing the city. The questions I asked, you know, obviously those are also questions, and I won't I won't short shrift it, that I have personal political interests in. I have personal interests in the V H R issue in terms of, you know, advocacy. I have personal agenda issues for housing. Those are the things I ran on. But the purpose of those questions was also to establish whether or not there had been a lot of thought put in by the applicants into those issues and a lot of understanding and knowledge of those issues and how they relate to our incredibly complicated, unusually complicated governing infrastructure that we have here. We have four counties of municipal jurisdiction, two states, two different by-state compact agencies, five, I think it's five different law enforcement agencies in this area. You know, arguably more, right, sorry, by my count, you know, and, you know, so, so it's it's an incredibly and unusually complex governing environment. And it takes time to learn about, and that's one of the things a campaign does. Is it not just, it's not just about giving the public time to evaluate candidates. It's also about giving the candidates and forcing them to take the time to become educated on those topics. There are things that our city can do, and there are things our city can't do because our authority has perimeters. And understanding that is very important in this role. So I'm, I I'm also pleased by the number of people that said that they were now interested in running. And I think the right move here, I I was curious if there would be one candidate who would stand, if we got like a short list like we did the last time. So it's not, it's not that that was an unreasonable expectation. That's literally what happened the last time. We we only got a few candidates. If there was someone that stood out as saying, well, that's that's a no-brainer. They either won an election before or they've had a lot of engagement. But we have a lot of people here now. And I'm, I am very apprehensive about making a choice from a large pool without the kind of benefit that the public would have from a properly engaged campaign with candidate forums and with questions from the local press media, with position statements and cross-examination, other than just from the five of, sorry, four of us. You know, I I think there is a fair and very reasonable case to make that Amy X has, sorry, Amy Zysta has, 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 you know, ran a campaign and came in third. And that is, there is an argument to be made there. But there's also now a lot of other people that have have thrown their hat in the ring that I haven't seen before, that I think should be given a chance. You know, I was, I was, I'm particularly impressed with Pete Fink, who has a long record of public service, even even though he only recently moved into the city, or the city moved over him, I should say technically. He has a long record of of public engagement with the, not just the community, but with local government as well. And I think he would be, he would do do very well in there. But my, at this point, my, I think my first preference, given the the absolutely unexpected and enormous interest, would be to put this to the people for a vote. I I disagree with, I forget who it was, I think, I think it was Amy who who said, you know, we're on the, you know, we're at a stalemate on on many issues and it's a problem. And I do recognize that there are a handful of issues for which we're at a two-two deadlock. The hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer rule is is one of them, and that's one of the reasons I brought it up as a as a question. But the correlation between that which is truly important and that which is controversial and gets public attention or gets media attention is very, very weak. It's not zero, but it's very, very weak. Most of the truly important things we do, the A D U things, the A D U prefabricated, that was a pre-approved plans. That was a strategic plan item. That was worked. That came to council twice. That got voted forward, and that sailed through unanimously all the time and got very little attention. But that's important. The budget approvals, the budget, you know, gets debated and discussed and moves forward. We, the 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 rec center furnishing and finishing, that's moved forward with rough, with unanimous or nearly unanimous votes without issue. So, you know, the public safety items get moved forward routinely without controversy. But they don't get reported, so they don't get, they don't get, you know, press attention. So I don't think it's a crisis that we're that we're in lacking a fifth council for many of the things that are truly important to the healthy functioning of the city. There are some controversial things that may have to wait. But I think because those things are controversial is all the more reason to put that to a public vote, not less of a reason. The fact that the V H R issue that we are dealing with now is the long tail end of a debate that started with Measure T. That was a close vote in favor by the public, that had to go to a public vote. To then have the government appoint someone who would make a decision on that issue, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't strike me as being particularly democratic. So I, you know, given that, given that the issues I think that matter most are getting moved along without too much difficulty in terms of the vote, and the issues that are getting held up because they're being split two-two are issues that I think the public deserves a particular right to weigh in on, given the manner in which they landed on our, on our, on our desks, I think points to a reasonable priority for us moving towards a special election. I think, I think especially then, given that there are so many people that have become interested in it. That that field will get whittled down when it comes to people actually running for the special election. But not everybody has to run for the special election. There's an election six months after that that they can run, that they can run for as well. So I I I think, you know, we should, and I don't think it's a cop-out. I think it's, I think it's us recognizing that the interest in this was way higher than we expected, and that's a good thing. And that therefore the right thing to do is to hand this decision back to the place from whence all public power and authority ultimately must come, the the elector, the vote of the people.
Great, thank you, Mr. Robbins. Who would like to go next? Mr. Jenkins?
I agree wholeheartedly with the complimentary manner that the mayor and 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 council member Robbins stated about the level of interest in this community for serving the community. I, I, in all the 23 years that I've been here as a retiree with no business interests, with no conflicts of interest, with with no anticipated business interests, I am impressed with the quality of people here tonight. I've never seen anything like it in all the years that I served as city manager or since. So congratulations to all of you. We have a very diverse community here. We have a community of many people who I think would like voices in our community, but have yet to have those voices. In regard to, I I think it is an easy out. Not a thoughtless, but just an easier out. You said, well, you know, I ran four years ago, and I came in fourth to the to the members of the council. There were also other people who have run before, Mr. Williams, for example. Not only he serves on the commission, has, and in the community and Christmas cheer and yada, 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 but also ran for city council. But I agree also with Mr. Robbins that the, there are some very, very important issues before the city that are not easy ones that really need, we we need to know better where the public is coming from on those issues. I think it's very important. And I don't, despite, if if I had to vote, I could, I guess I would vote as, I I I could vote on on someone. But I would like to, a chance to take in what was said to us tonight so articulately and so passionately, take it in for a few days, get feedback from a broader spectrum of the community, have a special meeting. You know, that's why we're here to get the city's business done, not take take vacations on certain months and not be around. But we're, I think we need a special meeting when we can make a decision whether to go to a special election, which I was surprised to learn we can only do in June, and I'm going to have some conversation tomorrow with some people. I'm not saying it's not, but but I I I think there may be, I I want to check with some other people who I knew in this business. And I'd just like a time to take this all in. You've had three minutes. I think you deserve more respect than that and more consideration because the time that you've spent, there's, you know, information that people have have given us that I'd like to read. I like to think about. And then make a decision the next few days on whether to go to a special election or make an appointment. That's where I'm coming from. I I do want to compliment Ms. Zysta and Mr. Mr. Williams for his service and and all of you for your, Mr. Fink, I mean, all of you for your service. But I want to think about this and not make some snap decision for some special interest of either kind, of any kind. I I want to think about this, and I think that's what you might expect us to do on important decisions, is think about it and not just react. So I'd like a special meeting. I'd like it to be held shortly before the December 12th deadline. And it would give me time to hear more from maybe some of you, from members of the community who I respect. And that's where I'm, that's where I'm coming from.
Great, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, thank you. First, thank all of you for coming out tonight and and putting your application in. It truly is amazing to see the support and and how virtually all of you are, you know, involved in the community and whatnot. I was very surprised at all the qualifications. My mind was turned on several of you during your your only three minutes that you had. I would originally would like to go to a vote, except that it is so far away, June 2nd. I I know this council has been successful at some things, but there are some big issues that are still out there that are that are going to be stuck. One of them will be December 9th deciding a mayor and a mayor pro temp will be a difficult one. On that note, though, I don't want to just jump in and put somebody in there just because it would be beneficial to the to the council in in functioning. So this is surprisingly hard decisions. There's a couple candidates that I would consider, but my first choice would be Doug Williams. He's has also ran for council. He's been on commissions. He's a, you know, he's out there helping the community. He's very knowledgeable, and I I don't feel he would have an agenda. I got the feeling he wouldn't have an agenda, which is my big one. I think there's a few other people out there that wouldn't have agendas, and and that's my main thing. If we do pick somebody, I understand the community vetting him, which which I would like to have, but I think it was Mr. Gonzales that said that campaigns are just a bunch of word salads, or I forget how he put it, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation that is provided and misunderstood. So, I mean, it's just leaving it up for a topic, but if, rather than picking the wrong person, I'd rather go to June 2nd for 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 a vote from the community.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right. Well, sort of bring it back. I think I've made my statement, and again, there are so many people on here that I absolutely would support in this role, except that me voting for them is voting against the 2,403 people that just said they put a person in the seat. And that is not within the power of me, is how I see it. And the the issue that I have is, it is a disservice to ask this group of people to run a campaign once and then have to run it again. That's that's one thing that I see as a potential issue with doing two elections just back to back. And I think what the service that it does for the 2,403 people that voted for the person is it gives them a year to decide if they would vote for that person again. Because you have to think that those 2,403 people would give her their vote again because they've never actually seen her. They did it before, before they had seen her on council. Why would they not do it again? Well, if she's here for the next year, they would have the opportunity to decide that. And again, they they made that vote just a year ago. So for me, that's that's the reason and the reason that, again, Pete Fink, Melissa Sodarsen, so many people here that I truly would support in the role. But me giving them the vote over the will of the voters is just something that I don't see as a democratic process. And I, we are here for democracy. We are here by the will of the people, and that's what I have to focus on. And so for me, that's the only vote that I can give. And so I think where we're at right now is to maybe look at if if we're at a place that we have enough votes for Amy, then we do. If we don't, then we need to look at the next thing that is if we don't have other votes and and more than two votes for any one of these people, then we're basically moving to a special election.
Yeah, before we, I I want to, I I missed something in my, in my apparently not long enough remarks earlier on. That I, yeah, that I think, that I think was also noteworthy, and I and I, I just want to actually acknowledge it, that this is the, this is very near, I think, the first time I've seen so many working-class people engage in public polit, public politicking. And I mean that in a good way, not in, not in the negative condition, in in terms of, you know, applying for office and becoming interested in serving in office. One of the challenges we've had as a city, or that I see us as having had as a city, is that the nature of of serving on city council, which is functionally an unpaid role, but it takes up a significant amount of time, is that it really limits the type of person who can do this job to someone who has, you know, unusually privileged, flexible work, someone who is retired and and healthy and wealthy enough to do this, or someone who has a special interest in the outcome of certain things. Someone, you know, if you're ties to the chambers of commerce, for example, that sort of thing. And that's all problematic. That is not a good representation of the classes of people for whom the outcome of city council actions sometimes matters the most. And the level of diversity of of type of, of the type of people that were here tonight, I didn't want to let the meeting go by without paying special note of that, and I just forgot to do that earlier. I'm particularly pleased to see a nurse, you know, some some people who work in healthcare, some people who, you know, work in youth family services, things like that, you know, these are underrepresented in terms of the type of people who run. And I think I would like to see, I I'm really pleased to see that. That, so I I just didn't want that to to sail past unmentioned with all the people who showed up today about that. With that, I think we may have, I don't know if there's a consensus on any one person, but I think we may have three votes for a special election. At least, but but.
I guess, and so, I could give you guys, so I think one way to to kind of handle that is to see if we do have three votes for Mrs. Zysta, then we do. If we don't, again, I've stated that I'm not willing to go against the will of the people by not voting for the last election and who got third place. If if we're at like a two-two draw there, then yes, I think special election is where we're going. I'm also not willing to make a vote to move to special election. As I've stated before, I think it's a disservice to these folks that probably all want to run in November era, or at least a majority of them do. And I think it's really hard to ask them to run two campaigns.
Yeah, but but nothing's stopping them from choosing to run in November and not in the in the special election. That's still a thing you can do.
Yeah, yeah, but but you're giving somebody that is able to run in both. They're getting a six-month view from the public being up here. As, as you said, working-class people probably don't have the time to run two campaigns in a one-year period. And that's why, again, I think it's important that you go back to the will of the people, and then you allow this great group to have a campaign through the entire summer. They get the view of who they gave 2,403 votes to for a year, and they, that gives them the time to decide, would they re-vote for that person again? And again, and that that doesn't leave us with having to hold two elections, have these people have to go to two campaigns to to really have the same field that they're playing from, because there's quite a few people here that say, well, I I wouldn't do June, but I would do November. And therefore, we're kind of like splitting this field, and that's based on people's time availability, people's financial things. And so that's kind of where I see, like, the special election doesn't do a lot of good service for these folks and really for, you know, I think that that's why my point stands on, you go back to the last will of the vote. And yes, there was people that have run previous elections, but they did not get in third place. I believe they were much farther down the list, and so they didn't have the will of the people to put them in the seat. Somebody in third place did have the will of the people.
But on the other other hand, other 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 hand, on the third hand, you know, putting someone, us voting someone onto council now gives that person a similar advantage going into, in other words, in other words, it it's, in the sense of you're saying you're concerned because it would give an advantage to someone who has the the ability, the free time to run two campaigns versus if they, if we appointed someone, then they would, then they would only run a monkey. But we would be, we would be directing someone to giving them a particular advantage by giving them an incumbency with a vote of, you know, three people.
Right. And again, my point is not that I'm not making that vote, is the way I see it. The 2,403 people last November, those 2,400 people made the vote, not me. And that's why it it takes it out of the, like, I don't feel that I have the authority also to go against those 2,400 people. We're basically saying that, oh, yeah, we we have the authority to override them. And so if the special election's where we have to go, we do. I just, my opinion, it's a disservice to these folks to not let them all run on the same field from June to November of this next year, because we're only talking about that period of time before campaigns would open. So, Mr. Jenkins?
Well, not to brag, but I got 3,500 votes in the last election. And I think people did that because they had thought that I that I would represent them well. I have no special interests, no business interests, no anticipated interest. I'm a retiree, and so I have the time. No, stop. I would like us to show the respect to the people who have presented three minutes tonight, to think about what they've said. And in the next few days, call a special meeting like cities do in California, of which we are a part, that cities do it all the time on important issues. And let's think about this decision, whether to go to a special election. It would also give us some, I'd give me some time to check out some things about timing that I have a little bit of experience doing in my past. So I I I know people I can talk to, and and maybe June. But let's make that decision in the next few days. Let's think about it. Let's get input from community people about what they heard tonight. I am absolutely incredibly impressed with all of you. It's it's heartening that you are our future as a as a community. The other thing is, I'm very, I'm sensitive too to the comment made about the cost of elections. And while typically I would not suggest consideration of this, this is something we can't do tonight, but maybe we we could if we had a special, is just, is that the city participate in in some way of of making available funding for this election only, for people who might be interested to help people who maybe don't have the means to, if we did call a special election, to, that we could think about that, making funds, some level of funding or some level of advertising in accordance with the law and the powers-to-be and, you know, the, but but I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight. And it's not because I'm indecisive. I I have a strong feeling that Mr. Williams would make an excellent council member. I've seen him in action. I've, I've, I think he's he's reasonable, a reasonable man. I think Ms. Zysta is a fine person, Boys and Girls Club. But I'd like to think about and give consideration and show respect to all the people who have here and think about this more a few days, and then let's make a decision whether to go to a special election or appoint somebody. That's where I'm coming from. That's where I'm going to be. I'm not going to change my mind. That's where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Roberts?
Yes. I think we need need to, well, we can do that by bringing it all back to the ninth. That's that's one of the motions. I, from what it looks like, it looks like we're we're in a stalemate almost. Mr. Jenkins is going to abstain. You're going to, you're voting on on one individual, and, yeah.
We're not really in a bind, right? Like, this isn't an issue, right? We have an option of going to an election, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the the only other option is to see if, to start picking a few of them and seeing if the, if there are votes there. I would imagine with him abstaining, there's quite a few of them that are knocked off the list already. I mean, do we want to, do we want to just choose to go to the ninth or to the election? We don't have to decide on the election. We, I mean, I think we're all frustrated in the inability to be able to vet everybody and learn as much about them as we would like to make sound decisions. And maybe by the ninth, we can have more sound decisions. I would not want us to solicit any more applicants. But before the ninth.
We we've had that before, though. We've had, like, applications, and then no one's applied, and we've had to go back to solicit more. That's like a thing. That's happened more often than too many.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Irvin. I don't think we can decide in a couple days whether to have a special meeting or not. We'd have to decide tonight.
The city council wants to direct us to agendize and find a date to have a special meeting. We can do that.
But it would have to be done tonight, not in a couple of days.
No, just a minute. As I understand the law, special meeting can called A by the mayor, or B, that three members of the city council could call a special meeting. That's my understanding of state law in California.
Yeah, so three city council members right now could tell us, let's schedule a city special meeting. That's what I was saying. And or the mayor can. No worries.
Individually. But, all right, Mr. Robbins.
Question to staff, actually.
Are you done, Mr. Roberts?
No, not really.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I thought he was done. My apologies.
So we can either call for a special election. We can, we don't have to decide on June 2nd. We can decide on a special election or take it to December 9th. Or we can attempt to pass motions for a few people if if there's enough consensus, but it doesn't seem like there's there's going to be any agreement on anybody.
And I I want to verify something with staff, and I mentioned it earlier in my comments, but my very short, quick comment. But the we, the earliest we, under, under any set of choices we could make, June would be the earliest we could have an election. Like, we couldn't even, that's not a money issue. That's a, the rules that we are operating under issue, right? That's not a, we want to have it on this date because we'll save money doing it. Like, that is,
It has nothing to do with money.
Nothing to do with paying for it or doing it.
It's a requirement that it be on the primary, and the June 2nd is the earliest we can get it on.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's Government Code Section 36512, because we're filling a vacancy by a special election. It's required that it be on the next regularly established election date, which is June 2nd.
So it's, it's not a special election in the sense that sometimes we have special elections on random dates or arbitrary dates. It's not like that. That is a thing that sometimes happens.
That's a very helpful, that's that statute. Thank you.
I think, so, yes, I I think, you know, where we are at, again, I've made my statement clear. Mr. Robbins has said that he really is more moving into a special election. I think that basically with where we're at, if we put up, if I make a motion, for instance, to nominate Amy Zysta for the appointment, and there's a second, and then we go to vote, and we're at a two-two vote on that situation, and you're also stating that you're not going to vote for anybody other than what the special election come out is, we're kind of at that place of a special election.
Special election is my.
So I will try to go ahead and put forward a motion to nominate Amy Zysta to be appointed to the city council. to the city council seat. Then that motion will fail, and we can then talk about-
I move, I move to direct staff to prepare for, to execute a special election as per the agenda.
And if there's no second on that, we also are at a failed motion. So-
We actually have to, if we don't appoint someone, we're required by statute to have a special election.
We'll get back to that. But we've still got a, wait, we'll still, we'll get back to that. Which, yes, you're right. But, so, so we are at a place where we are at a, kind of a locked position. And again, the reason I couldn't second the motion about a second, special election is because I, I do think that is such a disservice, in my opinion. However, it is probably where we have to go. And so I don't, I, we can, we can re-attempt the motion, but I'd like to open it up for discussion. Yes, Mr. Roberts, sir. He raised his hand.
I would like to make a motion to direct the city clerk not to solicit new applicants, but to bring consideration of all the current applicants to the December 9th meeting.
So just continue this item to December 9th.
Second, second with, with a question. Second with a question.
All right, we got a motion and a second. What's your question?
The question is, we have regular business of the city to conduct that, that we seem to get, we get behind on for a variety of reasons. And that's why I respectfully ask that we hold a special meeting rather than on the ninth when we have typically, we have a lot of business backed up right now. And if we could have a special meeting when we could decide the issue whether to appoint, when we can give the consideration to, to those fine people who have applied, and then make the decision whether or not that we want to go to a special election. Let's not rush this. We have a little time. Let's think about it. Gee, that's a novel, let's think about this a little bit and all that we've heard. And we can do that, not at a regular meeting where there's going to be 25 other items on the agenda, but one item on a special meeting. I'll make myself available if other members would do that. And then we can make that decision, rather than have it on a regular meeting when we've got a bunch of regular business. And we're going to have people sit here for hours waiting to be heard. Let's have a special meeting for one item, please. That's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. We do have a motion and a second. Just because you said it was a question, I'll respond. I think this was our special meeting, and that's why we didn't have any other business besides this item. But I just will keep it at that. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and we can vote.
And I'm sorry, our voterator has quit working, so I will have to do, and this is a motion to continue, basically, continue this item to December 9th.
That's right.
Ms. Blankenship, can I ask for clarification on that motion? Sorry. So if you're pulling the language slightly from the agenda materials, it talks about moving, carrying this item to November or December 9th. But does that also, do you also want that to be accompanied with a resolution in case the outcome is to do a special? I mean, I just want clarification on that.
December 9th is the regular city council meeting, not a, not a special meeting.
Does that make sense, Councilmember Roberts?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't read.
I just want to make sure that that's the case. So it's, we're, it's carrying forward this item along with bringing a resolution.
I will have a resolution prepared for that December 9th meeting.
The reality is, as I understand it under state law, if we don't do it, we have to, we have to do it, whether we, whether we stand on our heads or not stand on our heads, we have to do it. But I think this item deserves the respect that we hold a special meeting in advance so we, so A, we can show that respect, and B, so that we can get regular business done and not spend five hour, five more hours at a regular meeting kicking off other items that are important to the city's business. So we can decide whether we do an election or not, or select, maybe we'll come to a consensus. So that's, but obviously, that's what, there's not a majority, so.
But David, December 9th is a regular meeting, not a special meeting. That would put off-
No, but what I'm saying is, regular meetings are for regular business. This is a special item. It's a special, very important item. Let's focus on it and not on 25 other things.
The motion is to bring it back December 9th at the regular meeting, then.
With a motion and a second.
Comprende inglés? Or do you, do you, do you understand English, what I'm, what I'm trying to say?
Could we please vote, and then we can come back to deliberation?
Yeah, I actually forgot what the-
So, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah. Councilmember Robbins?
No.
You said no?
Correct.
Mayor Bass?
No.
Mr. Jenkins?
Pass me up and come back.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
So the motion is to bring this back on the ninth, right?
That's right.
As part of the regular meeting.
Bring this agenda item back.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't, it'll go to a special election.
Right.
And I'll vote yes.
All right. All right. Oh, sorry, Ms. Blankenship.
So that, it's two to two, so that fails.
Right, okay, thank you. Just, um, yes.
I make a suggestion-
Yes, please.
That might break our deadlock. If we wanted to have a special meeting on December 9th, we could start it earlier in the day, say, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock.
Right. Well, for me, and I thank you for the suggestion, but I know that my position here is not going to change. And I don't believe, if Mr. Robbins' position is not going to change, why are we going to bring all of this back if, if that's where we're at? That's where we're at, and basically that sends us to an election on June 2nd.
A special meeting to, I understand, I think, and I can, I could get behind if, if, let's say, if, if we were able to narrow down the list of candidates to, say, five people. If, right? It doesn't look like we can, but if, I'm saying, then it would make sense, under that circumstance, which is not where we are, but if we were, to come back at a council meeting, and then we could have offline, one-on-one meetings, which are allowed with those five people, learn more about them, et cetera, et cetera, than the, more than the three-minute statement we have. Bringing all 20, how many was it? 20, I lost track.
22.
22 people back in two weeks, seems to me like that wouldn't, that wouldn't move us forward anywhere. And so, and more to the point, the places where I think we're at in terms of, you guys are supportive of Doug Williams, Cody is supportive of Amy X, I don't mind that, but I really want to go to a special election for all the democratic reasons. Those aren't really about, you know, us choosing from a narrowed list. So I don't know that there's a lot to be gained by continuing this to yet another night.
Could I, could I offer this? I'm not talking about bringing back 25. I'm talking about, and thank you for that, so I can clarify. I'm talking about bringing the discussion of what we do, whether it's a motion to appoint someone, or it's a motion to go to a special election. Bring that, not to, to go through the, again, this process of 25 people, but take what they've said, look at the tapes, look at what they've submitted, and then with the idea that, that we, the motion would be, do we, do we appoint somebody, or do we go to a special election? And of course, if we can't agree, it's going to go to a special election. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that.
Let me offer a suggestion for that, because we have two weeks. And if, right now, we don't make anything which kind of guides us towards the special election, if on December 9th, you've gone through, maybe you've talked to another council member, and you've talked to more public, and you want to get a second to bring this back, or consider a special meeting after December 9th, I would ask, and maybe you don't know this offhand, we have 60 days to make this decision. What is that date?
The 12th.
Yeah, December 12th is the deadline. I would also just point out, we have a planning commission meeting on the 11th, and we need 24 hours notice for the special meeting, so that would probably push it to the Friday on the 12th.
On the 12th. So, but, but my, my only suggestion is that if that were to be the case, right, and things were to change between us up here, we could still hold that special meeting on December 12th, and you would come back on the 9th to, to get the consensus that that's what we want to do. But if we're still at a 2-2 deadlock on December 9th, then we're just moving to the special election. And we don't need to, you know, it's everybody's time here, including ours, and like you've said, we have business to do. So I think that's a way just to let us leave here tonight where, yes, it's looking like it's going to a special election. If things do change in this next two weeks, there's absolutely the opportunity on the 9th to have it brought back on the 12th, if we do have that change.
Do we, Madam City Attorney, do we have, if it, the 12th is the deadline, so if we haven't done it by the 12th, then it goes to a special election. But if we do it on the 12th, if we make a decision to appoint someone, then that, it's okay that it's on the 12th, at the 12th hour of the, unless it goes into the 13th, or the 13th, yeah, I guess.
Correct. The thing is, unless, unless, unless the two, unless both of you, more or less, are willing to come around to supporting Amy, it doesn't sound like there's going to be a path to an appointment. And maybe that's on, in the cards, but I guess it's for you to-
Vamos a ver. We'll see, because we need to think about it.
Mr. Roberts?
Let me take a shot here. I would like to make a motion to appoint Heather Horgan as the, to fill the seat for Ms. Wallace.
Is there a second? There is a motion, but no second, so the motion fails.
Oh.
Heather Horgan was the, yes.
Not Heather Cade Bauer, Heather Horgan.
And for the record, I think she would be an amazing candidate. But again, I, I can't go against the will of the voters, and I'll just leave it at that. So we had a motion, no second, so the motion fails. Again, I think this is where this leaves us on this item. We don't have consensus. It does guide us that very possibly, if on the 12th, we don't hold the special election that could be called on the 9th, excuse me, special meeting, not special election, then most likely this would move to the special election in June 2nd. And so what I would say to all of the applicants is, stay tuned for the meeting on the 9th. There is a chance that you potentially could be back here on the 12th for an appointment. But I believe that's where we're all at, at this moment in time.
I just want to make a point, like, I, I had Heather Horgan on my shortlist, like, literally, right, right there. So it's, I, I think you're right. I think that would be an amazing person as well for this job. My, my only concern is, is that there isn't a record of public engagement, or public positions, or campaign, something to establish, you know, to establish that. And so, so it's, I think that goes to the point of the importance of having electoral legitimacy when it's an appointment for as long as this. I didn't think that was nearly so big a deal when it was John Friedrich's seat for four meetings, you know, three and a half, really, because, you know, but in that case, it's just, there's not, there's not that much at stake. And I think legitimacy, given that we've just gone through a, and in many ways are still in, a public confidence crisis, you know, I think having electoral legitimacy is really important. I, I thought, you know, I, literally, I had her on my actual shortlist. I had, you know, Joe, Melissa, Heather, Erica, Amy, the other Heather, Pete Frank, and I had, I had a shortlist of people that I think that would all be good, that I think would be good. The problem is what I think, or what any three of us think, I don't think is, is quite fair, given how many people expressed interest, and how broad the interest was. And I think that really points to the need for a public, what we do in America, which is campaigning, right? And you're right, it is camp, having done it twice, campaigns are indeed an inconvenience. But I want to, I do want to respond to your, your point, which I think is important, which is that, you know, campaigns are, are a hassle, they're a lot of work. There is money involved, although, although you're campaigning in a small town, it's not so bad. It's, it, it, it can be, but it doesn't have to be.
Unless you're him.
Especially if you're Cody, apparently, and you just campaign with your hat on your head and you do it for free. But, but I think my last campaign, I think I raised and spent like $3,000. It's not nothing, but it's not hundreds of thousands, not tens of thousands. And part of what campaigning did was force me to read about campaign finance rules. It forced me to read government documents. It forced me to read, you know, materials and statutes about how you have to do things. It forced me to become familiar with disclosure laws. All of those things are really important for, as training, for doing the job of serving on city council, for learning how to read documents, for read city council agenda-type materials, and all the preparation that goes into it, and being able to answer questions robustly and clearly and so on. All of that matters, too. So I think, I think, yes, camp, doing campaigns, your concern is legitimate and valid, and I'm not, I'm not denying it. But I think it also is an opportunity for people to train and for people to demonstrate that the first, the first thing you can demonstrate by, in terms of wanting to run, in wanting to serve on city council, is the ability to run a campaign. Because for many people, that's the first time they'll ever have engaged in public, public participation in that way.
Great. Well, hey, so I think we've, we've put this to where it's at. Again, I cannot be more thankful for all of you here. Stay tuned, and we will see where we go from here.
The motion failed to bring this back December 9th, so-
So we don't have a motion, so essentially not, there's no action, and we will basically move this item. If we don't have action by the 12th, it's going to go to a special election.
Is that automatic, or is that we are legally required to, but only will, only, but not automatic?
We'll have to make a motion by the 12th.
If, short of a, a motion that's in the affirmative, I'm going to put this on the agenda for the 9th.
So that's what, it'll, it'll be an automatic thing. And again, if you, as I've stated before, is if, if things change and you can get that, the, the basically support on the 9th to have a special election on the 12th, then that's what we'll do.
It's interesting. Typically, it takes two council members to put something on an agenda, except when it doesn't. And I, I just go back to issues that we'll probably deal with in the next item. But let me just say this. If we do go to an election, realizing that it costs money, I would like, I don't need an answer tonight, but, because I would actually like this researched, is there some level of funding that we could give to anyone who runs to sort of equalize the, to equalize the, the playing field, to level the playing field, so that people who maybe have difficulty raise, they have, there's some level of funding for any candidate? Well, yeah, you can shake your head back there, but you're not voting. So I'm, I'm asking a question about equity, an equity issue here, at least in this matter, that I'd like that looked at, so that we, so that only the rich, the powerful, with the influence people get to be elected, rather than the, rather than people who maybe have great ideas but don't necessarily have the resources.
Mr. Jenkins, I did bring an item forward, I don't know, a couple of years ago, about campaign contribution limits, and the city council can decide to make that zero or $50. Right now, we don't, we don't have that. I'd be happy to bring an item like that back.
Great. I think with where we're at, again, I've stated it a few times, please stay tuned. Thank you all very much for your commitment and your willingness to serve our community, and stay tuned. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to our final item of the night, well, almost final item of the night.
Oh, stay tuned. We're setting the calendar for next, for next year. You're all going to go? You're missing the best, the best agenda item is the meeting calendar.
Thank you all for joining us.
We are moving on to item number nine. This is our city council meeting schedule. I guess I would ask a question of the city manager or city attorney. With where we're at in this, is this something that could move to the 9th? Or is, what would be your recommendation?
It's, it's better to get it done earlier, because our planning commission works around-
Everyone is waiting for this calendar.
All the commissions and boards start to set the calendar.
That's all I needed to know. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number nine. Any council members that have questions, not discussion, but questions on this item?
I like, I like, my experience, which I know some of you discount, but my experience is, we schedule meetings, regular meetings on a regular basis throughout the year. If some of us can't make those meetings, but to take July off, or to only have one meeting in October, or one meeting in December, we preclude, absent a, a special meeting, which apparently we don't like to call, that we preclude the opportunity to take care of city business. And what's happened is that city business gets backed up. So I want to see regular meetings, not, not vacation times for us. We're not here on vacation. We're here to do the public's business. So I want regularly scheduled meetings every month. And in the event, what does that mean? Oh, that's a question. So can't we, can't we then have a calendar that reflects that? And if people can't make it, or we decide we don't have business, can't we then say, well, we're not going to have that meeting? That's what I've seen other cities do, real cities do, in California over many years. So that's, that's my suggestion. I don't think it's our time to take, I don't think it's our time, but it could be a question. Is it our time to take vacation in July?
All right. So, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Any other questions from council before we open public comment on this item? we open public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will go ahead and open up public comment in the room on item number nine. Is there anybody here that would like to give public comment? In the room, Mr. Gregorich.
I, I spoke a couple of meetings ago about, um, running late on the evening meetings. I won't give you, I won't bust your chops tonight because we had 26 people and it was awesome. But, uh, there are a lot of blue dates on the calendar. Um, you know, in all my experience with government, usually on, on these kind of boards and commissions and councils, the, um, the discussion expands or contracts in a, in inverse proportion to the length of the agenda. And you guys haven't, haven't always done that. And when you don't, you're maybe not getting the benefit of opening the, the meetings up in the evening to the, to the broader public. So I, I recognize there's value in having the evening meetings as well. And maybe I'm just asking you to be more efficient, aware of that, uh, it's a, it's a detriment to, to consistently run over. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gregorich.
Yes, Mr. Soddersen.
All right. Obviously I appreciate the evening meetings as a parent and for working people, like it's really important that we continue these evening meetings, but I think more than the time, it is the location and having them available somewhere in town where people could actually attend at least once a year, um, twice a year would be really convenient. I understand with the Zoom availability and stuff, it makes it much more complicated. And clearly we need to keep Zoom for accessibility purposes, but, um, yeah, city council chambers should be in town and not at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Soddersen.
Give a quick response here. Uh, the, one of the things that, um, we did with the rec center, uh, with the new rec center is, uh, we made a, it wasn't in the original plans, but it was done as part of the, um, available contingency funding was to add not everything, but a fair bit of AV capability to the rec center, gymnasium, basketball section. That wasn't in the original plans. That got added in from existing contingency funds that will support as a, specifically with the intention of supporting more public engagement meetings. I would also like to see a, a few city council meetings held there from year to year. That's non-tri, I think we can do it. It's just, it's non-trivial because we have the cameras as well and the Zoom setup. And so all that has to be transported that, but not as much as it does for the current rec center, which has nothing for doing that. The new rec center will be much better equipped for that. And I think when that comes online, um, and I think it's going to be relevant when we come back for discussion to ask staff to see if, when the, when the rec center finally is built and properly outfitted, which may be a bit, uh, to have a few meetings, uh, a year there in the middle of town. I think that would be a worthwhile thing to do.
Great point. Uh, Mr. Moser.
Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Um, yes, glad that, um, you brought that point up and you're just discussing it. It's cause for years, uh, even when we're down, uh, Shady Lane, whatever that, whatever the street is where the old city hall was. Um, and we're always supposed to be here temporarily because I believe someone said at the time that, um, you were actually in violation of FAA rules.
Just wait to the end.
David, you have to wait until he's done.
But anyway, um, yeah, I don't know, but that, that was brought up at the time that you did move here. You can only be here for so long. Okay. And it's been a, a generation. But yeah, you know, part of with the, with the meetings and, you know, like to see not only the schedule of the meetings, you could maybe look at starting at five o'clock instead of 5:30, you know, as a possibility and just put some lesser items that may not be too controversial, uh, or so, uh, towards the beginning of it, uh, in case people want to show up after consent and, and show up at six o'clock or so, they can't get here until then. But yeah, the big thing is, uh, you know, we've, uh, approved a lot of money for a lot of things, and yet nobody's ever want to put a bond issue up, um, to build a city hall, you know, so, uh, down the middle of town. And look at that, you know, years ago, uh, when I looked into it, uh, quite some years ago, uh, if you put it in a certain proximity within the center of town, you could actually get some federal or state money there, uh, to, uh, to supplement it. And, because there were a lot of towns would have it on the edge of town. So, uh, that's a possibility. Look at that. But otherwise, just put a bond issue to the voters. I think they go for it. Combine, instead of having, you know, down, uh, where development services and everything is and, and things during about town, having a one centralized location, one city hall, and with city administrative offices and, and all of the services in one building. Makes it a lot easier. And I think people would vote for it and would approve it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moser. Uh, anybody else in the room? All right, unanimous, we'll go to Zoom.
We have Mr. Asbury.
Hello, city council. Uh, long evening. I appreciate your, your efforts. Pretty impressive. You've said, had some tough decisions tonight, but I'd like to, uh, share this sentiment on behalf of, um, a community member, John Messina. He wasn't able to attend tonight. Um, and it's titled, "The Reason the County Ignores Us," involving the meeting days of the week. Um, South Lake Tahoe City Council should change the day of the week on which we meet, having it on the same day, Tuesday, as the Eldorado County Board of Supervisors effectively disenfranchises, it disenfranchises the residents by preventing them to participate in both meetings. Not only are the meetings 60 miles apart, even Zoom cannot remedy meetings being held simultaneously. While Tuesdays offer some logistical advantages, holding the majority of government meetings on the specific day presents several significant downsides, primarily related to public access, public accessibility. The California Brown Act prohibits simultaneous meetings that circumvent the requirement for public access. It ensures public access to government meetings through Article, Article 1, Section 3B, which states the public's right to open meetings is guaranteed. The specific scheduling of these meetings is governed by state laws, primarily the Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Section Code 59, uh, 54950 for government bodies, and the Bailey Keene Opening Meeting Act for state bodies. These acts and local ordinances require that local legislative bodies, city councils, county board of supervisors, et cetera, must hold all meetings open to the public except for specific narrowly defined exceptions allowing closed sessions. There is no law requiring either, either the city council nor board of supervisors meeting to be held on a specific day of the week. The Eldorado Board of Supervisors has been unyielding in modernizing or expanding their public outreach. Hopefully our city council may be more receptive to accommodating their constituents. The city needs to take action to resolve this dilemma for the residents and make all local government meeting accessible for our residents. Respectfully submitted, John Messina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. There's no additional public comments at this time.
Great. Thank you. We'll bring this back to council for more discussion. Um, who would like to open up? Sure, Mr. Robbins.
Actually, I got a question for staff. Um, what, what, what is it that draws us to have meetings on Tuesday other than tradition, if anything?
I believe it's just the past practice of the city. I've seen cities do it Mondays or Tuesdays.
And I, I can kind of answer, just to answer a little bit of that. So for instance, tomorrow morning I have to be at the TRPA at 8:30 that happens every third Wednesday. The LTVA happens every fourth Thursday, or third Thursday. TTD happens second Wednesdays. So the coordination of trying to find a new date has to happen across multiple agencies or we're going to have crossover. Um, and that is what, and I do definitely hear Mr. Messina's concern, but it really does come down to a thing of, a lot of people, and I think that's one thing, is that because we're in Tahoe, we serve on so many different boards, commissions, um, and it does take a lot of coordination to make sure that we don't overlap.
Yeah, that's a fair point. Cause like, if we held our meetings on, say, Wednesdays, that might free up the conflict with the board of supervisors, but it would create a conflict with the transit, with the transportation and the TRPA, which are even more locally relevant. And at some level, there's, this, this point I was making in the last agenda item was there are so many freaking government agencies and it is so complicated that conflicts, I don't know that there's a way to not have some conflicts. Um, as far as having like, uh, we have like, I think one month with one meeting and one month with no meetings. At, at some level, I think it's also important to recognize that it's not just our time that's at stake at these meetings that is consumed. It's a considerable amount of staff time as well and the time, hang on, and the time that goes into preparing, uh, for, uh, you know, not just being on, at the meeting, but preparing the agenda items and preparing materials. And staff is going to need some periods where they can do work and make actual work executing on, on, on the, on the direction we give staff to do and not just spending all their time preparing materials for the next meeting. So, so having, you know, not having fewer than 24 meetings in a year, which would be two every, which would be two every month, you know, I, I think there's a lot of sensibility in that, which means inevitably there's going to be some months with fewer than two, just because we've got to give staff some time to actually do the work we assign them.
Well, most, if I may, mayor, because.
You're done, yeah?
Yeah. And, 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 sorry, one more thing. It's just, uh, I really appreciate that, uh, we're moving, that the proposal here that's on the table is, I think it's also very important to keep with the, uh, the evening and day split. I think, I think that's been very, I think that's been successful. I understand that's led to a handful of long nights for us, but that's also because we've chosen, we've made a choice to spend a lot of time on VHRs, which is an item with like three hours of public comment. And that's, that's how that goes. We, you know, we made a choice to, to, to do activities and to do agendas that are going to have extensive public engagement. But I think having the, the split so that parents and people work during the day and vice versa can attend and participate can, can, uh, is, is an, I would like to, um, follow up and I'll, I'll let, I'll let this go and come back to this. I think the idea of doing a few meetings at the rec center, I don't know if it needs to be as part of this, because it can still be on one of the calendar dates, but we could perhaps, as part of this agenda item, provide direction to staff to identify a few appropriate meetings out of the year that could be done at the rec center when it becomes available to do so.
Great. Mr. Jenkins.
I mean this out of respect to staff. Um, most of the matters that we discuss, the staff is required to come to a meeting where they have no items on the agenda. Um, maybe if we allowed them to not come to the meeting unless there's items on the agenda, they would have more time to do other stuff that is scheduled. Um, and, and, and I know someone might say, and I, and I'm not, it's not a criticism, it's just if we're looking at time spent, um, if you have to, if, if all staff, whether or not they have items or not, on the agenda have to show up, whether they sit, sit there and be, and, and do essentially nothing, it may be informative to them. In cities that I've worked, um, if you had items on the agenda, you were present. If not, you weren't. And if there were questions raised, then you got back to people. So that's just a perspective. It would give them more time during the day to do the other things that are the scheduled, rather than just sit here and listen to the verboity of some members of council like myself. That's my point.
I can just add clarity. Uh, no staff are sitting here who don't have agenda items. Unless it's like tonight, I want the assistant city manager here and the chief of police and the chief of fire.
Well, with respect.
So I do, I do manage that appropriately. Thank you, sir.
Well, Mr. S, I'm not questioning your management. I'm just saying to you that I see staff many times sitting in the back that have, that, that.
Staff members have items that they managed on consent items and, and as soon as those are cut off, they leave.
Oh, say hello to say, thank you.
Mr. Roberts, any, uh, no, okay. Um, well, I'll come back to you. Um, so for me, I think that again, I, I, I do like that our night meetings exist for what they do. I think, you know, again, a first reading and a second reading, it gives the potential for that to happen at night and in the day for somebody that can't make it in the morning. Um, I think that is very important. But I also have seen, it's 11:15. Um, I, again, we all have to be, most of the staff needs to be here in the morning to work. I got to be here at a meeting tomorrow. So it is a disservice that we have to run this late. And we really do need to be thoughtful, as one of our public commentators said, about how we operate. And we don't need to sometimes, uh, we, we need to make decisions succinctly and not spend time.
Repulsive.
Yes. And I think that's something that as a council, we very much need to work on to, only not a service to ourself, to the public, to our staff. Um, for me, I, you know, the two meetings that we have a month, along with the other assignments that we have to deal with, um, and all of the other public appearances, the meetings that the public demands from us, is a lot on us as electeds. And, uh, again, I will have to say that the time we have off in July, I look forward to every year because that's the only time that I could literally have a two week window to be gone. And I don't want to give that up. I, I like having a month that we don't have meetings. I also like having one meeting a month in December because it's the holidays. And so I think that, you know, we have a meeting in the beginning of December and then we get off for the holidays. And I think that's a normal course of action and I don't think that's a bad situation. Um, I will address Mr. Messina's concerns and I think that they're valid around the board of supervisors and what can we do. Um, one thing that I'll say to that is that they meet every Tuesday and we meet every other Tuesday. They also don't do night meetings. So one of our Tuesday night meetings is an opportunity for you to be at the board of supervisors or present on Zoom. So basically three of the Tuesdays a month, you are available to be engaged with the board of supervisors. There will be one meeting a month that overlaps. And I don't know a better way for us to, um, overcome that essentially. So with that, I, I personally feel, um, I don't disagree that we should be doing, from both of you guys' points, let's do more public engagement. I think that like workshops that we can do, I'll call it workshops, but kind of, um, it's, it's a format of a city council. We're going to show up for people to ask us questions and we're going to really present more to them than doing the city's business. And that doesn't have to be on our normal meeting calendar. We can set those things up as we move through the year.
As a special meeting of the city council to hold a workshop?
Exactly. And I think that that's something that we should do more of.
It's also something that we could definitely do at the rec center if it's available.
But we don't have to set those things tonight. We can do that as a council, as a special meeting. So, right.
Let's add to the motion, in addition, approve, approve the calendar as.
Right.
And then add to the motion directing staff to schedule some, to identify some opportunities to schedule special public engagements.
We would.
No, that's us. Yes, that's us directing staff to set that. No, no, no. They can come back to us with dates and a program for doing it at the rec center.
Yeah, but we basically need to make the motion to tell them.
When it becomes available.
I, as mayor or the council needs to say, we want to hold this many special meetings and that'll be the direction.
Yeah.
I can do that myself or three of us at council can do it. But what I'm saying is I support that action. I'm just saying that we don't.
We're here.
Yeah, yeah. We just don't have to put it in the motion because right now the motion is just to pass this calendar. I support that. There's three of us here that support.
I would, I would say the city clerk's office is not ready at this time to go forward with, um, special meetings at the rec center because number one, it's not open. And by the time it opens, we're going to be in an election. So why don't we plan this for 2027? Two, the rec center will be up, all the staff will be functioning by that time. We'll have the bugs worked out in the room where we might be able to facilitate a remote, it's not just as easy as, oh, they have Wi-Fi now. It's, I have to move the entire city council meeting and all of my production over to a building that is not outfitted for all of this stuff. I don't know if you've seen the AV room, but there's more than just a laptop in there. So I say, let's bring this back in 2027. And yes, then we can definitely have that room worked out to have a couple of remote meetings there.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. So again, um, and I agree with her at the rec center, but that doesn't mean in 2026, if we want to do those workshops here. Again, we can do that, but we don't have to do it as part of the motion. Let's just bring it back as a special meeting that we'll, we'll do at a later time. So with all of that, is anybody would like to put forward a motion?
I, my move that we pass a resolution adopting the 2026 city council regular meeting schedule.
Great. We have a motion and a second and we can vote.
I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Robbins.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Reluctantly, yes.
And Mayor Bass.
Yes.
That motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Item, yeah. Item number 10. We are moving on to our agenda planning calendar. Mr. Irvin.
Okay. Well, um, one item that'll be added on here is the item eight, council, city council appointment, limited term, and, uh, discussion about special elections. So that, going to carry that forward. That'll now be coming at the December 9th meeting. Basically, it's this exact same agenda item that you discussed tonight.
I didn't see the, that's not how we saw it. We saw it as basically, we didn't, we had a tie vote. We didn't have a motion that directed that. And so basically, if on the ninth, there is three people here that want to bring it back for the 12th, that appointment item would be on a special meeting on the 12th. Otherwise, there's no direction. So it's going to move forward. If on the ninth, that doesn't happen, to create a special meeting on the 12th, it automatically goes to a special election because we hit the 60 days.
I still need a resolution calling for the election. No? Okay, never mind.
I would suggest we bring it back on the ninth. It will be a lot shorter because we don't need to interview everybody again, but I think we do need to have the ability to, um, make a decision then.
But we're not, so then as long as, what I'm saying is we're not bringing everybody back to do the interview, but we might do that if we decide to on the 12th for a special meeting, which would come from our council.
I don't know why you need to interview everybody again, but if council wants to I don't know why you'd need to interview everybody again, but if council wants to do that on the 12th...
Well, that would be the right we're giving them. If we agendaize the appointment of a limited term, would be the applicants get the public comment.
I'm glad I brought this up, because I want to make sure what we're bringing on the 9th, because now that's added to the 9th. I was of the opinion, I'm planning to bring the exact same item for the council to consider a resolution for a special election, but if at that meeting, the council wants to say, we want to have a special meeting to further evaluate a potential appointment, then you could give that direction.
If it's framed like that, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we're not framing it to say, let's all come back and do the same process we just did tonight.
I agree.
You follow what I'm saying, like?
Sure.
Because we already went through this three hour...
I think the city manager stated it well, that you're going to bring the item back, whether to have a special election, or if we make a decision to make an appointment, that that could be done there. If there's no decision made, then on the 12th, there would be a special meeting, as I understand it, to call the election or have the resolution.
That's why I was wondering earlier. There's a difference of opinion, so I want to really make sure I have clarity.
Yeah, so, because we didn't, the thing is, we didn't make consensus on direction, and that's the thing, is there was no consensus or a motion passed to give direction. So my thought was again...
So what I'm going to bring on the 9th is a resolution for a special meeting, and if there's direction at that meeting to, what I'm going to do is bring a resolution for a special election.
Right.
And if there's a direction from three council members, majority, to have a special meeting, we will agendaize one for the 12th.
That's, that, I, that makes sense to me. Yes.
See how easy that was, Mr. Soddersen?
Sorry. I appreciate that. I really needed to get that clarity.
Thank you for the clarity.
And then the bear presentation is coming. We need to keep that, in the spirit of conducting business, like, we, we have to do that. So there's a couple items on there that I might look to push off, but otherwise, there's a lot of consent. There's a couple big purchases, so I know sometimes we put those on consent, and they get pulled off, because we want to talk about them, but they are all budgeted, but, so I'll just do my best to try to manage this agenda in a way that we can get through it.
Thank you.
You did a very good job on consent tonight. That was, that was easy. So, I mean, it worked really well. It was budgeted, things were budgeted, so it's easy.
Great. Any council members have questions on the APC?
On the APC.
All right, Ianum, we can go ahead and move on to updates and announcements. Ms. Stroud?
None at this time. Thank you.
Great. Mrs. Blankenship?
None. Thank you.
Mr. Irvin?
Just that I had fun doing the State of the South Shore address last week. It's on the website, if you want to watch it.